Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the March 12th study session of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Brenner is currently not here.
I'm sure she's coming.
Yeah.
Let's proceed right into our current business. Study session item number one is to clarify items on the consent calendar. Members of council, do we have any items to clarify on the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
None.
Mr. Duffield? All right. Mr. Muldoon? Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mayor Potem?
None.
Mr. Muldoon?
Is anyone planning to pull item 13 for discussion, or should I do it now?
What? Which is item number 13? Why don't we pull it? I was going to make some comments.
I'll just wait to pull it, because I want the people at home to learn.
Yes, exactly. That's what I was going to say, too. All right. Ms. Brenner, do you have anything to pull on the consent -- or comment on the consent calendar?
I'm so sorry. Do you want to say?
Any comments on the consent calendar? No?
I don't.
Okay. Let's proceed into item number two, Central Library Lecture Hall Proposal. And the Board of Library Trustees is presenting a detailed proposal for a lecture hall facility on the Central Library campus. And we have the library director, Mr. Tim Heatherton. Would you please proceed?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. At this time, I'd like to introduce trustee Jill Johnson Tucker, who will be presenting the board's proposal for a lecture hall.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. As you said, I'm Jill Johnson Tucker. I'm on the Board of Library Trustees. We have all of the trustees here today in support of the proposal, as well as a number of members from the Foundation and the Friends Group, and quite a few members of the public, too. Thank you all for showing up. And I also would like to say thank you to staff for helping in reaching the point where we can present this proposal, Tim, as well as the rest of the members of the city staff. I think you might all be aware that the central branch of the Newport Beach Public Library turns 25 this year. It's hard to believe, since the library still feels fresh and modern. Adjustments have been made through the years, especially the 17,000-square-foot expansion in 2013 that added more quiet study space and expanded the children's library, as well as adding a media lab and a sound studio. The building's now 71,000 square feet and is by far the largest library in our four-branch system, and in many ways serves as a cultural hub of the city. When our library was constructed 25 years ago, much of what goes on in the library today was not imaginable to the staff and patrons back then. While the library remains busy with old-school things, like residents checking out stacks of hardcover books and quiet reading, it's also buzzing with other activities, such as the use of media labs or laptops and off-site uses like eBooks. Aside from the changes in technology, the biggest change we've seen is the surge in programming. It's the number-one growth area in public libraries nationwide. And at the Newport Beach Public Library, in just the past nine years, our annual program attendance has more than doubled from nearly 28,000 attendees, which is pretty surprising in itself, to just under 70,000 attendees in 2018. Some of the programming is planned by our exceptional library staff. We're also lucky to have two vibrant support groups who raise funding for and sponsor our programs. The Foundation sponsors the prestigious Whitty Lecture Series, which brings in lecturers who are nationally recognized in their chosen fields. And I've given all of you a folder. Please feel free to flip through this orange book. It's a little bit outdated, but it'll give you a history of all the Whitty Lectures speakers through the years. They include early lecturers Andy Rooney and Tom Brokaw, more recently Doris Kearns Goodwin, prominent authors Alexander McCall Smith, Anna Quinlan, and Zadie Smith. And this year includes prominent speakers such as Amy Walter, a political analyst and producer of The Cook Report, who was here last Friday evening and Saturday afternoon to sell out crowds that sold out months ago, who were riveted by her bipartisan presentation. I'm also excited to hear from Joel Sartori in a few weeks. I learned about him on 60 Minutes last spring, and he is single-handedly trying to photograph every creature on the planet. It's going to be a really interesting lecture. Library Live, also a Foundation subcommittee, hosts popular current authors, including Pulitzer Prize winner Colson Whitehead from last year. In fact, since 1998, we've had 17 Pulitzer Prize-winning authors pay us a visit. The Foundation also sponsors the financial series Itch Your Money. Their series Medicine in Your Backyard is an eight-part program with UCI doctors delving into different topics affecting our health and medical care. Meanwhile, the Friends funds Sunday musicals, Beyond the Canvas art lectures, college planning workshops, and numerous children's programs. We always have a calendar bursting with terrific programs to enrich the lives of our residents. All of these types of programs are presented in our useful, multipurpose Friends Room, a large, flat-floored room of 2,600 square feet. The room is perfect for many events the library hosts, like this fancy-nancy dress-up day. Or the literacy potluck awards luncheons, and of course, the quarterly Friends book sale blowout. If you haven't been to that, you've got to see it. However, it's not ideal for the majority of the lectures. My biggest issue, as a woman of average height, is the sightlines. Even with an elevated stage, the lecture is frequently blocked. Actually, this picture, the previous picture, was taken by someone standing. The next picture is more accurate of the sightlines. That was actually taken by a trustee's wife on Friday at our lecture, and she's about my height. That's what she could see. So the room itself is a bit long and narrow for lectures and does not have state-of-the-art AV. Lots of folks complain it's hard to hear, and we don't have the necessary lighting to highlight the speaker or the technology to do the best slideshows or presentations. The room must be set up and broken down with stackable chairs whenever an event is scheduled, and sometimes that's several times a day. And capacity is a rather skimpy 187. Our programs would be much better suited to a lecture hall with a raked or sloped floor so that there's no bad seat in the house. Actually, this is a really beautiful -- but too small. The seats would be comfortable, fixed chairs. Audiovisual would be state-of-the-art, and we would expand the capacity to around 275, with room for additional stacked chairs to be brought in for 50 more seats for the most in-demand events. We have so much to be proud of at the Newport Beach Public Library. For 10 of the past 11 years, we've been named a Star Library by the Library Journal. There are 257 Star Libraries nationwide, but only four located in all of Southern California. And the Newport Beach Public Library is the only Star Library in Orange County. Obviously, our library system, staff, and offerings are amongst the very best. But when we compare our facilities with our peer libraries, we fall a bit short. We share a similar population and library budget with five other California library systems, and together we informally form a peer group. We frequently compare ourselves to these other libraries and to ascertain how we're doing in a number of areas. And typically, we're pretty much towards the top in all the categories. But out of the six of us, four have a sloped-floor lecture hall or auditorium, either as part of their library campus or in an adjacent city-owned facility. Of our peers in California, only the Newport Beach Public Library and the Cerritos Library lack a sloped-floor lecture hall. But not to worry. We have a plan to rectify that. The Board of Library Trustees has been studying our site for a number of years to determine if we had a location that would accommodate a lecture hall. Initially, back in 2016, we worked with a local architect to consider the various obvious corners of our lot. We learned from that early study that the most obvious options led to what the trustees deemed too great a reduction in parking on our main lot. And then in the past year, and thank you for providing the funding, we worked with the architect who designed the Central Library 25 years ago to see if she could find another solution that we may have overlooked. And you can see there are four options outlined, as well as two others that we considered that are lightly outlined. We created an ad hoc committee made up of library trustees and Foundation members, along with library director Tim Heatherton and assistant city manager Carol Jacobs, to meet with the architect and her associates and to refine our wish list. The committee also took day trips to San Diego, San Francisco, and Los Angeles to visit lecture halls of similar sizes. We're now at the point where we feel we have completed an exhaustive study and are comfortable that we've identified features and a location that would work very well. As to the facility itself, in addition to seating about 275, with room to bring in additional stacked chairs and a sloped floor, the lecture hall would have a small green room behind the stage for the speakers. The venue should also have additional restrooms and perhaps a small catering kitchen if space permits. It would have natural light to make it more inviting for all our daytime events and a small lobby for pre-function gathering in inclement weather. All told, if we're careful to keep to what's necessary, the building could be approximately 7,000 or perhaps 8,000 square feet. Our preferred location, as this depicts, is in the northwest corner of the library lot. For the best aesthetic feel, we would push -- and Tim's going to help me here. We would push the building -- now, back to the previous one. We're showing them how we pushed it over. For the best aesthetic feel, we would push the building partially over the retention ditch that runs along Avocado. We've recently learned that while a part of this setback is a bioswell that was built in conjunction with City Hall, most of it doesn't serve that purpose and can be reconfigured to allow use of that part of the setback. We think this location functions very well because it's close enough to the original lobby of the Central Library and the administrative offices so that it would be convenient for library staff to oversee the building when in use. And it's contiguous to Bamboo Courtyard, which is right there, and the Friends Room, so that for pre-function events and for book signings and all the types of things that we typically do with some of the bigger lectures, they would be contiguous. Another plus is that it would also be a beacon to the community that interesting things are happening at the library with its prominent location next to the Central Library entrance in Avocado. Driving down Avocado, we imagine a glass lobby that's interesting during the day and light-filled in the evenings when a program is underway, calling out to the residents to come and see what's happening. In this sketch, which was done very early on, you can see the building slightly larger than we hoped, and it's not been pushed over the setback, but you can see how well it interplays with the rest of the library campus. Another very important benefit to this location is it would require a minimal use of existing parking. Perhaps around 12 to 15 parking spots would need to be relocated. We propose that those spots be moved to the drive aisle -- oh, Tim's got it there -- be moved to the drive aisle into the parking structure. Currently, there are three picnic tables in this location and the really cute big white bunny. However, it's a noisy spot. There's air conditioning right next to MacArthur. It's better suited for parking than for picnicking, and the three underutilized tables could be easily moved to a better spot. Relocating parking along this aisle would mean that all the parking spots displaced by the lecture hall could be recaptured. Additionally, there are 10 library staff spots in our lot. If necessary, we could ask the library staff to move their reserved spaces to the parking structure, thereby freeing up 10 additional spaces. In sum, under this plan, the library parking lot would be comparable today and perhaps even better. You might wonder where the programming funding would come from for the new lecture hall. If the library were to continue at its current pace with programming, the addition of a lecture hall would already be a big success and well-used. On average, week after week, there are around four programs that would be better served by a lecture hall. Nearly all of this program is funded and has been funded for many years by our two exceptional support groups. The Newport Beach Public Library Foundation raised approximately $750,000 last year, and the Friends Group raised around $300,000. While both of these groups support purchases of new equipment, reupholstery of furniture, subscription to periodicals, and the like, much of what they raise goes towards sponsoring the excellent programs we enjoy. The two support groups have been around for 30 and 62 years, respectively, and both are committed to continuing to elevate the quality of our library system. From the moment it opens, without any additional programming budgeting from the city, the lecture hall will be fully functioning with fabulous lectures and events. We also envision the lecture hall as a better venue for some of our nonprofit community groups, like the Chamber of Commerce, and city groups like the Police Department and Fire Department, which frequently use the Friends Rooms for programming and training. If we find that there are open times that won't adversely affect the library patronage and parking, we could consider renting the facility to local businesses for seminars and staff training sessions. We understand that the most likely avenue for getting this facility built is to help with the funding as a public-private partnership. Our ad hoc committee has folks that know a bit about architecture, know a bit about construction, and happily know quite a bit about capital campaigns and fundraising. Within this small group, which will grow significantly once this project moves forward, we've put together a non-binding pledge agreement in support of the lecture hall. These agreements will hopefully be converted into real pledges when a capital campaign is launched, but at this point, the pledges are more a show of interest and an expression of an intent to support the lecture hall. Nevertheless, without much effort, the pledges are now over $750,000. Our hope is that this will give you confidence that, once we have a concept plan and elevations and the city council's support, we can launch a capital campaign and do our part to help fund the lecture hall. So our firm will request to move this forward from the library trustees is that the city council authorize staff to prepare requests for proposal based on needs identified by the trustees, and thereafter review the reply bids leading to the selection of an architect for the planning and designing of the lecture hall, and that the city fund the architectural services. While the Newport Beach Public Library has adapted so admirably to many of the changes that have come along in the past 25 years, we've not done all we can to support the demand for programming. The most wonderful amenity we could add to our library system and that would benefit the entire city of Newport Beach is a proper lecture hall. It would be a comfortable gathering spot to be educated, to be entertained, to converse with neighbors after a particularly riveting lecture. Robert Putnam, Harvard professor and author of Bowling Alone, a book that warns of our isolation and our increasing disconnection from friends and neighbors, notes that people may go to the library looking mainly for information, but they find each other there. That is certainly true of the Newport Beach Public Library. We would like to continue expanding on the role we play in bringing together friends and neighbors, in creating opportunities to engage and interact. We already have the top-notch program in place. We just need a proper lecture hall to support it, and wouldn't that be a great 25th birthday present for us? Thank you.
Thank you. That's your great support group. Let me ask my colleagues. Mr. Avery, any comments?
Well, I think it's -- I've always thought it's just an outstanding -- would be an outstanding contribution to the community for all the reasons stated, and I'm totally in support. I think -- and especially given the trustees and the Foundation's efforts to raise funds, or at least pledges thus far. So I think if we can get to kind of a -- some kind of a match and challenge the community to participate, I think we'd be well on our way. So I'm all in on this. Thank you.
I guess I don't see any other council speakers, but do you want Mr. Mayor Potem? Would you like to make a comment?
Sure. So, Dave, let's walk through real quickly what it would look like going forward, so I have a sense of the procedure. So let's assume for a moment that we kicked out an RFP on this. What's the timing on kicking out an RFP, then getting it back, and then bringing it back to council? Do you have an estimate on what that would look -- do you have a general guess on what the cost of the RFP would be on architectural services like this?
I do -- I would say it's probably three or four months to go through the whole process of developing the RFP, selecting the consultant, and getting it back to council with the contract. I don't have an idea on cost total, because with the recent change in law, we'll have to do a request for both concept and design, whether you execute the whole thing. That can run anywhere from 8% of the building, and I didn't catch how expensive -- we don't know yet how the building is, but you're into probably several hundred thousand dollars in design costs to start. And again, you could go to the concept and decide to go forward or not, and that's probably in the 50 to 70 range, probably.
Sorry. Walk me through that again. So if we bring it out for RFP, can we split it into phases in terms of the contract? So let's say someone bids it back at 300 or 400,000, but the concept phase is 50. Would we be able to look at it, say, okay, let's -- and then can we value engineer it with a concept? Can we estimate how much the building's going to cost with concept instead of full architectural drawings?
You can. There's general rules of thumb on how much per square foot. So if it's, let's say it's about $600, or this could be a little $700 a square foot, depends how big the building is. You can come up with a rough cost in that. And you can do it -- we can get the proposal for the whole architectural services, but just award it. So we're just going to go to the concept phase, wait for council, approve the next one, and then move forward in that. Concept phase could be development of that, coming to you, getting that, and from there we have to go through environmental approval. And then this would go right into design. There's no coast commission or anything like that on it. So your next -- let's say your next request, we put money in the budget or make sure we're funded. You approve that. We get the architect contract to you. That would be, say, three or four months. We would work with the Arts Commission and the folks to get to a concept with you. So let's say after that, I don't know how long that's going to take, you would approve that, and we'd move from there. If that makes sense?
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, then so we would -- we could move forward on an RFP for full services. We could bring it -- we could really just make sure we're phased in on the concept side. Then, once we have the concept side, take an estimate of what we think it would cost. Once we have an estimate of what it would cost, then we talk with Board of Library Trustees, Arts Commission, Friends, et cetera, about what the city's willing to put in. I mean, I'd like to have a general guess on what the cost of the building would be before we would move all the way forward. And then, Erin, could you remind me on this? When we go in with another organization to fundraise, how does that work in terms of allowing the -- I actually, I guess I'll just ask. How does it work when we start working with an outside group to fundraise for a public project?
Yeah. So we've entered into agreements in the past where we do -- where we allow, authorize them to fundraise and that the cities participate in. So that's something we can work through fairly easily, if that's the council's pleasure.
Great. I say then we ought to move forward and get to that, at least the concept phase, where we have an idea of what the cost will be so we can have a better discussion about the money. I think this is a great project. My concern, frankly, is the cost and where we find it in the budget. So once we get to the -- but it's hard to have that discussion without having a concept phase and having a discussion about it. So I support at least getting to that point and moving forward from there.
I just want to do a follow-up question to that. So just to clarify, as we go into our budget phase in the next few weeks, so we're talking -- Mr. O'Neill?
I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just want to clarify your original question, and I just, from a budgeting standpoint, as we go forward, assuming we do go forward, so that we include it in the 2019-20 budget proposal capital program. So to do the initial concept is X number of dollars, 70,000 approximately, but also on top of that, to take it to the next iteration of design contained in this 2019/20 budget proposal, whatever. We're just going to have to do our best guess.
We do have some very rough and high estimate of 1,000 a square foot, and that would be 7, 8 million.
And that would, in terms of the total cost, but the total cost of the next phase of architectural design is what I'm saying, to put into the currently newly proposed budget that we'll be discussing.
Just on that thought, you could also appropriate that at the time when we bring you the proposal, because we don't really know those numbers yet.
Yes.
And I don't know if we'll be in time for -- this will be adopted in May.
Yes.
It's going to be right around there. So we can bring it back and have you appropriate the funds. And then one other comment on that while we were talking, Jill just mentioned something. If you have some upper-end caps you want to talk about, we could design it back through the RFP to say, we're looking for an 8 million, no more than an $8 million building. That kind of confines the square footage on those basic rules of thumb. And again, I don't know, Jill, what you guys had in mind. You've done some rough estimates, but I've heard 7.5, 8 million total. With that number and maybe a commitment from what you're thinking from the library board, we can kind of put it together.
Okay. I guess my overall objective is for this new budget that we put in, if we all agree, put in the sufficient number, amount of funds so that we don't have to keep going back and forth with the budget amendments and that type of thing, so it's locked in as a line item. Ms. Brenner?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for such a great presentation, but I also wanted to say that I think there might not be any programs in the city that have the breadth of support that this program has because of the number of attendees. And the fundraising efforts might be even more successful than you anticipate right now. But in addition to that, I wanted to add, for those who think that we shouldn't spend money on things like this, I toured the new CDM Library yesterday with Dave, Grace and I there, and the foreman there said that realtors in the area had stopped by to tell him that he was increasing the property value of the people that live around there. So in the long run, we actually are getting a lot of the money back that we spend on amenities like this. So I would definitely be in support of doing whatever we can.
Okay. Mr. Avery?
So, Dave, the concept would give us sort of an idea of palette of materials?
Typically, we'd get down to a level of some elevations. You'd have a floor plan, some elevations. We'd have the architect give you an idea of what the type of materials would be, maybe not the specific ones, but a good idea, tile and things. That's a time for you and the community to comment on it. Show some level of landscaping, and come up with a cost estimate and square footage, basically. Enough for you to make a decision if you want to fund this and go forward.
And it would include some renderings of a completed building and all that?
Yes. We do side and profile elevations on it.
And ideally, the building that gets built would be the concept. I mean, it would look very close to the concept or be the concept.
Yeah, we usually deliver that building.
Yeah.
Close by. There'll be value engineers, as Mr. O'Neill said, as you go through it, trying to keep on that budget. Let's say it's an $8 million project. We hardline them in the design and make them design to that. So you might have one point, we got to VE some material down to get the costs in play.
Right. Yeah. Great. It's so important, from a fundraising standpoint, for the library folks to have something like this, a document like this, to go out and show people, and it just gives it real life and it shows the direction. And obviously, it's compelling, but also there's not a property buy here, you know, and it's the city's partner, so it's great. But I think it'll help the fundraising side of it quite a bit. Thank you.
Clarify, if you would, your comment about a court case, because this is -- I think this would be informative to the community because it reflects all projects going forward. Explain the concept versus the final design. What is -- what's the new case law on this?
So the new case law has to do with, if you're going to do a concept plan, you have two ways to do it. You can do an RFP for just the concept and then go back out for design, but what happens often is that architect, whoever worked on that concept, is no longer able to propose on the design because of conflicts or maybe trying to inflate the project costs. The other way to do it is go out for an RFP, which we'd probably prefer, for the entire project and break it into parts. How much for the concept, once you're there, and how much for the design. There's some other things, environmental soil work and things like that that go in there. And then we only go up to concept approval, and then we make the choice, do we execute Part B with the design? If not, we don't pay them that money.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot of sense then. Okay. Any other questions up here? We'll push it out to the public. I think there are probably a few colleagues out here would like to make a comment, and I'll open it up to the public. Please come forward. Thank you, Jill. Excellent presentation.
Oh, thank you for letting me take the time. I only mentioned to a couple of people that they might want to speak. Do you have any limits? Because I don't -- I know everybody would like to speak, but I don't want you to be here all day.
Well, I would say that if they each speak on some different aspect of why they are supporting it, but a few members of the community, we'd love to hear from them. Please come forward, anyone who wants to speak.
My name is Elizabeth Starr, and 25 years ago, my husband and I were given the job of raising the money to build the Newport Beach Public Library. What I didn't realize after I took the job was that there was a recession, and money was a different story in Newport Beach. But we ended up raising -- we were told to raise $1 million, that was what, and that the city was going to pay the rest of the fund. We ended up raising $2 million through a lot of schemes of having parties for doctors, and doctors said we don't give money, but the patients gave money. We ran readathons for little children who gave us $2.50. But we got there, and as one person said, if we all participate, it will happen, and that's what really happened. And it's -- I'm so proud of the Newport Beach Public Library, the number of people that come in the door every day. It's crowded every day. We're serving all the universities and all the high schools in this area, as well as small children. The Corona Del Mar Library frequently has 100 people to storytime. There are 50 little children and 50 Mexican nannies that are there. So we're teaching everybody English and doing -- So, we're, we're teaching, we're teaching everybody English and, and doing a wonderful job, and I totally support having this lecture hall. It will be a wonderful addition to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I too got involved with the library 25 years ago, and that's when I met Elizabeth Starr and her wonderful family.
Could you state your name, please?
Lizanne Whitty. Lizanne Whitty. And I've watched the programming grow, I've been involved with the Library Foundation off and on over the years. And the one thing that I've, that's been missing in this community has been a cultural gathering place. There is no theater like in neighboring towns. There is no auditorium. There is nothing that will actually bring people together in a, in a space, and I think it's, the time has come. It would just be such a gift to the community, especially after 25 years. People want to get away from their televisions, they want to be lifelong learners, they want to be, engage with each other, as we find after the lectures, for coffee and cookies or a glass of wine or, every, all ages, young, old, it's the most democratic place in town, but we need a better facility. We need a stage, we need state-of-the-art screens, just like you have here, we need the great seats like you have here, we need the acoustics like you have here. We've been making do, and it's been great. It's been quite a journey, but we really hope he will endorse his plan, and we look forward to working with you all to make this a big success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, okay, I hope, please hold your applause. Next speaker, please. If you, if there are multiple people, please come forward and take another position at the other lectern, please.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. You've heard from me before, my name's Dorothy Larson. I'm the immediate past chair of the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation and, as well, a past chairman of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, who also endorses this project. Mainly, I want to say, I've talked to a lot of people in the community about this, and one of the comments I got the other day was, "We need to build for the future." And the question was, is this something that will be needed in the future? And my, I thought about that for a few days, actually, after the discussion that we had, which was a positive one, by the way, but it, it gave me food for thought. If, and I really wanted to invite you to these last couple of lectures and the next one, as I did last year, but they were sold out, sorry. If you had been able to participate in the last one, everyone gathered afterward and had very engaging conversation about the lecture, about the author, about the topics, about everything. It was amazing. I took a picture of the clock on the wall, it was like 9:30 or 10:00 before people were leaving the library. So my, my point is, to build for the future in the high-tech world we're in, we need this combination of a high-tech, high-touch place where we can all come together and learn, as Lizanne stated so well, because we all want to continue to learn. So, that's basically what I have to say. This is going to be a fabulous facility, and you'll be able to attend the lectures.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Walter Starr. I've had the honor to speak several times about my books at the Friends Room, and it's a great room, but from an author's perspective, from a speaker's perspective, it has the same difficulty that you saw in that picture from the back. You can't see the speaker real well? Well, the speaker can't see the audience real well. And that makes it harder to engage. I love to have eye contact with the people who are asking me questions and answer their questions and get into a discussion, and that's hard in the current flat room. What will be great about this new room, it'll be more like a business school classroom or a law school classroom or our competitors' facilities that will enable one to have a discussion with the audience. And, so, I think you're going to find, I mean, we've had wonderful success in getting authors and speakers, but I think you're going to find even more people wanting to come to Newport Beach to speak in this new facility. I'm all in.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, well, we'll bring it back. Any other comments up here? I just want to say, I also endorse this exciting new project. Actually, as I'm sitting here listening to it and seeing the plans, it strikes me as modest, which is okay, I don't mean that as a criticism, that we're, it's appropriate to scale to the civic center facilities, and it will be with, with a good architectural design, as you said, Jill, kind of a beacon of light to, for our civic center, for our library. And as we go forward, I, I wish you all great success in the fundraising, to follow Elizabeth's comments. You can double your projections, because I'm sure you will exceed your, your projections, and that will benefit the community. And so, as we go forward in the budget process, Dave and Grace, let's get the right numbers in there so we can make this process smooth as we go forward, and with council's support to be determined as we go through the budget process. But I heartily endorse it, and thank you for your hard work. This has been going on now several years, and you're bringing it forward almost to the finish line for budgeting. So, well job, well done, and thank you all for your community's support and engagement. And that, is it? Tim, did you have any other closing comments or staff? Okay, so you have our, do we, I guess, do we, do we need a voice of support from the council? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, speaking of capital improvement, we'll go to the next item, the overall budget for capital improvement. Mr. Webb, would you like to present the preliminary new funding proposed? Not all current and our carryover, it's only new funding, correct? Okay.
And just briefly, before we get started on this item, I know that several council members have different items during the presentation that they have conflicts on. So, when we get to the slides that have the conflicts, the council members will announce their conflict, and then, to the extent there was, there's discussion regarding the particular item, then the council member can get up and leave the room while there's that discussion.
Very good.
Can I just?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, Mr. Webb, just two, two quick things. During this presentation, I'm just going to point out, one, I want to make sure we stop and talk about Grant-Hale Park, given the, the dollar amounts. And the second is, I want to make sure that when we're going through the project, we're talking about the funding sources, in particular, anytime it says NEF, or when we get to Grant-Hale, it's FFP. I want to make sure we stop and talk just a little bit about why any project is using NEF, Neighborhood Enhancement Funding, given the, given the size of our surplus and the way we use Neighborhood Enhancement Funding. And the reason, I'll just preview this for you, is I would love to see as much Neighborhood Enhancement Funding going toward the Grant-Hale Park instead of FFP as possible. So I'd like to make sure we're looking at the allocation of funds as we go through this particular presentation. So I, I wanted to at least preview that for you as we go through. Thank you.
Thank you for that. To start off, good afternoon, my name's Dave Webb, Director of Public Works, and excited to bring this to you, that's come up every year faster and faster, but we're here at the point of a long road. We start in December on our capital improvement project every year, and we listen to the community, we go through our master plans, we meet with all the departments, we go through council's early look and goal setting, and it culminates into kind of a first look here of the various projects we're looking at. Again, as Mayor Dixon said, this is just new money we're looking to add to the existing capital program. The existing capital program stays with, as it goes forward and gets completed, and these would be added to it should you choose that. To start off with, some of the guidelines and things that set up this discussion. This budget focuses on maintaining its existing infrastructure in good working condition, and it also is assuming that we're going to do another $5 million in general fund investment towards citywide infrastructure repairs. We also have in this proposal $4.9 million in Neighborhood Enhancement money, and we'll talk about that as we go along. And then, we're really continuing to invest in Newport Harbor and the parks and replacement of our existing buildings, and that's the bolts of our city to keep that going. So that's where the emphasis of the program will be on. And I'm going to go by category again, and I will, if you'd like, I'll go through the whole thing, and then we'll stop and take any questions and anything you need on that. In noting Mr. Harp's conflicts, we'll have to talk about that as we go through if those projects arise, so.
So, as we get to each slide, I think there's a conflict on the Girls and Boys Club at Eastbluff, so if you want to announce that now, and then if there's actual discussion on it, then we can, then you can leave the room.
Thank you, yes. Although this is outside of the conflict zone, it is just one skip away from that zone. So just for the sake of the appearance of conflict, I'm going to recuse myself on the Girls and Boy Scouts clubhouse issue. I'll step out that time.
And then, as you look at the first slide here for your convenience, we've, we put the funding in a couple of colors. Green is a new project, and then a black funded note will be an add to an existing project. And the notations next to the funds are the various funds it's coming from, and at the bottom in the small print, you'll see what those actually are if I missed to talk about that. So, our first project is our Big Canyon Reservoir Building Rehab. Up at our reservoir, we have several buildings up there that are over top of our pump stations and our critical facilities, and we need to do some rehab on that. So this would be coming out of the water fund, we're looking to about $150,000 of work up there. Second project on the list is the Cliff Drive Park Clubhouse, and this is exterior work only. The clubhouse walls are having some issues with wear, water damage, et cetera, so we're going to put some money in under our BET Fund, which is our Building Excise Tax Fund, and we'd be replacing the walls, exteriors only, on that clubhouse. Third project on this list is a compressed natural gas fueling system expansion at the Corporation Yard. As you've seen, as we buy new equipment anymore, and all the heavy equipment is not diesel anymore, it's natural gas, and we do have a natural gas facility up there, but the, the Refuge Fleet and all our sweepers and other fleets are now fixing over, so we're going to need to do an expansion on that and maybe even do what they do in a lot of places, a slow fill system where we plug them in overnight. So, this would start that project, and it comes out of the Air Quality Management District Subversion Funds. We also have cap, major capital facilities maintenance every year. This year, we're programming about $2.5 million in this fund. I show $2.2 million here, and this would be for things like working on the various window components on this building, changing the chiller and the major compressor, compressor on the Central Library Building, changing and replacing roofs at our Corporation Yard and our Utility Yard. There's a whole list of projects that come out of that program that'll go into this funding. We had two projects carrying over through, the police station remodel, which is the bathrooms and the locker rooms, and also below that is the police station shooting range and rehabilitation. The first one is under the FMMP program. The second one comes out of FMMP, but it also comes out of environmental liability. We're using that fund because we have a lot of lead cleanup we have to do in the existing shooting room before we get it to the new shooting range condition. And then, lastly on this, we have just a project we wanted to follow up, we talked a little bit about at our planning session, the Girls and Boys Club, and maybe having some contribution to that. So, we weren't sure where the council wanted to go on that, I have a question mark there and wondering if you wanted to contribute any. I know they're doing extensive fundraising, they have one major facility over in Eastbluff, and there has been, I haven't heard they've asked directly, but they were interested if the council wishes to contribute anything and any amount in that.
I don't know if, is Simone here? Simone, did we have, did you have a chance to find out the market value of that land that we donate to the Boys and Girls Club?
You know, we, that's an appraisal report that we're still working on, so we don't have that actual value just yet.
Okay, I understand. When, when do you think we'll have that?
It's going to be probably a couple more weeks before we actually get the report back.
So prior to finishing the budget, we'll be, we'll be able to know? Because that will inform our thinking, because the value of that land is similar to how we valued the Girl Scouts facility at Marina Park. I mean, that's an important part of the contribution. Okay, all right, thank you. Any comments about the Boys and Girls Club up here? Yea or nay, or to be determined? I guess once we determine that missing identification of the value? Okay, all right.
Were there any comments on any of the other projects on this list? Okay, thank you, I'm going to move on to the next category. This is our biggest category, and before I start, I failed to introduce Mike Sinekori next to me, or Acting City Senator, he slipped in here on me, but he'll be answering questions as well today. So as we move into our next category, again, this is a large category, multiple pages, so I'll go page at a time on this and identify any concerns.
Mayor, I should probably state, because on the next page, it's streets and drainage also, that I need to recuse myself from Balboa Island Drainage Master Plan because of real property interests. If there's any discussion, I'll be leaving the room.
Okay.
So, our first project on here is alley reconstruction. There are three alleys up in the West Cliff area, just north of the West Cliff-Irvine Avenue intersection that we want to do. The current rebudgeting on this is general fund, but there was a need for Neighborhood Enhancement. We thought it was in that neighborhood, might be appropriate. And why Neighborhood Enhancement, I'll talk to you later about our programming. Our street programs come from various funds. The primary funds are gas tax, Measure M, and now SB1. We also use general fund to supplement that. We've programmed in this budget, you'll see today, the full SB1 funds, which we're expecting to get 1.5 million. We've also programmed all the gas tax we expect, which is another 1.5 million, and we've programmed $1.2 million in Measure M fair share fees in various street projects. There was not enough money left over to address this, so I did choose to use a little Neighborhood Enhancement on these alleys projects. As I go through, I'll go to the end of the page, and then we can circle back on that.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So as you were going through this, one of the things I recall correctly is that when SB1 was passed, part of the conversation that we had had was, was this something that Newport needed, or was it something that we'd be able to advance our, advance forward because of the combination of measure, I'm sorry, when I say advance forward, I mean advance projects forward that we already have in our master plan on, and street repair and replacement and whatnot. And the, the understanding that I had was that SB1 was essentially something that we would be able to advance. It was something that if we had a, everything, we didn't have any deferred maintenance, we didn't have any deferred street repair, but what we were able to do with the SB1 is advance them a year here and there and do additional enhancements. So I'd like to make sure when we're talking, when I'm understanding where we're going through this, it's kind of a question of, are we, are we in a normal cycle? Are we advancing any of these projects? And the reason I come back to it, I think people will see, I mean, the Grant-Hale Park rehabilitation that we're talking about is $5.5 million in new money that is coming out of the FFP, and the FFP has a fairly dwindling amount coming in because we typically for, we typically have the FFP coming through development fees, and the development fee pipeline is, it's not what it was, and that's, that's fine, but we need to at least take that into account in realities. And so, when we're working through the, a $5.5 million hit to the FFP, given that, and then, I'll just say one other thing, given that NEF money is something that we certainly don't depend on, given that it's a, it's half of a surplus, and a surplus is no guarantee in any given year, I'm, I want to make sure we're not, we're not advancing things to the detriment of our FFP project, so, the FFP fund. So, the combination of using NEF money that we can't, we can't rely on year over year, and the SB1 that I've understood we advance projects on, I'd like to make sure that I know what is in the normal cycle and what's being advanced as we go through streets and drainage.
So, in the projects you're going to see are all coming in from the street and drainage side, particularly the pavement programs, are all coming out of our pavement management plan. And there, there is obviously a program on there, I don't have all the details today, but we addressed this year's proposed allocations on that. I think we covered all these years, but we're not carrying a backlog, is that correct? You recalled, Mike?
That's correct, and these aren't advancing projects. We're actually coming up with somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $9 million worth of projects every year in the next seven years, as we're looking out towards what we're, where we need to do work. It's running more than the SB1 funds, more than the Measure M funds, and more than the gas tax funds we have. So, we've supplemented before with general fund, the NEF funds is another source that we were thinking of supplementing from. It's really council's call, but the amount of projects is more than just those first three.
Mr. Muldoon, do you have a question?
Yeah, just, I excuse myself when Mayor Portimoneal mentioned Grant-Hale Park. I will recuse myself further down the road as well, as related to potential conflict. Now, we don't know what that conflict was, and apparently I conflicted myself on a prior vote. I don't think I actually have a conflict, but I'm going to play it safe. Thank you.
I have a question, on the $910,000 general fund, just to follow up in your comment, Mr. Sinekori. So, I don't remember, I could be wrong, but in prior capital improvement budget line items on street repair, I know I've said many times publicly commending the staff for obtaining funds for Measure M, external funds, for whatever reason, is this to take almost a million dollars out of our general fund for neighborhood streets? I think it's important, I'm not questioning it, I'm just the source of funds is what I'm questioning. Have we taken it out of general fund before?
We, we have on that, and I'll just frame that, that we balance the funds between how much gas tax, Measure M, SB1, and general fund, and the pavement needs. So this year, we have a large slurry seal program, this is all of CDM, the Upper CDM and Newport Coast, and it is about, about a million dollars there. We programmed general fund out of this. As we go through, I'll show you some of the big projects that are draining. For instance, SB 1 is all going into Cameo Highlands along with our Measure M. It's such a large project, and it's been on the books. We've kind of been pushing it. This year, we're going to try it. As you recall, several years ago, we did Cameo Shores, the lower part. We had to completely replace those streets. Cameo Highlands is in the same spot. It's, it's $2.9 million. Took all our SB 1 money and other money to go with that. And that's why you see some of this bleeding over into other funds. We could, for instance, and I'll just say, if you are uncomfortable, if we want to find more money to backfill Grand Howell Park, we could cut some of these, like the alley project. We could not do the $39,000. We could do some shuffling of that. And I'll go through it and then maybe get your thoughts after, so you can kind of understand the funding on that. That next project again goes right into that. There's an annual concrete program we do. And this is typically in the fall, we'll go out, we have seven-year cycle in the city. We'll go out in those neighborhoods and we'll do all the concrete work. That's the curb, gutters, ramps, sidewalks that need work. And then back in spring, we come back to the same neighborhoods and do the slurry. The reason why we do that is when we do concrete typically, it cuts open the streets. We have a lot of scars and things like that. It's a little messy. We come up and clean it up with the slurry after. We also do the slurry in the spring and the summer because that higher temperature works good, sets that slurry off. We don't have the neighborhood down so long. So there's a method to our madness, but some of these are rather large. This year, we have a couple of big areas, and that's why you see about $1 million in slurry. It also drove a higher concrete cost. In the past, we've had $500,000, $600,000 concrete programs. This one's $700,000. And I'll say that we could cut that back. I'm sure I could tell my guys to get back to, say, a half million. On that second project there, that funding split is $500,000 for Measure M and $200,000 for NEF. So we're not using all NEF. We're just supplementing it to make up the difference of money we're short. On that note, we'll go to the third project, which is an asphalt street repair project. This is citywide arterials. This is large potholes and failures in the city throughout. We do about a half million dollars a year on that. And that, again, this year is programmed for general fund because, as I show you later, we'll be out of gas tax and Measure M to do that.
So if we didn't have SB 1 funds, where would you get the money to do this? Would you take it out of general fund?
Well, we'd either take it out of general fund, or we'd not do some of the other projects you're going to see because there's a competition for that storm brain, for instance. We might do some other projects deferred. We might defer our pavement maintenance. And some of those areas might be concrete, which we can defer and have been a little bit. What you do is then you start creating a backlog. So it really is, it's, I hate to say, it's like a big tripoli game because we're working with the various funds and we're trying to figure out how to program and what to do. It's also with scheduling, when we can do it, how much workload there is. Can we get this done or not? It's a bit of science and it's a bit of art in here.
Well, let me just interject from the budgeting process, how appreciative I am for staff to go after these additional funds and be tenacious. We are very fortunate as a city because these investments in our infrastructure, as Councilmember Brenner said a moment ago, these kinds of capital improvements, whether it's a lecture hall, whether it's a fire station, or whether it's street improvement, affect property values in a positive way. I do know, we all know stories of other cities, neighboring cities, that are pulling back because of other demands on their general fund budget. They're not able to do the continuous cycle of street repair that we are doing on a seven- or eight-year cycle. And I've been hearing these, about talking about these cycles now for several years. And I'm just very grateful that we could continue to invest in our city and that you figure out ways that we could find funding sources. Taking it, I'm grateful for SB 1 funds. And we're all paying for those gas taxes. So we might as well get the money back. So I'm grateful for that. But anyway, these are important improvements to our infrastructure that make our city attractive to live and work and play in. And thank you, so as you continue to go. But these are sizable investments in our infrastructure.
On that note, Mayor, I'll also note that I haven't seen any grant calls for pavement work this year. If you recall, when we did MacArthur a couple of years ago, we had $1 million in grant funds for that. Once in a while, we see a call for projects, and there hasn't been any recently. So we always look for that, and we supplement this, which reduces the amount. So on this page, is there any other questions on that? And I'll continue through street and drainage. And then at the end, we can probably talk about how you might want to look at some of these projects. Second page there, we get more into our drainage issues. This is the Balboa Island Drainage Master Plan. And as we've talked a little bit before, we're moving towards more of an automated pump system on Balboa Island. It's going to take some time. We're going away from gravity drains and tide valves, which is very labor-intensive. Again, you've heard us talk about, and particularly Mark Vekoyevich's crews are out there, Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, we have 27 guys turning valves in the rain. That's how it's been done since 1920. We want to go more to an automated system, which Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, and others have already gone to. That takes that labor component out and takes a lot of risk out, and it gives us more of a 100-year protection. It's going to take some time. This starts the design process on that. So, and again, we don't have a drainage fee, so we use general fund to pay for drainage. And that's why it's general fund. We have another big street project in here, actually this, I'm sorry.
Give the Councilman Herman's already left the room. If there's any questions about this project, might be a good time to ask those. If not, welcome, welcome back.
So the next project on here is actually three pavement jobs. It's Bison Avenue, Bison from MacArthur to 73. It's San Joaquin Hills, MacArthur, from MacArthur to Jamboree, and also St. Nicholas over here in Newport Center. All three of those are looking for a major rehab overlay work. And you've got $913,000 there. And that's Measure M 2 fair share. Yes, I'm sorry. And there's a re-budget there. Total cost in that is 3.4 million. You'll see underneath there, you'll see the re-budget. Ocean Boulevard's our next project. This is a project we've talked about for some time. If you recall, several years ago, we were working on Poppy and also Ocean Boulevard in Corona Mar. We started down at Poppy and worked all the way down to basically Carnation. And now we need to do that last segment. We had some community involvement discussions out there. You may have recalled, there's some talk about maybe a design overlook. Ms. Brenner's been working on that. We're going to have to work with her and her community on that. So this is the money to complete that final phase from Ocean Boulevard.
Can I ask a question? So when you put it, when you say design, does that actually, are you saying the 1.6, 1.6 million's not going toward design, right?
No, this is design and construction. But we're just probably going to get design done next year. We're programming the construction too. Hopefully, we can get to that. But being in the coastal concern, being in a neighborhood like that, we may have some community meetings and need a little time on this project. But we plan on programming the entire project.
So is the, does the entire project, so isn't, so Ocean Boulevard, I'm sure you've met, you've met with lots of people on this, Councilmember Brenner. But I, so chime in if, if I'm understanding this correctly. It's Ocean Boulevard between Carnation and Goldenrod, which is three blocks. It costs, it costs $1.8 million to do three blocks of, of this work? Am I, am I misunderstanding the project?
I'm sorry.
Could I, could I just add one thing? It's the section above China Cove where it's extremely wide, and it needs to be redesigned to make it usable space. So it's more than just a three-block regular width road.
And again, that's basically going from Goldenrod to Carnation. It also turns on Carnation. I didn't put that on here. And it goes up Carnation to the end there. We have some sewer work later on programmed in there. But it's a big piece of concrete, and this would also take care of the overlook there. It's a pretty large street there.
How much should it cost for Ocean Boulevard all the way down up until we get to Goldenrod?
I cannot recall. Do you remember the, or maybe Mark, do you remember that number? Sorry.
That's okay. I.
It is a big number.
It's a big number.
These are complete replacements, remember. Concrete streets are expensive and they last a long time, but you take them completely out and put them back versus the other projects where they're asphalt overlays. We grind the top off and we put a layer of asphalt on top.
Okay.
And of course, if there's any savings and we get done, that'll obviously go back to the base funds. The project below that is the one I just mentioned, Cameo Highlands. This is a complete replacement of the streets, $2.9 million. We're using gas tax in there. And I noted they didn't put the SB 1, but we have SB 1, 1.5 million in there too. That's what makes up that 2.9 million. Below that, we have Mesa Drive, Mariners Library, and some various parking stall work. This is just a miscellaneous project. And again, I put neighborhood enhancement fund here. There's a project up to try to add more parking to the Mariners Library. So it's on Dover Drive right there. We need to do a little work. There's another project over in Santa Ana Heights where we need to do some street work at the end of Mesa Drive to collect, to correct some drainage problems and widen the street. And I forgot, there's one other little project in this. And that's why we put neighborhood in, I'm sorry. Old Newport, I'm sorry.
Mr. Muldoon has a question.
Mr. Harper's a landscape rehabilitation project, the one next listed, the one that I should have recused myself on?
No, it's, it's actually on the next page. It's the street light rehabilitation program, Three Circuit and East Bluff. If you want to announce it now, that way.
Well, I've noted here in the email that you stated, sorry to air this out in front of everybody. You sent me an email, Arian, and it said, "Streetlight Rehabilitation Program." Oh, that's what you just said, that's right. I'm sorry, West Coast Highway median. That's not this?
Yeah, we sent you, I'm sorry if you didn't get the other one. It's in the update. We confirmed that there wasn't telecommunications in that. And so I give you an updated email that, that basically just outlined is the Streetlight Rehabilitation Program, Three Circuit and East Bluff, which is on the next page.
And not the median.
And okay.
And not the median.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll just note that for when it comes up, the Streetlight Rehabilitation Program. I'll recuse myself due to business interest based on my dealings in wireless telecommunications and telecom undergrounding.
Arian, am I on the hook for Balboa?
Yeah, well, it's actually, just so we can clear out the rest of them. So there's West Coast Highway median landscaping phase where there's a couple conflicts on that one, if we want to have them announced now.
I have a question on that, Aaron. In West Newport?
Yeah, West Coast Highway, yes. My understanding is you own property or you have a property interest near there?
I wish. It's, mine's only in East and Corona Mar, East Coast Highway.
A business, business interest? I thought you, I thought you said you had an interest in Cappy's. Oh.
Oh, no, a neighbor owns Cappy's.
Oh, okay. I thought you told me you had had an interest. So you won't have a conflict there. West Coast Highway, though?
Yes, on that one, I will be, although I imagine it could be because the prior staff report said undergrounding because I don't know why I'd have one now. It's not related to real property interest. So just to be safe, I'll recuse myself in that item as well due to my business interest in telecommunications.
And then Councilman Avery on the Balboa Peninsula crosswalks?
Right, I'll be recusing myself based on real property interest.
And I also have a conflict on the West Coast Highway median landscape phase two due to real property interests.
No, you have it on the Balboa Peninsula crosswalks.
Also on the Balboa Peninsula crosswalks.
Okay.
Due to property, real property interests.
So that clears it up for the next couple pages. We're making progress.
So with that very clear, that last project on there is one we talked about at your goal setting. This is the re-landscaping and rehabilitation of Newport Boulevard. And again, we put that in neighborhood enhancement. This is surely a volunteer project. This is you come into the city on, coming off Coast Highway, I'm sorry, the 55 freeway coming into Newport on, right past 16th Street.
This is phase, that's phase two, and there's still going to be a phase three?
This is not PCH. This is actually Newport Boulevard as you come into the city.
Oh, I apologize.
So it'd be between 16th and Hospital Road. Going on to our next page then, we have another project we talked about at your planning session. This is Santa Ana Heights Avon Slope area. This is behind Ace Market, that area up there where we have a lot of city land with some private land, maybe needing a sidewalk in there. This would start the design element and try to put that project together. This would fund design and construction unless it gets very complex. We'll need to work with the community in this area too. Again, I figured neighborhood enhancement funding for this project as well. We, our next project on here, I know Mr. Muldoon has a conflict on this. This has to do with replacing some series circuit lighting up in East Bluff. Basically, East Bluff towards the bay. There's three circuits in there that need to be entirely replaced. They're series now. We're going to turn them over to parallel and turn them to LED lighting.
Excuse me, Ms. Brenner, did you have a question? Your name's there. Oh, okay.
I do on this one.
All right.
And I did use neighborhood enhancement on this also.
Yep, this is the one I wanted to talk about. So what, where are we in terms of life cycle in, on the, on street light rehabilitate, on this particular street light rehabilitation program? Because this is a fairly large number. And it is, it is funding that could be used otherwise for, for Grand Howell. And I haven't seen a project quite yet that I would like to reapportion on the, on the NEF money. But I do want to make sure that I understand the value proposition here on the Streetlight Rehabilitation Program because if this is one that doesn't need to be replaced right away, this is a pretty substantial amount of money that, if I recall correctly, one of the things that we've also done in terms of signal synchronization issues, and this sounds like something that would be used towards signal synchronization issues. We occasionally get OCTA grant money where we can use it. We usually, we can combine forces with other agencies to try to find grant funding for it. And I'm, I'm wondering if by doing this now, we're, you know, we're foregoing the opportunity down the road to, to be requesting that in the next few years. So this, this is the project that I wanted to make sure I understood the, the need versus, versus additional funding issues.
So the background on this project is through our signal, this is streetlights and not traffic signals. So we, there is no OCT money for streetlight replacement.
Fair enough, okay.
Not connected. However, we do have a streetlight master plan we've been following. We have five series circuits left. There are three in East Bluff and two in Corona Mar. As you know, we've been replacing those slowly over time. The problem with our series circuits are very high voltage. There are parts and fuses. We can't get parts for anymore. Now, to your question, Councilmember, can we put this off? We could probably get another year or two out of these. As we've done the other series circuits, we've been cannibalizing and taking parts. And we've been giving them to Mark's group. And I think we have a few fuses and things. And I'd have to ask Mark, do you think he can make it another year on this? So we've been trying to hit these projects, but I think we could defer this if that's an area you want to try. We'll just increase maybe some maintenance for a while. We also want to put the LED lights in there because we get a good payback on that, and it's a reduction in energy.
I thought Edison was funding some of this, or did we already go through that money?
We've used all the Edison grant money we can. We are in an energy partner program. We could try to get more for LED lights. There's nothing currently available. And if you recall, these are our lights. We own our streetlights, so Edison's not contributing on this project.
During the recent, oh, did you have any more questions?
No, that, that does answer the question. I, I had been thinking of this differently, so, okay.
During the recent storms, I have, I don't know if everyone has received letters from residents advising us that the streetlights are going out. And there's one, and Mark knows this, there's one band of streetlights that the vault is very old and getting flooded. Is this one of those that will be fixed so we can repair that particular streetlight? I think it, I don't know if it's East Bluff or Big Canyon or in that area.
I don't know, I don't know if this is one, but I, to the point, we do take a little risk. If something goes down, we have the parts. But remember, series, the way series work is when one goes down, the rest go down because they're tied together. If someone knocks down one of these poles, then we've got all the lights out. So can we?
Well, I fully support where Mayor Portem is going with this, trying to relieve our financial, facility's financial plan. I kind of think this probably is something that we.
I think so too. Yeah, no, I, that's why I was thinking, I admit I was thinking of this differently. So now that I've understood this, I take it back.
But you understand the direction here. We want to.
Actually, I need clarification direction. Is this an area you'd like to maybe try to defer or?
No.
No. Okay. That's why I would say I take it back. I misunderstood what this item was.
But we're, as we go through this, we're looking for ways that we can relieve the facility's financial plan of the $5.5 million that is going to be taken out of there for Grand Howell Park.
Absolutely. And I would note the project above it is purely discretionary. It's a project we've been trying to get to, and Mr. Avery and his folks have been talking for some time. But we have the program in there, but it is a discretionary project.
I'll leave it there. That's, I mean, that's fine.
So, okay. So, okay. And one last thing on that note, and I can always go back and check with Mr. Makoyevich, maybe we can do two circuits instead of three and reduce this a little bit if, if that's your desire. I don't know which ones are the worst.
Mr. Webb, I understand the issue better now. I, I will admit, I'm fully misunderstood what this item was, this, which is why I wanted to make sure I asked about it. Now that I understand it, I'm not asking for a cutback.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, we're going to talk about our, we have more storm brain work. This is citywide storm brain work. We've done, done a lot of it. It kind of ties into what we just did on Coast Highway. We've got a lot of corrugated metal pipes that we need to reline, so that's general fund. We have more tide valve replacement program this year, and we're using tidlin money for that. That's $200,000. And then the second phase of West Coast Highway, this is actually construction money to do phase two of West Coast Highway. Remember, we've constructed one, we've designed phase two, are ready to do construction. We have currently money in the budget now, $990,000. We're going to add $600,000 to that.
Could I just also make a comment for the record on the storm drain systems? Anything to do with storm drains? I've given some information to your staff, Mr. Webb, that there are grants available, private and public grants, because this relates to flooding and resiliency and preventative measures that cities can take to prevent floods. So maybe they're trying to get that, but I, it seems like that, it could be some approach that we might be able to get some out, external funds for resiliency purposes.
Right. And we'll, we'll look at that. We talked a little bit about hazard mitigation funds and that.
Yes.
So just one comment note, this also includes phase three. There's contribution money in, on the West Coast Highway there. That's what, there's $600,000. We're thinking about half a million dollars possibly coming in from a developer and also adding $100,000 in neighborhood enhancement to do phase three.
Okay.
Moving on to transportation, if we can. And we have switching seats. This is, we've talked about, this is our Balboa Peninsula Crosswalks. We have a current budget, and we're going to add to that. We're using Measure M2 money for this, $155,000 roughly. Dover Shores Traffic Studies, another project that's going on now. I'm not sure what this is going to cost. We're in the middle of that study, but we put money in there from, to possibly pay for speed bumps or other things they, they determine they're going to need in there. So that's, that, what that $100,000 is. We have another project here we talked about in the goal setting. This is McFadden Square, Ocean Boulevard, and the parking lot improvements. We're looking at putting in $350,000 in there. And I note that EL is not correct. It's not environmental liability. I'll have to have staff check that. But this is basically to look at maybe splitting the boardwalk from 36th to 15th, redoing McFadden Square and upgrading it. It's going to be a multi-year program where this is just get the design element going, start working with the community. Next project on there is traffic signal rehabilitation project, and this is where we try to do two or three of our signals, 123 signals every year. We actually have to rewire, relight, and do that. And that's, you can see general fund there. And then we also put in about $300,000 a year into signage, striping, and markings, doing bike lanes and various other elements that happen throughout the year.
Can I just ask an update on the street signage? Are we, have we fully replaced the street signs in the city? Where are we on that project?
I'm, fully replaced the street sign.
Well, to the new design we started about four years ago?
Are you talking the wave fighting signage?
Well, no, street signs. I mean, with the sale.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the ones on the signals, yes. We, we haven't got them all replaced yet. We do those as replace the signals, so the one above that, when we rehab that project, we'll make sure all the signs are changed out. We also try to do, when we do a pavement project, for instance, MacArthur, when we pave the street, we try to catch all the signs at one time. I don't know where we are, but we've done a significant amount of those.
So going back on the traffic signal rehabilitation program, what's the, this one, maybe I, I should ask the question on OCTA grant funding and whatnot. We're, we're using 840,000 out of general fund. Is this something that we ought to defer to see if we can find additional grant funding? Is this, is this something that is necessary right away? Where, where are we on this one?
So this is probably, what you're probably referring to, OCTA has had some programs out recently for synchronization and other modernization. This is not necessarily that. We've already put the synchronization in place. This is actually to replace the wires, the pole boxes, the lights on the poles themselves, sometimes even the poles and the foundations. And it's not necessarily subject to OCTA grant funding on that, that I know of.
Okay. Trying to find, trying to find sources of revenue here. All right.
And I'll just make a note, I mentioned above it the McFadden Square project. It has, it says EL, and it's not correct. It's actually neighborhood enhancement funds. It funds that project, the 350,000.
And just for the record on the traffic signal rehabilitation program, I do not have a conflict. I looked at much of that.
We are not putting any telecommunications or anything, not the.
Right, so I just wanted to make that clear.
You're legitimate.
So I will move on if that works for you. Our next category is our water quality and environmental. It's a small category. We're just putting in $200,000 to continue on with our TMDL program. Our, this covers our grants, some monitors studying, working on our copper studies and things like that, not a large program. And then we get into the next program, which is our harbors, beaches, and parks. And we're going to stop here. This is Grant Howell. We have, Mr. Muldoon needs to leave the room, and then we can have a discussion on this.
Yeah, I previously recused myself on this item. There could perhaps be some telecommunications involved, but I'm not certain, so I'm going to play it safe. Thank you.
Before we get into Mr. O'Neill's questions, I, I, just to concur, it's an awfully expensive park.
So let me explain a little bit on Grand Hall Park, and I'll, I'll be brief. And we're actually planning on bringing this back to you probably in April. This has just gone through our community meetings. It's gone through the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Committee just recently. The project is pretty significant. It talks about putting in synthetic fields, sports fields. It also talks about replacing the existing lighting out there with new LED lighting, removing some of the poles. It has a new playground over by the CYC Center. It refreshes the existing bathroom. It does a new, basically refresh along Fifth Street, which is, you remember, is a block wall now with really no sidewalk. The block wall is deteriorating. We're going to be taking that out, putting landscaping there, putting a sidewalk. It also undergrounds, there's about five utility poles right along there, changes out the trees. It's, it's pretty substantial. So the cost has been in the FFP for some time. I know it sounds like a lot, but we're doing a lot. Just putting the turf field, I'm sorry, the synthetic turf field in is quite expensive. So we could go over all that with you when we come back and talk about the project and the concept, and you could look at ways if you want to gear that down or, or maybe understand the project.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from Ms. Brenner.
My question, Dave, was how expensive is the synthetic field? And have we looked at that as far as, how does that compare to places, other places in the city where we have synthetic fields? Are they normally in neighborhoods like this? Because this is a pretty small park area with relatively little parking around it. So how does that compare to other places we've used synthetic fields?
So we've only used it in one other place, and that's Benita Canyon Sports Park. We did a study through PBR several years ago, and where they're looking for these type of fields is one, significant play, and two, lighted fields. Because the nice thing about synthetic, you really increase the playtime in it. I don't think Laura Delweiler's here today, but that's the drive behind that. Having that all-weather recreative surface. When we had all these rains recently, all our fields were out except Benita Canyon Sports Park, where they were playing on that as soon as the rain stopped. The big cost of putting in a synthetic field, however, is usually the underlining. We have to put a drainage system in to get the water off, and then we put basically the turf on top, which is basically carpet. The second time around, maybe 10, 15 years, replace it, it's much less because you're just replacing that turf. The, all the drainage and everything stays the same. So the initial cost is rather high to put these in. But the value here is the added playtime to the community. And this area was selected as the second choice for a synthetic turf, mainly because of the overhead lights in the play here. I know they've changed it. I don't, I can't speak for Rec, but they're changing more to field sports here. They used to have a baseball and softball on there, and those have come out, and now they're putting in lacrosse and soccer. I think I saw the layout. There's actually three smaller fields that can be played here, one big field. It's very high use for that. And we can go through all that if you'd like at our study session.
I think we probably should ask Laura about the justification for doing a field like that in a little neighborhood park area, because generally, the sports teams have a lot of cars that come in that park around those events. So we'll, we'll ask Laura about that.
But we're changing the use of the park. Is that to expand the use, the capacity, the usage? No?
We've already changed the use. The ball, softball and baseball have been off it for some time. They play field sports there now. And it is limited, and there is a concern about that traffic. The traffic won't change from what it is today. What happens on the synthetic turf is you're probably going to get three more months of play when we're usually down for maintenance and reseeding. So the traffic that, we had those questions come up in the community meeting, it's not going to increase the level as it today. It's just they're going to see it not nine months, but probably, you know, 12 months a year.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
No, you know, I, I'll withdraw. It's something I'll, I'll bring up at Finance Committee.
Okay.
Any, are you fine, Ms. Brenner?
Okay. So will we see this again?
We are planning on bringing the concept for your approval probably in April.
Good.
And then we can go in the details of the costs and the various elements.
Okay, to be continued. Okay.
Last project on there is just playground replacements. We do about $300,000 a year, and this is out of the building excise tax. With no questions, I'll move on to parks, harbors, and beaches, second page. We're putting additional money in here this year for banned-in watercraft. And again, I see, I believe that's tidlins. It's not environmental liability there. $300,000.
It is.
It is tidlins.
It is environmental.
Oh, it is environmental. I'm sorry, that's, now I remember. Because we are destroying boards, we can use that. So it's environmental liability fund. It'll be paying for that. The Balboa Yacht Basin Dock Maintenance, we're putting in about $150,000. We need to do a lot of cleat work, replace boards, tune up the existing docks out there. It's been some time, so we're using tidlins money for that. Another large project here is beach and bay sand maintenance. We've been doing a lot of this. We've been doing work, as you know, from the San Antonio River, moving sand, trying to refill our growing fields. Mr. Sinekord has also been working, trying to get more sand down towards the Balboa Pier, where it's been really eroding away and getting narrow there. And also some of our bay beaches, we address with this every year. That's tidlins money. Then we have a harbor-wide dredging planning project in here, and this is a very large number. If you recall, we just got back from Washington lobbying, and one of our commitments to the Corps to move our project is possibly the city putting in 20%. Not that we'll spend it this year, but we want to program the money. We can also show the feds, here it is, Council's approved it, we're ready to go when you are. So that's.
And they were impressed with that, right?
Pardon?
They were impressed with the fact that we have.
They were impressed that we were moving on to shovel-ready in about a year, and also that the city was, about the only one who stepped up and said, we'll help pay for the project.
Good.
Last one on here, pier, Newport Pier and Platforms. This has been in the budget for a while. There's 202 million in there, and we're still working with that. We've been holding as we work out through the restaurant. If we do move the building, as you know, we probably don't have to do as much work at the end of the pier, so that may get adjusted. But we just want to keep that hole. We're adding $700,000 to do tidlin work. Some of that work was, we, we used money this year through some pile replacements, storm damage, and some work we had to take care of. So we're just refilling that pot. And the last one on here is sewer, vessels, sewer lift stations. We have five public ones in the harbor. They're up for complete replacement. They get a lot of wear, a lot of maintenance on that. So we're going to, this year, replace all five units and keep them working well. Any questions on that?
Do you have a question?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Duffield, go right ahead.
So I noticed on here that our harbor, our new harbor master would love to have a workboat and a patrol boat, but I don't see anything listed on there here.
So typically, that wouldn't be in the capital plan. That would probably be in the vehicle fund. It'd be in vehicle replacement. I'm not sure if it's in there currently, but I believe, seeing something on that.
Vehicle.
Well, our, our equipment fund, I should say, vehicles and equipment.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back with, when we bring the operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the Newport Pier. Haven't we budgeted for this before?
You have. There's, there was 2 million in there. We currently have 1.3 million. We've been holding on this project, depending on what happens with the building. So we're now currently working on maybe moving that building forward, not putting it at the end of the pier. That would probably reduce this cost, although we would have a new cost if we have to build a new platform for a building. We'll have to figure out.
We, we haven't demoed. I thought we budgeted to demo the old restaurant. What's the status of that?
We haven't demoed because we want to use that in combination with approving the new building.
Okay, all right.
So moving on to water. Not too many projects in the water area this year. We've got basically some work on our 16th Street pump station, if you've been out there with the backup generator. $200,000 out of the water fund there. Alta Vista Regulating Station is a station over by Jamboree and Alta Vista that needs to be worked on, about another $200,000 there, being programmed to the current $100,000. We have four wells, as you know, in Fountain Valley. The Tamara Deep Well needs to be rehabbed this year, so we're looking at putting in $285,000 out of the water fund for a total of $700,000 there. And also some transmission valve work this year. This is on Jamboree and San Joaquin and PCH. Right in there is our major transmission valves we need to replace. $1.7 million being added for a total of 2.7. And I, and I would note, we have a possibility of adding one more project in here. It's about $2.5 million for replacement of additional water lines. Out of, on the peninsula, we have Assessment District 111, which is moving forward. And as we looked in that project, we found what the water lines in there are old asbestos concrete pipes, which we probably should replace now before we put the underground in and then put a new alley in there. So we'll probably be adding that project. You'll see it in the draft final budget. Any questions on water?
Are all of these items identified in the prior water master plan?
They are at various levels. Some are in the master plan, and some are maintenance items coming out of, like the well rehab. It's not necessarily a master plan, but it's something we have to do every occasion to keep those wells operational. It comes out of the non-master plan bucket of the water fund. And then the next page, we have a few more water projects. Adjusting to grade as we do our street projects repaving, we have to adjust the water valves to grades. $80,000 in combination there. Water fund. We also have some water main replacement on Lido Island. This is via Lido Slud and via Lido Nord to restart the design of those water main replacements. And lastly, that last item is water system pipeline replacement. Every year, we do so much cast iron main replacement, so we have $350,000 in water fund there. Do you have any questions on water? So I'm going to move to wastewater real quick, and we have a smaller program this year. We have, again, we have money to adjust manholes to grade in our pavement projects, $150,000 in the sanitation fund. I mentioned Ocean Boulevard earlier with the concrete pavement. Also, under Ocean Boulevard, our incarnation is a sewer line that needs to be replaced. So we have $250,000 in here to replace that line before we put the street in. And then lastly, that sewer main lining or repair, as you know, we've been trying to catch up into a lot of lining throughout the city, so that we're, we're kicking that up this year, putting in about 1.4 million. Of course, to that, we add about a million to the 370 we have to, to do that project, and that's all out of the sewer fund. And with no questions there, was there a question? I'm sorry. No questions. We'll move to miscellaneous. We're starting our general fund kickoff this year, so there's 1.5 million in there. This comes out of the 5 million you normally contribute to infrastructure, but we wanted to pay for that here. That's one of the reasons why there's less general fund to go towards some of the street jobs and pushing into neighborhood enhancement. And then we're also programming in the last district, Assessment District 113.
Just, just briefly, I think we have a conflict on that item.
Just briefly, I think we have a conflict on that item.
Mr. Neal has a question.
Yeah, before we get, I'll tell you what. Before we get to that, let me ask a question about the general plan update. Assume for a moment that our committee comes back, recommends to us a substantially lower amount because they do not, let's just say they go off for our, they come back to us, they say, hey, look, here's an RFP that we think you ought to be doing, and it doesn't end up costing us 1.5. I suppose we just budget to 1.5, and if it comes in less, fantastic.
It does, and any leftover funds goes back to the base fund. I wouldn't comment, though. I think I heard that we're going to do a multi-year program. We need about 2.5 overall is what community development's suggesting. So it's 1.5 this year, another million next year. But if it costs only, say, $2 million, any of that money will be returned back to the base fund.
Okay, I just wanted to double check. All right, thanks.
Do you have to recuse yourself?
Yes, I accuse myself on the side in regarding Assessment Districts for business interests and telecommunications.
So the last item here is just basically programming in the Assessment District money that's been voted in into the CIP, and we'll be drawing on that as we do the district over time, like the other districts.
All right. I have a, this is your last page on this. I have a question. What is the total of new projects? Do we have a grand total number?
I can probably get that for you. I don't know if I have it right. Yeah, but I think it's about 47. It's quite a number.
Give her take a few million.
I didn't do that calculation, but if I added them all up, I probably should have that for you.
All right, I guess my point is, all right, I obviously have not seen the proposed capital budget for the continuing, as you call them, rebudgeting items. So the total capital plan will be about, what, 65? It's typically 60, 65 million?
It's been up higher than that. 41.5 is what they just said. We have new programming on that funding.
So what do you think the total capital plan is going to come in at?
I don't have that with all the rebudgets and how much gets done. It's hard because some of the projects may get done this before June or some might roll over. We're still working on that. So let's say about 93 million.
93?
If we ballparked what I'm hearing.
Well, still, the point is, remains what I'm going to say next, that we just, for, this is really for public consumption, that the council in the budget, when we go to the budget decision making in May, June, we will approve a recommendation for $5 million of general fund money to go into our capital improvement overall budget, which you say adds up to approximately $90 million, which is a significant gap there. And that gap is filled by external funds, as you've been identifying, as you've been going through, whether it's facilities, financial plan money that has been coming in over the years through development money and park and loo fees that fund that as well, and then external sourced funds. So many cities aren't as fortunate as Newport Beach that we, that have the external funds that we go after, plus the development money and the park and loo money, because those are reflect investments in our community. We are very fortunate that we have alternative sources of funds. I just want to edify the community on that. So if only $5 million to fund our general fund, that's remarkable. So thank you for all the good work. Thank you. Mr. Avery.
This is a heck of a time to bring this up, but the West Newport Mesa Streetscape Master Plan, which was approved by council a few years ago, and I know, Dave, you're well aware of it, and I just would like to explore a way to sort of do something to kind of give a nod to it that wouldn't impact this very, you know, there's a lot on your plate. There's a lot on Public Works' plate here, and to add more is crazy. But at the same time, so obviously, this is my district, and I have some constituents that are concerned, and it is going through a bit of a change. There's residential that's happening there, and there's an expansion of a private school. There's a number of things that I think call out for the plan that awful lot of work went into to sort of at least keep a little bit of, little life in it.
Well, and we approved this as a council in 2016, so.
November 2016, you approved this plan, and it did have some callouts for various, it's a streetscape plan on what we need to do in that neighborhood. And it's, I look at it as more as the development happens, what, it's a guideline to them, what they need to do and incorporate in. There are some areas where the, we could do capital improvement projects, like medians on Placentia, or it calls out for medians, it calls for undergrounding. All those are general fund costs, and they're new costs, and that's one of my cautions here. I'd love to accommodate that, and I'll look for opportunities to do that. I do caution council. Our workload is huge. Our staffing is a little marginal now with a couple of position, key positions open. And some of the projects, as you see through here, we're getting into projects that are not easy to drive. There are a lot of community development. There's community involvement. And when we have hiccups, like for instance Marina Avenue, we spend a lot of time and then we stall. So it does interrupt the program, and I'm just cautioning because we have a huge program. We want to deliver that for you. But there are things that tend to derail.
Well, I certainly am cognizant of that, and I know Mr. Avery is as well. Just to put a plug in for that as well, we did vote for that. We did approve that. And also, it is a part of the city that deserves some improvement. So as you can squeeze it in, it's since, well, since Marine Avenue has been pulled off, maybe now you guys have free time.
I don't know if it's pulled off yet. We're talking aggressively on it.
Okay, maybe it's back on.
Any other comments really I can?
Any other comments up here? Seeing none out in the community? If you have any comments on the capital improvement plan, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding that $5 million general fund investment towards citywide infrastructure and maintenance repair that we heard about on the first slide, and you just mentioned again at the end, I wonder if somebody can remind us if that number of $5 million is just a tradition or is that set by policy? And is that ever adjusted for inflation? Because like the 10 million visitors, I've never seen it change.
I think it is in council policy, isn't it?
No, it's actually your direction. And if you recall, in the lean years, we've actually gone down to several million. We've dropped that, and then one year, we had 6 million to make up for. But it's been your general direction to try to do about 5 million. It's purely your discretion.
Oh, that was a policy.
Yeah, and then the second comment I wanted to make is regarding the traffic signal rehabilitation. I wish that Councilman Muldoon actually had a conflict on that, because I think traffic signals would be an ideal place to put wireless and telecommunications infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. All right, seeing none? Well, thank you, staff. Excellent report. All right, flood zone map. Do we have time to get into this?
Yeah, this will be about 15 minutes, is what Simone estimates. But if we do that, I think it would probably mean that we would push the closed session items out either to after the meeting or to the next meeting.
So you'd rather skip this for now? Is this a time-sensitive matter? Why don't we continue this to March 26? Is that all right with you, Simone? Okay.
We can do that.
All right, so let me get to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, earlier this afternoon, you referred to the library as a beacon of light, and I wanted to remind you that this week is actually Sunshine Week, when the nation's newspapers are trying to draw attention to the importance of shining light on the inner workings of government and how that produces better and more responsive government. And if you're going ahead with the closed session, I wanted to point out that on that, there is one item where the ability of the light to penetrate that is being blocked by a very thick layer of sunscreen. And that would be Item 4B Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Initiation of Litigation. The public has told nothing about what this is going to be. It's been on the agenda for the last three times. Actually, the first time it was on back in February, we found that the discussion was about the Newport Aquatics Center, and it didn't seem that you were actually initiating litigation, but initiating an investigation into that. And if these are continuing discussions about the investigation rather than litigation, I'm not sure that that's a proper topic for a closed session. To be a closed session topic, it actually has to be about litigation. It has to be something that public discussion would prejudice the position of the city. So because I know nothing about what this item is, I have no idea what it's about or whether it's inappropriate, but it's not an example of sunshine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none. Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. The City Council will adjourn to closed session, discuss Items 4A and B, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss one item of existing litigation, and it's titled Nancy Kies-Kuhn versus City of Newport Beach. And the council will also let me discuss whether to initiate litigation in regards to one matter. Thank you.
All right, we are recessed until 7:00 PM. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order for the Newport Beach City Council, March 12, regular meeting. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp is there, closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Yes, we have the invocation by Rabbi David Young, Congregation Beni Tzedek, Fountain Valley, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Muldoon, please.
You can sit down for just a sec. So it's Beni Tzedek, but nice, thanks for trying, Mayor. Everybody does it. Last time I was here, I quoted from a playwright, Aonesco, because I read a rule in the Newport City rules that you're not supposed to quote from biblical text. And then the mayor at the time heard me say that and had the rule changed. So thank you, and now I'm going to quote from the Bible. So, yeah, I like it. It's a good book. I'm choosing to quote from the Book of Esther, partly intentionally because next Wednesday evening, the 20th, is the holiday of Purim begins. Jewish holidays start at sundown. They go from sundown to sundown. That come to my classes, if you want to know why. And so part of the holiday is we read the Book of Esther. And Esther, Chapter 3, Verse 8, says, "Haman then said to King Ahashuerus," "Haman is the bad guy." And when we're reading the Megillah at our services, everybody boos. So, yeah, let's try that again. "Haman then," thank you, "then said to King Ahashuerus, 'There is a certain people scattered and dispersed among the other peoples in all provinces of your realm, whose laws are different from those of any other people, and who do not obey the king's laws, and it is not in your majesty's interest to tolerate them.'" Now, Haman takes a half-truth. There's a people who have their own set of laws. And that's true, that's true, we have our own set of laws, but not exclusively. In fact, one of the laws is, "Follow the laws where you live." And then he says, he follows that half-truth up with a lie. They do not obey the king's laws. Then he makes policy advice based only on the lie. Half-truth followed by a lie, followed by policy advice, the policy advice is kill the Jews, so we all don't like that. And we learn from this that we, as a group, no matter what we believe, we hopefully have different beliefs or there's no discussion. But when we do have different beliefs, we should come together with the whole truth and make policy decisions based on everyone's beliefs. So now I will ask if you'll rise with me in prayer. "We are assembled in fellowship of humanity to reaffirm our Creator's eternal truth that cooperation and concord are the basis of social order, and that through the devotion to the cause of humanity, we realize the purpose of divinity. We humbly ask that God teach us to live in harmony with our neighbors, learn the truth together before we react, and thus prove that we are united as God's children. Teach us to labor in patience and injustice. May our generosity toward our neighbor and their forbearance toward us teach us the true meaning of God's loving kindness. May our efforts to bring about unity clarify our vision and give fuller meaning to the words of our mouths than the meditations of our hearts. May we remember that as faith in God leads us to peace, so to peace and concord lead us to God.
Thank you, Rabbi. I'm proud to have introduced that change. I appreciate it. Please place the, face the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Washington State.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. City council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Now is the time for city council announcements. New items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas and oral reports from city council on committee activities.
I attended the Newport High School Community Meeting, which was in response to the recent anti-Semitic incident that occurred in our town that everyone knows about. And I will just have to tell you, it was one of the most inspiring things I've been to ever. It was so well-done by so many people, by the students who are up there, by our religious leaders, and Sean Bolton was outstanding. I don't know, the fact that it all came together in just, you know, a day and a half, and there were so many young people in the audience, and there were two survivors of the Holocaust. It was absolutely amazing. And it just, when something so ugly happens, and that's just followed up very quickly by something so beautiful, and you see your town, your community come together, it really helped for me. So I enjoyed that. We also had, that was followed up the next night by our Newport Heights West Cliff Traffic Study Results, kind of talking about our issues with the schools, the three schools in our neighborhood in the heights, and our efforts to make the streets safer. And the staff, Tony Bryne, Traffic Public Works, have done a great job. We reported out on everything that we've done. We're not finished by any means, and so we had a good discussion. We had about 120 people at the Newport Theater Arts Center there on, by John Wayne Park. And it was, I just thought it was really great. It was a very intimate setting, and the neighbors got to, we kind of went free-flowing. Our city manager, Grace, was there. We had officers from the police that did a fantastic job talking about their perspectives on the issues that all concern us, crime and traffic and speeding and the rest of it, and went over again how residents can help by just locking their car doors, which 80% of them don't do, it seems like. And so that was, I thought, a really good meeting, and I think the best one I've had in terms of outreach to the community in the Heights. And I also attended the Newport Shores Homeowners Association with the mayor, and Grace was there, and that was a really nice gathering. It's a really tight community, and they've got a great little clubhouse there in a beautiful setting. And it just reminded me that the power of bringing people together in a small community and just people meeting and talking about, you know, their particular issues in a neighborly way. And finally, I'd like to just report on the Harbor Commission Visioning Forum. And there's one slide for this, and there it is. So on Monday, March 18th, the city's Harbor Commission is hosting a Harbor Visioning Forum to develop a long-term vision for Newport Harbor. The community members and harbor users are invited to participate. Attendees will participate in group exercises to review the current state of the harbor, aspects that are currently serving the community well, and areas that need improvement. The feedback will be collected and used in developing of a long-term harbor plan. And the forum is next Wednesday, next Wednesday, March 18th, after work from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Marina Park. And for more information, contact the city's harbor department by calling 949-270-8159 or visiting NewportBeach.gov/harbor. And the only thing I have to say about that is, my council partner, Duffield, who knows more about the harbor than anybody, this is a really important meeting, if you have an interest in the harbor, because there's so, we just need, we need to hear from folks that have concerns about the harbor, that have ideas about the harbor. So it's, we can't operate in a vacuum. We've got to have input. We've got to hear from people. So please, if you're not interested in the harbor and you've got a neighbor that is, please let them know about this meeting on March 18th at Marina Park. And feel free to call me or Duffy or anyone on this dais directly if you need more information. So, thank you, that's it.
Very good. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to report on our trip to Washington DC last week, which was very productive. It's the third year. Public Works Department Head, Dave Webb, and also Chris Miller, his staff member, and Scott Cunningham, Harbor Commissioner, and I went back to, for five days to, I call it begging for money, but it's probably more officially asking for money. So what we do is we go back there with a coalition of harbors and waterways along the west coast here, so we have a little bit of clout. And we go into the offices of, for example, Army Corps, Senator Dianne Feinstein, it just goes on and on. I have them up, the list behind me. So we would go into these offices as a group, and we give them our sales pitch, and we're pretty good at it. And we've gotten so that we're very, to the point, we know what to say, they listen. And I'm very encouraged that our $22 million ask, I should probably start it out with that, we're trying to get $22 million to do the final dredging of the harbor, which would get us to our design depth, finally, after so many hundreds of, seems like hundreds of years, that we have not been at design depth. So we are working, as you can see, visiting all these people. It's quite a, quite an operation. And the next, oh, let me go back to that other one here. Here we are, it's, I don't know if it's proof, because you can Photoshop. I guess we could have Photoshopped that. So, but we thought this was proof for you, that we were there. I think one of the most productive members we met was our representative, Ken Calvert, who was last year on the Appropriations Chair Committee, who really writes the check. And that, that's the important fellow to get to, as well as, now he's not on that anymore. He's on the executive committee for that. But having a relationship with him has meant a lot, and his staff, and I'm very, very encouraged that we will be looking, maybe the end of next year, the middle of the following year, to be funded. And that would kickstart the final dredging of our harbor. So on and on, it was, again, it was very productive. It's a lot of work, and I really, really hand it to our staff members, who really do a lot of pre-work energy to get this to happen. We are the only city that really teed up this event, this dredging event, through funds that we've already put in. They really like to hear that, that we're also, we've got skin in the game. And we repeatedly said that to them. We've done all of our study, our analysis with all the different agencies, and there are just so many of them. But that's what, we have this great staff of ours, Chris and everyone else, that works hard to get this to happen. There's a lot behind the scenes. And so I'm very encouraged, and I guess that would be the end of my report.
Very good, and thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. Each year, city council members in the city of Newport Beach are allocated $6,000, which they can dedicate directly towards groups or causes that they think are very important at the city of Newport Beach. Previous years, I've used small amounts for the funds for school programs or neighborhood issues. And this year, I've decided to And this year, I've decided to dedicate the entire amount towards assisting in sending Newport Harbor students to the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles. I made a decision because I view that this issue impacts the entire city, as well as Costa Mesa. I don't think getting angry at each other is a solution. I think talking and learning together is a solution. Hope to help lead by example by also attending, assuming my wife will sign the waiver for me to go to the field trip. But I look forward to working with community leaders to educate the next generation on the evils that result from prejudice and anti-Semitism, not only here locally, but around the globe. Thank you.
Very fine. Ms. Brenner.
I spoke to the Harborview Hills Homeowners Association. I attended the Newport Beach Foundation mixer at the BBC. Will, Grace, and I did a rainy day hike of the Upper Buck Gully with the Irvine Ranch Conservancy, and it was so impressive how they managed the trails, and the wildfire vegetation, and even manned fire watch crews during the fire season. It's a huge benefit to our community, and now that we have our new fire marshal onboard, I'd like to make sure that we ensure that Lower Buck Gully is as well-prepared for, in the fire prevention realm, as the other part of Buck Gully. I attended two additional Association of California Cities policymaking Fridays at UCI. I attended the Hoag Classic Golf Tournament Womanology Breakfast with Diane, and I just thought it was so impressive that there were all these beautiful, bright, female physicians there speaking to us, and one man. And I don't think that the younger women probably appreciate the significance of that, but Diane and I certainly did. I also attended the Aviation Committee meeting, which Jeff will talk about. Grace and I did a native plant tour of the Civic City Park with Laura Curran and Ron Vanderhoff of Rogers Gardens. I also attended for Brad, I was Brad's substitute at the sanitation district. I, we have a couple slides. Grace and I went on a tour of the new CDM Fire Station Library a couple days ago, and it was so impressive. They said they, they think they're still ahead of schedule, but they would have been really ahead of schedule if the rain had not interrupted them. But as I mentioned in the study session, the foreman there came to us and mentioned that he'd had realtors in the area come to him and tell him how much the property values in the area had, in that particular area, had been enhanced by this new building that's going up. So, we're hoping that justifies some of the cost on some of these projects. But it's an exciting project because it was such a collaboration of community, staff, library board, and council. And so it's a really proud moment for us to think that we're hoping for a May grand opening for the fire station and library. I also attended the meeting at Corona Del Mar High School that was the same type meeting that Brad attended at Newport Harbor in response to the actions of the kids that attended that party. I think there's been a huge, a huge response to that in our community, which speaks really well for our community. A lot of people like to put Newport Beach down and say, you know, we're just a bunch of elitist people, and that we're raising kids that don't understand the significance of this, which is absolutely untrue. I have a 15-year-old who goes to Newport Harbor, and she woke her mother up the night she saw these pictures, and she's not an exception. She is one of the majority of the kids in our community that see something like that and know it's wrong. And, and the parents know it's wrong, the community know it's wrong. And the thing that happens, though, is that they have done outreach. The parents immediately had these kids meet with survivors, and the school had them meet with survivors. And, and the rabbis that they have talked with, they have learned so much about this. The thing that I think is interesting in Newport Beach is, we're a pretty tolerant community, and we, we're tolerant of differences when it comes to racial differences, and sexual differences, and even political differences, but we're not very tolerant of imperfection. And these kids made a huge mistake, and they are trying to rectify that, but the rush to judgment by people who just want to really crucify them has not been helpful either. These kids have received death threats. And it's really important that we, as adults, set the example of being forgiving, of understanding they made huge mistakes, and if your kids haven't made any mistakes yet, they will eventually. So, it's not like any of us are immune from having our kids or our grandkids make mistakes. So, I think it's really important. The Jewish community has probably set the bar really high, because they have met with these kids, they have been so loving and so forgiving, and have really set the example for the rest of us. But this is a big thing in our community, but it's also something that we really need to look at from the standpoint of, are we rushing to judgment? Are we blaming the school, the parents, the kids? And in the broad sense of this, we really are a very tolerant community, and we are, these kids are educated, they know about this, they have, they made stupid mistakes. And if we blame, we miss the lessons, the lessons about underage drinking, about doing things when you're drinking that you might not do otherwise, or accepting things that you might not do otherwise, and the dangers of social media. So, there are a lot of lessons to be learned from this, and I just hope that we really do come together as a community and embrace these people, and help them to know that we're not going to blame them forever. It's not like they, we expect them to leave the community because they've made a mistake. And it's also important for these kids, and our kids, to know that you make mistakes and you get forgiven, and we don't expect you to be perfect, because we have a crisis of suicide in our country, especially among young people. And if they think that they are expected to be perfect every single moment, and they make one mistake, and then they're going to be crucified, then that's when they lose hope, and that's when the suicides happen. So, I just hope that now that we've been through this, we've seen the real lessons that have been learned from this, that we can come together as a community, appreciate the fact that we are generally tolerant of people, and that we do accept differences. So, it's been a real learning experience, and as we all know, you don't really grow during the good times in your life, you grow during the bad times, during the uncomfortable times, during the really depressed times. So I'm hoping that these kids are going to come out of this and do some really significant good in the world because of the experiences that they've had.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yes, thank you. I too attended the, along with my wife, we attended the Corona Del Mar High School meeting in response to the anti-Semitic act in our community. This past Saturday, we had a town hall meeting on Balboa Island. A lot of people, 150 people at least, were in attendance. I want to thank staff for preparing me for that meeting, and also want to thank Councilwoman Joy Brenner for being in attendance. Aviation Committee met last Monday, and they did take action in the form of a recommendation to city council, which appears in Agenda Item 18 tonight, as far as their position on general aviation expansion at John Wayne Airport, and their position is to support alternative three. The next Aviation Committee meeting, it was decided, would be April the 8th at 4:00 p.m., right across in the community room. So if you're available, please come. We intend to continue our work on general aviation. And then on Saturday, April 6th, our mayor, Diane Dixon, along with Michelle Steele, our Supervisor Steele, will be hosting a John Wayne Airport Town Hall meeting here at Civic Center from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So, promise this to be an interesting morning. Come learn about Supervisor Steele's position on John Wayne Airport general aviation expansion that morning. And that's it, thank you. I do have a future agenda item, but do you want to make your announcements first?
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to request, I want to put in a request for review of potential revision to the annual trimming cycle for the trees on Marine Avenue as a future agenda item. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I also attended the Corona Del Mar High School Open Town Hall. That was hosted by the Newport Mesa Unified School District, Temple Bot Yam, and the Anti-Defamation League. I'd like to thank everyone who hosted, attended, and spoke. We had students speak, it's a brave thing to get up in front of that many people. Blaise Bernstein's mom came and spoke, and she was right when she said, "We've got to take the message that we learned in that room and bring it out in the community." So we look forward to doing that, partnering with our schools and coming alongside our students. And I certainly encourage everyone who can hear this to take that to heart. I attended the Spyglass Hill Neighborhood Watch, one of our truly best neighborhood watch programs in the, in the city, and they're, they got, gosh, probably close to 50 people who attended that. And fortunately for us, we had our Police Chief John Lewis come up and speak, and he was fantastic. So I wanted to say thank you very much to Chief Lewis for coming and speaking. We had the Orange County Government Leaders Prayer Breakfast. Thank you very much to those who hosted and came. And then, I've got a couple pictures. So the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation hosted a STEAM event that was co-sponsored by UCI's Center for the Neurobiology of Learning and Memory. Can't tell you how great it is to have our Library Foundation partnering with UCI to make sure that the youth that are growing up are learning, especially at the science level. And this one, because it was about neurobiology, they were actually learning about how your brain works. And in this picture, it was actually a sheep brain, but it was a, it was a fantastic event. I appreciate all the students from UCI coming over and making sure they spoke.
Those little kids.
I know those kids. Yeah, those are mine. I had to take, I had to take a picture of some kind, but yeah, that was, that was fantastic. As a parent and as a member of the community, I just say thanks for all these education opportunities our library provides. The next one. Spyglass Hill went under a light, a streetlight upgrade. It is a truly great project. I am so thankful that they did this. It does provide more light, more coverage, more efficiency. These are safer, they light up the streets better, we don't have anyone kind of skulking around. And because they're LED, they're going to substantially decrease the amount of electricity being used. This is a, is a part of an initiative that we've seen across our city, and it's one that I look forward to expanding. Real briefly, I just want to say thank you to George Murdock, who really initiated this, and then certainly to Mark Vaquavich and Dave Webb, who got this thing over the finish line. A personal thank you on behalf of the residents of Spyglass Hill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I have a few announcements. I too attended both the meetings at Newport Harbor High School and Corona Del Mar, and I can't improve on the comments that have been made already. I just want to thank the school district, the students, the faculty administration for, and such short notice, as Mr. Avery said, bringing the community together to share in the process of educating our community and the students on how to recognize the pain that's caused through insidious bigotry. And probably on my own impression of hearing from the students at both the schools, how articulate, well-spoken, profoundly impacted, affected, how well they expressed themselves. They spoke years above their chronological years, they were so wise, and I truly valued that experience. It was tremendously impactful. Couple of updates are what we've attended. I too attended our Orange County Government Leaders Prayer Breakfast last Friday. A room about, I guess, 700 people there, electeds. Very meaningful event. Let me talk about last week, Newport Shores, while Balboa Island Improvement Association, you were having your meeting, Newport Shores was having its meeting, so we had to be both places, I couldn't make it to Balboa Island. But Newport Shores, as Brad was speaking, a wonderful community of people who care about their community and want to be sure that everybody's working together to make it strong. An announcement, the General Plan Steering Committee is meeting on a regular basis, it met March 6th, and then it will meet again next Wednesday, March 20th, 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And April 6th is the, oh, I do have a slide on this, as Mr. Hurdman mentioned, the Michelle, Supervisor Michelle Steele Town Hall will be in the community room Saturday, April 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And it really is a good, it will be an excellent opportunity, as we do this maybe once or twice a year, to bring the whole community together to talk about airport issues, and there are a lot of them, and important ones. And thanks to the leadership on the Aviation Committee, it's really helping the community coalesce on the key issues. And tomorrow, the Speak Up Newport has a great program planned in the community room, starting at 5:15, the reception, 6:00 p.m. the program. And then, our Newport Beach Police Department has been very successful recently in cold-case investigations. So the Linda O'Keefe investigation that has identified the alleged person who committed that crime. So there's an update on that, and then there's some other cold-case investigations that our police officers will be sharing. So that should be very interesting tomorrow. And I think that takes care, did you get the Supervisor Steele announcement? Okay, I just didn't see it, I was reading. All right. Oh, John Wayne Airport Town Hall, yes, okay.
Yes, Diane, can I add one thing? I forgot to mention an important meeting. Diane said she attended the prayers breakfast, the intergovernmental prayers breakfast. I had to mention that former Councilman Scott Piattar invited several of us, and that Kevin got delayed, I think, by Baby Cannon, but that I went and had breakfast with Scott, and it was very pleasant. And it's, it's something that I think is so important, that we collaborate even with the people we disagree with, and the people that maybe we haven't gotten along with in the past. And I was very pleased that he invited me, and we had a pleasant time.
Very good. Peace in our time. Very good. Now it's time for public comments on items the council has announced or oral reports. If we have any public comments, please come forward. All right. Oh, do we have one? Please come forward.
Hi, good evening. I've never done this before, so I don't know if I'm speaking at the right spot or not.
Very fine, just identify yourself.
Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Maxine Malley. I've owned a home on Balboa Island since 1995. I'm alarmed about the proposed general aviation improvement project and the adverse impact it will have on Newport Beach.
Ma'am, we're going to have this as an agenda item?
But it doesn't pertain to item three. It's not Agenda Three. I'm not, this isn't addressing that issue, so it is a general comment.
Okay, but there's a general item on the general aviation later on this evening.
Okay, because this isn't about option three, if that's what you mean.
Well, it's just the item itself. Well, I'll ask Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, I think that you're probably, your comments are geared towards the general aviation item, but if they're not, then this time right now, it's just to speak about kind of the comments made by the council. So it'd probably be better to make it during public comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, all right. Any other public comments on matters we've just spoken about? Okay. Matters which council members have previously asked to be placed on a future agenda, these are not matters for discussion. This is merely to see if three council members would like to discuss the matter at a future date. Do we have three council members to bring back an item for item number one, consideration of reinstating the city council committee to address election reform? By Mr. Hurdman. This was the election reform?
That was unanimous.
Okay. Do we have three council members to bring back an item for consideration of forming a subcommittee to bring back recommendations relative to the city enacting a lobbyist registration ordinance proposed by Mr. O'Neill? Mayor Protem. O'Neill.
Unanimous.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council members, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, I'd like to.
No vote, yet you may?
I'm going to exactly, as Mayor Protem had said, pull item 13. Like to lodge a recusal. I'm sorry, one second here. This is how we make it look tough to the audience, like we work hard.
I believe I confirmed earlier with councilmen, I'm sorry, with Dave Webb, that there's no telecommunications facilities associated with item eight. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just going to play it safe because I saw there's communication, even though it may be used internally. I'm going to recuse myself on that item. Thank you very much. And then, I'm going to vote no on item nine.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
I think we should clarify a bit on item nine.
Okay, so we're pulling it, is that what you're saying? Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
Item 12, please.
You're pulling?
Pull, yes.
Nine and 12 so far. And Mayor Protem?
I have none.
And I have none.
All right, I move approval of the consent calendar with item eight showing a recusal from Councilmember Muldoon, item nine being pulled by Councilmember Brenner, item 12 being pulled by Councilmember Hurdman, and item 13 being pulled by Councilmember Muldoon.
I second the motion.
Any public comments on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. Regarding consent calendar item number 10, which is entitled Grand Canal Dredging Project Phase Two, this is an item, according to the staff report, that the city found itself with a little bit of surplus money from what had been budgeted. And the last recommendation you have, recommendation D, says to authorize the staff to include dredging within a commercial marina at 2241 West Coast Highway, which I think is in the Mariners Mile area. I wasn't aware that the city was in the business of dredging commercial marinas. I understood from the staff report that the city storm drain perhaps contributed a little bit to the salting up. But I'm wondering if we could get some clarification on whether this is kind of a joint project and the city is just paying for its portion of what needs to be done? Or if the city is now going around and using taxpayer money to dredge private marinas? Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, council members. I wanted to speak on number six and number nine. Number six is. Check, check. My name is Ryan Farsight. Number six is Ford Road and Bonita Canyon pavement rehabilitation project. Approval of professional services agreement with Tate and Associates. On the, right below that, it says, "Determined the action is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sections blah, blah, blah guidelines because this action will not result in a physical change to the environment directly or indirectly." So, I just wanted to bring you guys to attention because I wasn't aware about the Ford environmental issue, and I attended my first hearing on February 28th. So, now I'm becoming self-realized of what's going on around me. I'm a concerned citizen, neighbor, and friend to all those people that are being affected. So, I just wanted to let you know that Ford Road and Bonita Canyon, technically Ford Road because it's underneath the old Ford factory, has environmental issues. And so, you have to consider that with anything when it comes to paving. The same thing goes with the tree contract. Again, it's telling you, I'm into two.
The tree contract, it's actually been pulled, so you have an opportunity to speak on that when it comes.
Okay, perfect. So, I'll wait on that one. But basically, on number six, the fact is that there's an environmental research going on on the Ford, old Ford factory and the movement of the toxic stuff that's moving underneath certain homes. And this is affecting Ford Road. It's on the drawing that I saw on the presentations, which was a public notice on February 28th. So, that should be considered. So, when you say it's not affecting the environment, that's incorrect. It is affecting the environment on that street. You need to look into it more detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none. Let's, any other council comments here? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2019-6, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach admitting a development agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian Development Agreement Number DA 2018-4. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Okay, now we'll go to pulled item number nine, amendment number two for the citywide tree maintenance services with Great Scott Tree Service. Who pulled this? Ms. Brenner?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Grace to clarify that we're not extending this contract. It's, would you explain that for the general public?
Yes, the current contract has a, the annual yearly dates are November to November, so we're aligning that to our fiscal year, which is July through June. So, it is extending just by six months so that it just aligns with the fiscal year. It's not a general extension of the contract at all.
Okay. And also, I wanted to ask about the two, we're going from two to three years for tree trimming to standard two years. And I wondered if we needed to add something about special evaluation for specific trees in our community. For instance, I'm thinking of the Marine Avenue trees, but also of like the palm trees on Marguerite, that sometimes it's necessary to do it more frequently there so that some of the special trees in our community might require something more than just a standard two-year pruning.
Dave Webb, answer that question.
Yeah, and I'll mention, and we have Micah Martin, our Deputy Director, Maude with us, and Dan Sereno, our landscape manager. Typically, when we do a trimming, as I understand it, our crews will inspect the tree at that time. They'll look for diseased broken limbs, any kind of rot, and things like that. And I think that would be adequate. Going to a two-year, we'll be there more often. And then, we do have certified arborists on our staff. And when folks call them out with a problem, they have a concern with the tree, and we've had several of them, they'll go out and actually do an additional inspection there. So, we're getting our eyes on the trees more often that way. I don't know unless Dan thinks otherwise that we need to do additional inspections between the normal tree trimming, and particularly like the Marine Avenue trees are an annual thing. So, we look at those trees at least annually right now. And Dan, do you have any thoughts on that? Or I think, does that answer your question?
Well, I think what I'm saying is that we don't just have a routine, like we're doing it every two years, no matter what, or we're doing it every year, no matter what, that we have special evaluation for certain trees in our community.
Yeah, and I think what I was mentioning, on the special trees, Marine Avenue, we're there once a year, and I think that's adequate. The trees don't change that much on wholesale. I don't think we technically need to add additional inspections on top. I don't think our landscape manager would think that's necessary.
I think I'm saying, there could be less, is what I'm saying, is that we evaluate. We just don't have standard, like we're going to trim every year, we're going to trim every two years, that we evaluate whether it's necessary every two years or every one year.
I get what you're saying. So, and that would probably be a discretion in the field when the crews get there. How much they trim and if they need to trim would be evaluated when they get to that tree.
Okay, Mr. O'Neill? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, it's probably worth clarifying just a little bit also. Some folks in the community have wondered if this was a new contract and whether this was a whole new bid-out process. It's not. The contract was executed back in 2013, and it's a 10-year contract that runs through 2023. And so, what we're talking about tonight are, if I understand this correctly, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly, what we're talking about is moving to a fiscal year-end cycle, which allows for us to be better at budgeting toward it. We've been experiencing some pretty aggressive storm increases the last couple of years. You all probably remember East Bluff two years ago looking like the, all the trees had fallen down. And so, we've been seeing increased amounts there. And then, to Councilmember Brenner's point, moving from a two- to three-year cycle to a two-year cycle, it's brought on because we have a lot of folks who care quite a bit about trees in our community, which they absolutely should. And so, other parts of our community are asking for more, some are asking for less. And to Councilmember Brenner's point, I want to make sure I clarify that. As I understand it, we actually have daily updates that I think Mr. Sereno actually probably sees and then can evaluate and make sure that if an area requires more pruning, it's getting more pruning. If it's requiring less, it requires less, and sometimes that involves drought. If it's a drought, we don't need to trim as much. If we're getting quite a bit of rain and seeing flourishing, then we probably need to trim more. I see a head nodding. Am I right on that? Yeah, I'm right on that. Okay. And then, the other issue was the prevailing wage statute. One of those things about being a city in California is you are, you deal with California statutes that come down the pike. So, some folks might remember that we actually approved an amendment to this contract a couple of years ago, and it ended up not moving forward with it because if we had amended the contract, it would have moved to prevailing wage. Because of our tree contractor actually moving to prevailing wage in the interim, it's not affecting any of the rates that we're looking at, and so, we're not changing any of the rates. Am I right on that?
Correct.
Okay, so, it's important to clarify because there is, there is actually quite a bit of nuance when it comes to the discussion here. And we've also heard Councilmember Hurdman make sure that we are going to be looking back and reviewing and potentially revising the Marine Avenue tree pruning cycles. So, I just want to make sure that we're understanding what we're talking about because it's, it is a little convoluted, but it's not a new contract. We're not extending it another 10 years or anything along those lines. So, I just wanted to make sure that I was correct in all of that.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hurdman?
I prepared some remarks regarding this, and I think it's appropriate to read these remarks now, mainly as an example for what we're talking about. One size really does not fit all in every single case when it comes to tree pruning in our city in the future concerning the tree trimming process on Marine Avenue. And given what we've gone through over the last couple of days with the trimming of the eucalyptus trees on Marine Avenue, I would expect that in the future, these trees step out of the annual tree trimming cycle, if warranted. I am asking that an independent arborist, as was the case today, be on-site, the city arborist be on-site, and then an arborist from Great Scott, which happens to be the company that we contract with now to do the trimming, be on-site, only when it comes to the trees on Marine Avenue, to determine when they should be trimmed, how they should be trimmed, how deep a cut should be made so that we can avoid what has taken place on Marine Avenue and on Balboa Island over the last couple of days. These issues can be very divisive for a community, and I do not wish that to see, I do not wish to see that happen in an area that I've lived in myself personally now for 68 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Mr. Webb, could you just shed some light on the term of the contract that we have now? It's 10 years with some renewables?
So, the contract currently was a 10-year contract approved in 2013, going through now 2024 June. And there are some optional renewals in there. I think there's three two-year return options. And that would be at the discretion of both us and our contractors. So, when we get to 2024, should the city want to renew it, it's our option. And our contractors say he wants to renew it, we could go for two more years, three times.
Right, and then, in the past, how many bidders have we had on projects? This is a huge contract, really, I mean, from my standpoint?
I'd have to ask to, Dan, I wasn't around when they bid this contract. I'm sure there's at least two, but was it two? Yeah, and there's, in Orange County, there's two primary tree contractors. There's a lot of little ones, but someone to handle our city size, there's a couple that do that, and they would be bidding this contract.
Does it make sense to break the city up? Or I'm sure staffs have looked at that in terms of having multiple contractors in different areas?
We could look at that in 2024 if you choose to have tried two contractors. We also have other backfills. We have various landscape contractors on, and sometimes we'll use them to plant trees and do miscellaneous stuff in addition to this tree contract.
And the rationale for the long contract is obviously the city this size requires equipment, manpower, really?
Typically, on any of these large maintenance service contracts, Refuge is another one, where you have to have a lot of capital increase, and your value is in the length of the contract. I would say we've got a very good rate in our contract, and it's getting better as our term gets to the end. When we evaluate it now, and our staff would say we'd pay substantially more if we went on the street with another bid right now. At some point, we will have to do that again, and we'll recapture that raising costs of the cost of tree trimming service.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The size of the amendment, $636,000, that's a lot of money for an amendment. Could you explain what happened? I know we've had inclement weather and storms, and I know, looking at the contracts Public Works has put forward throughout my term on the council, I mean, there's always contingency funds allocated or included in the budgeted, proposed budgeted amount. So, could you just tell me what happened? Why are we so off-kilter on $600,000? And why wasn't this scoped as broadly as it should have been?
Remember, this is over multiple years. So, it comes out to about $127,000 a year, and we are increasing the service level. We're going from a three-year prune to a two-year prune. And that's really to address, one, looking at our trees more, to keep some of our complaints down. We get a lot of complaints about views, and people are always having this. And if we can trim it at our low rate, which is our grid trim rate versus a next rate up where it's a special call rate or a crew service, it costs a lot more to do it that way, so we prefer to get that done early. So, that's one component, the increased trim. The other component is to put some money in the contract for the storm problems we've had. In the last years, when we've had big storm issues, we've absorbed it through our contract. And what that usually means is we don't get enough trimming done, we fall behind in our cycle, maybe we don't plant as many trees because the budget cap is hit because we use a lot of that money to address storm debris, emergency callouts, you know, tree removals, things like that. So, we have another $30,000 a year of that 127 in here for that.
Well, all right, so going forward, are we going to have storm funds allocated so we don't cut into the normal servicing of the trees?
That is in part of this. And again, if those, if we have great years and no storms, then that fund, it's a contingency. It just rolls over, and at the end, we would just.
So, one other question, though. So, when we have, we keep meticulous records and inventory of all, every single tree in the city, which is certainly commendable. So, we know what the trees look like. Are they big, little, small, and have you? So, are we doing kind of a one-size-fits-all tree maintenance? Or do we break this down to small trees, large trees, large canopy trees? How do we get closer to understanding the true costs of our inventory, maintaining our inventory?
And I'm going to have to turn over to the experts on that. I know you think about an average. When we have a contract, they bid a set price per trim. Some trees are very quick, and maybe it's not worth that cost. And some trees are bigger that they actually spend more time on. The contractor is going to have to average that out when he looks at the inventory and bids the contract. But Micah, Dan, do you want to speak to that?
The contractor bids on unit prices for types of trimming. So, whether it's a grid trim price, a service request price, or crew rental price. And that's based on, the tree could be a young tree or could be a very mature, large canopy tree. It's just, the way the unit price is set up is to cover all ranges so that it's consistent as they bill us for their, for their grid trimming. Because as they go down a street to do trimming, the trees all vary in different sizes, and it would be very cumbersome to have unit prices set up for all those different ranges.
No, I get that. I see the variance. Tell me what the service is. So, that's off the contract, so that's addition to special requests by a resident or business owner or staff?
So, we're on our grid cycle. So, the city's broken up into different grids, and we do each grid. You know, we're looking to do it every two years. So, if a trim needs to be done in between that cycle, then that's a service request. If we have to come trim a tree because of a view issue or because of any other issue that it's having, then we do a service request to have that tree trimmed.
Is that included in this, in this contract?
It's in the contract, yes.
In this amount? So, there's no additional bill that comes to cost to the city that's outside this contract?
I think clarification. The unit prices that were bid in the original contract stay the same. Those are frozen. We're just adding additional money to do a little more higher level of service. We're not changing the unit prices, so if that clarifies that.
Well, no, but I mean, if they're the service requests that are off the grid, so how do we budget for those?
Yeah, we anticipate a certain number of those every year. We have a pretty good, you know, history and record of how often those come up. So, you know, let's set up in our budget to build.
So, that's included in this total cost?
Yeah, that's included.
No other, that's not coming, there'll be no other amendments then? I guess that's my final point. Can we predict that there'll be no other budget amendments?
We don't foresee a need for any other budget amendments at this time. We've tried to include a, you know, substantial amount.
Everything goes as planned.
All right. Mr. O'Neill, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was actually, I was just going to point out, I know that, I certainly know the folks up in Spyglass and Newport Coast and Harborview Hills and Jasmine Creek are going to love the increased amount of trimming that will help out with views. I know we don't have a view ordinance in Newport. I don't think I'd ever advocate for one, but when we have over 35,000 public trees, which if you didn't know that, we have over 35,000 public trees in Newport Beach. This is why we're talking about this size of money. I would just say it's a big deal for folks up a little bit higher that we continue to maintain those on a more consistent and a little bit quicker pace. So I just wanted to say thanks for meeting the service demands on this one, and I'll wait to go out to public before we make a motion.
Okay. Let's hear from the public. Any comments on trees? This is item number nine.
Hi, Maxine Malley again. I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but I do live on Balboa Island, and I am part of the Balboa Island Preservation Association. Judy Bowle is a resident of Balboa Island, and I've been in communication with her about tonight's comments. And I just want to relay her comments. She said, "This point needs to be made. The reason Great Scott trimmed our trees so late this year, mid-March instead of December, January, was because Great Scott was behind due to the storm work. That also means they are overextended when storms happen, and the city should not rely on one contractor due to these circumstances. Also, I'd like to just add that the tree trimming happened at 5:00 AM in the morning, in the dark. I don't know how anyone can see what the heck they're doing in the dark. I understand reasons to do it early. Certainly, we don't want cars impacted or traffic impacted, but, you know, we have engaged a board-certified arborist who is the head of the Horticulture Department at Orange Coast College, and he is telling us that those stress, those eucalyptus trees, those 70-year-old eucalyptus trees are under distress because of the astroturf that's been laid down on them. They're not getting water, and inappropriate and too frequent pruning. They're doing what's called lion's tailing. So they're trimming off the branches, leaving just like a lion's tail at the end. That distresses the tree and leads to potential more damage and harm to the tree. So we're asking that somebody who is a board-certified arborist be out there to direct these tree trimmers so that they know what the heck they're doing. We can't replace these trees. They're irreplaceable, that canopy. So I'm just pleading with you to take a check, take another look at Great Scott. If you look at them on Yelp, they get about two or three stars. They're not very highly rated. Thank you."
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward on this item.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Farsie, and I wanted to speak on Amendment Number, or Number Nine, Amendment Number Two for Citywide Tree Maintenance Services with Great Scott Tree Service. I just wanted to again make a comment that it says, A, determine this action is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sections 15,060(c)(2) and 15,060(c)(3), because this action will not result in a physical change to the environment directly or indirectly. So again, my comments are, it does affect the environment directly. I've been trying to study this environmental issue over in Ford, and I noticed how like one triangle of Belcor Terrace is not affected, and so I've been studying what happened there. And I want to thank those 19 trees that are protecting my neighbors. There's 19 ficus trees and trees that are, as you turn from Cheshire into Hillsdale. I was driving around there the last few weeks, trying to figure out what's going on here, and how do we fix it, and what can we do? This thing is sliding down the hill. Somehow, these neighbors of mine are protected. They're protected by the trees, ladies and gentlemen. It's the root of those ficus trees, those ficus tree roots. I had the question for the engineer during the meeting. I said, "Sir, it looks like this flight path is moving down towards the Wilderness Preserve right underneath McCarter, part of your 35,000 trees, Mr. O'Neill. And if it gets there, it's going to get to the creek, so it's going to get in the water. So is that the flight path it's going? It's going underneath us towards the Wilderness Preserve? Because it's curving underneath the post office and underneath the Irvine Company apartments, underneath all those condos, on its way to the Boree, the Canyon Sports Park and the creek?" I said, "Yes, Ryan, that's exactly what's happening, except when it's moving down underneath and hits a rock, it can go right or left." So it's got me thinking. So how did it go right or left? So I'm trying to understand this picture that they gave us, and somehow, these neighbors of mine, God bless them, they're lucky, they're protected by these trees. So these tree roots are able to redirect this stuff. So the reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you guys and ask your help, because our neighborhood, our communities, needs help. Something like this I've never seen in my lifetime, and we need every council member, the state of California, the Water Resource Board, everyone to get on board and come up with a game plan. The game plan they have right now doesn't work, but trees can work to help redirect whatever is traveling underneath us, so it gets somewhere so they can vacuum it up before it gets to the water and affects everyone in Newport Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. Mr. O'Neill, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Hurdman's point about A1 in the Marine Avenue is a good idea. So I will, I'll move staff recommendation on this item.
Mr. Hurdman.
I'll second the motion. We have just a little bit of discussion before we vote.
Yes, please.
Okay. I just want to make a comment, not make a comment, inform the audience, inform people at home that the astroturf that was installed around the eucalyptus trees on Marine Avenue, gosh, I think it was over 10 years ago, is in fact being removed. I don't know the exact timeline for that, but there is urgency surrounding it, and the Balboa Island Improvement Association, which was responsible for the installation of that astroturf, is well aware of the urgency in terms of getting it removed. So expect that to happen probably within the next week. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a question of staff, if you wanted to just clarify. Thank you. Clarify the start time on the tree trimming at 5:00 AM?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. And also, I wanted to clarify a little bit on our certified arborist that we have on staff. We have a city arborist who's a certified arborist, and also its crew chief that's on our staff who's a certified arborist as well. Great Scott has certified arborists that work on their crews that are out there doing the trimming. So we have, you know, well-educated, very knowledgeable staff attending to these trees on a daily basis, and those staff were present during the trimming of the trees on Marine Avenue. And then just to speak a little further on the type of trimming that we've been doing there, we've been kind of, you know, trying to get away from the lion's tailing. Lion's tailing isn't something that we want to try to keep maintained on those trees. So the trimming that we've done recently is actually just some pruning, and it's just to clean that up and try to shape those trees a little bit more efficiently. And our biggest concern with going out there on annual basis is to do an inspection on those trees, to check for dead branches, to check for potential issues. Those are high-risk trees based on the area that they're in. There's a lot of traffic there, pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, everything else. So there's a lot of risk. Eucalyptus trees are known to have branch issues with branches falling. We had two big branches fall just this last year. So it's a big concern of ours for liability purposes. So we go out there every year to inspect those trees and do some light pruning, just to keep the trees healthy. And that's really the intent, the purpose of going out there every year. And then for trimming at 5:00 in the morning, you know, it takes some time to get these trees trimmed, and we want to, you know, lessen the impact on the general public during normal business hours. So we get out there at 5:00 AM, we're from 5:00 to 9:00. It took two days to do both sides of the street, but really, that's to, you know, lessen the impact to the public. And doing that stuff at night, I mean, tree maintenance is 24/7 operation. When there's emergencies and storm issues, you know, trees get trimmed all hours of the night. So these guys know how to work in the dark. They have significant adequate lighting equipment, very highly trained staff. It's typically not an issue for us, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Just one other question. I was informed today that the Balboa Island Merchants Association has maybe an unwritten or in fact written agreement with the city on the timing of the trimming so that it will not interfere with the open of business as well. Is that correct or not? No? Okay. I just needed clarification on that, because I want to make sure what I say to the community is accurate.
Yeah, and I don't think we have an agreement, is what I'm hearing from my staff. I do know that time of day, as Marine Avenue get very full very quick, we have parked cars in the way of the tree trucks. We get in there early. I saw one of the slides that they took this morning. It's dusk dawn, it's early morning, but you can see in the tree trimmers are working, but the activity's not there. The cars aren't parked, and that's why it's done. We're out of there by 9:00 o'clock. We take two days to do it, to really be a safety issue and inconvenience, to reduce the inconvenience.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on one of the public comments asserting that Great Scott got behind because of the adverse weather conditions, and so everything's kind of running on a delayed basis, and the trimming is not being done on the schedule. Could you just clarify if that's true or not?
So, you know, we have our normal grid cycle that we try to stay on and maintain throughout the year, and then we have annual trims that we schedule as appropriate. So, you know, we try to trim those trees once a year, every year. Now, whether it's exactly the same time every year, that varies, and a lot of that has to do with the workload, which grid we're on that year. Sometimes we're on a larger grid, there's more trees to attend to, and it takes longer to work through that grid, so it takes us longer to get to some of the annual trim stuff. And then also storm issues. Storm issues do put us behind. You know, we've had a lot of storms this year, a lot, and there's been a lot of catch-up work to do on cleaning up those messes. Those are priority. When we have damaged trees, trees uprooted, all that other stuff, everything stops so we can get those trees made safe again, get the roadway cleared out. So there is somewhat of a backlog to that, and the amount of storms we had is really kind of out of the ordinary. We typically don't have to deal with that as often as we did this year.
And then one final question. Are staff satisfied with the service we're getting from Great Scott?
Yes, we're absolutely satisfied, and we're very happy with the work we have with them. We've got a very good working relationship with them, and they're very efficient and responsive. We enjoy working with them.
Okay. All right. Any other further comments? Let's call for the vote.
With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. Let's move to item number 12, I believe, Confirmation of Appointment to the General Plan Update Steering Committee. Mr. Hurdman, you had a comment?
No. I withdraw my request to pull this.
Okay. Any other comments on item number 12? Any public comments? Oh, Ms. Brenner.
I would just say, like to say that I appreciate the comments from the community, that we've gotten a lot of recommendations from the community on various members that have applied for this committee. And I had this vision of us appointing Tim Stokes and having Duffy be the one that suggested it, that that's a little pie in the sky. So I think that we have chosen some excellent members, and I think the ones we have on there already are doing an excellent job, and the two additional members that we've chosen will do an excellent job as well.
Well, thank you. Any comments from the public? Please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a Mr. Duffy? Did you, Mr. Duffield, did you have a comment, please?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little concerned. I don't know why I didn't think of this earlier, but so we have this harbor that generates a billion dollars a year annually, and the general plan in the past has not been very helpful to the harbor. And my worry is that on the steering committee, it doesn't seem like we have any harbor experts. What happens on the harbor, for example, the zoning, waterfront zoning, what happens is the public access gets reduced when you have everybody wanting to, all the property owners wanting to build homes. I call it residentialation. It's not a word, but that's what I call it. And then there's also 8,000 boats in the harbor that need service, and the boatyards are leaving us. And then lastly, you know, public access is being reduced. So I'd love to see the general plan be able to have a supporter of our harbor in this thing, and it needs to have an overall future plan as well as just now, but maybe one or two people from the Harbor Commission? I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, but I do feel like we're left, the harbor's been left out.
Don't be forlorn. There's another step to the process, just to remind everyone. This is only the steering committee that's doing the mechanical process, RFP, driven for the consultant and for the listen and learn phase. The real opportunity, which I certainly, we all, I agree with you, in the 25 to 30-member general plan advisory committee that will be named later this year, there'll be public applications, that consideration of harbor-related knowledge and experience is certainly useful, valuable, and important. I'd like to just follow up your comment, though, with the harbor visioning effort, I think, will play very well into the general plan process. The harbor visioning process that's going on at March 18th, Mr. Avery mentioned in his announcements. So that should be something that plays into the general plan. Do you see that happening, or could that be?
I just feel like that's my job, is to keep the pressure to, you know, support the harbor.
Good. Well spoken. Did you have a comment you wanted to make? Oh, okay. Very good. See, no further comments? Let's vote. Oh, I apologize, I never went to public. Yes, public comment.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I am coming in before you again out of increasing concern at the way the general plan update is evolving. Going back to 2014, as you've heard me say before, in 2014, when the general plan came in front of the public, the ballot question that was asked of the public was whether they wanted to reduce traffic and intensity. But in reality, the 2014 general plan added huge new developments. You would not have been able to tell that from the question that was put in front of the public. Okay? So I'm here again tonight to ask for total transparency when this general plan update goes in front of the voters, assuming that it will go in front of the voters. And this is the sixth time, sixth time, that I've come in front of you to ask for that transparency. And every time I've asked that question, it's been crickets, absolute silence. So I've had individual members assure me that, of course, there'll be transparency, but then we start this general plan update, and the first person that you appoint is Ed Salich, who is the most unethical politician I have ever met in my life. And so I'm sitting here as a member of the public who's increasingly concerned that this process is not going to have the transparency, and that we're looking at the potential for another end run around the voters. And so tonight, again, for the sixth time, I'd like to ask you if you will make a commitment that all new development that is going to go into the general plan be described and transparent in the ballot question that we will vote on. May I have that assurance? Is that a yes? Is that a no?
You can ask us questions if you could just end your comments.
I can ask questions, but you guys can choose not to answer them, which has been the case in six months. I'm giving you the opportunity to answer that question.
We accept your questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Madam Dixon, Members of the Council, my name is Jim Moser. Regarding this agenda item, the two appointments you're making, I just wanted to commend you for choosing two people who have not been appointed over and over to our boards and commissions, that we have at least two fresh faces on the general plan update committee, or steering committee. And I wanted to clarify, Ms. O'Hara, in her application, seems to remember she was on the previous steering committee. I wanted to clarify, she was not on what was the equivalent of the steering committee 15 years ago. She was on the bigger group that you're talking about, the GPAC, back then. And so, I hope she understands what she's applying for, that it's something different. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See none, we'll vote. Oh, did someone else? Oh, I didn't see those names there.
Yeah, since I pulled the item, I'll move staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Brenner, did you have a comment?
I did. I just, I'm not comfortable just totally letting Susan's question lie. I just, I think for me personally, we don't even know if this is going to go to a vote yet. I just, I think it's slightly premature. I certainly can commit to being transparent, and I think most of us can commit to that, but I don't think we're at the point yet where we can say we'll be transparent about the wording of something going to the public, when we don't even know for sure that this is going to go to the public, if it doesn't get to that point, so.
Well, I accept your comment, and just to respond to that, too, this entire process is being videotaped, and it's transparent, and minutes are being taken, the community's involved and invited to attend. I am announcing it at every juncture to announce, it's on the city calendar, so there's plenty of transparency and openness about meetings being held and the conduct of the meeting. So, I agree with you, Ms. Brenner, that I think we're conducting a highly transparent process. All right. Any other speakers up here? Let's, and we have a second? Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Item number 13 is the ongoing management of unfunded pension liability. And who pulled it? Did you pull this? Yes. Mr. Muldoon.
I did, because I want to hear Dan's lovely voice. Dan.
Should I use my Barry White voice? So, this staff report was discussed ad nauseam in Finance Committee, and you have a detailed staff report in front of you, so I don't really have a presentation, or I can speak to this item. However, I'll leave it to you if you have any specific questions on this particular item.
Mr. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Mr. Muldoon, you mind if I jump in for just a second? I assume the reason you pulled it was so we can make sure the public understands the education, or make sure we educate the public on all the things we're doing on the unfunded pension liability. All right. Councilmember Muldoon, Mayor Dixon and I have served on the Finance Committee. Mayor Dixon was the chair of the Finance Committee, and I'm currently the chair of the Finance Committee. We have a meeting on Thursday, you're more than welcome to join. We spent quite a bit of time on this particular item. The largest fiscal problem that we have, the state has, every municipality in California has, is the unfunded pension liability. And one thing that our council has been doing for a few years now is making sure that we get a discretionary amount paid down, so that the future interest doesn't engulf our future budgets, when hopefully most of us are still living here, and our kids hopefully are still living here. This particular item, I will say, is terribly complicated, but I will try really hard to just explain briefly. Every year, we get a slice of new payments that are, that we're on the hook to pay for in terms of both what's called normal cost, which is the cost that it would cost us to pay for the pensions, and our unfunded liability cost, which is the difference between what we have saved and what we should have saved in terms of, in order to pay for the anticipated amounts of future obligations for pensions. Each of these slivers is then added on to past slivers, and that forms our total normal cost, and it forms our total unfunded pension cost. There are times when we can do what's called a partial fresh start, and a partial fresh start is when we take some of those slivers and combine them and take advantage of certain things. For example, some years we have gains in terms of the investments, some years we have losses. If you combine those in and decide to pay them down faster, then what you can do is you can save on interest. The best example that we have ever come up with is if you move from a 30-year home mortgage to a 15-year home mortgage, it's absolutely going to cost you more, but you're going to pay a lot less in interest. What we're doing as part of this process is combining a lot of the slivers together in order to take advantage of some of the gains and use some of the losses. And what this will do is, this will actually not increase the, because of the way that we have, we're taking some of the gains and combining them, we actually will not be increasing the default amount that we will have to be paying as part of our pension obligation each year. But because of the way that we are doing this, and I will say, due to the creativity and true expertise that we have in our finance department, we will be saving approximately, is it 44?
100.
So, all matters. Interest. Go ahead.
So, this action alone, if we strayed, if we continued with the default method versus our recommended path, there is approximate $45 million savings.
Yeah.
All the actions collectively that council has made, this council, prior council, by taking this aggressive stance, we're saving the taxpayers well over $100 million in foregone our interest that we would otherwise pay by making that aggressive accelerated payment path.
Yeah, thank you.
And so, this is just an ongoing, or continuation of that collective effort.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. So, what we're looking at, folks, is it's a really difficult issue, there's no getting around that, but what we are doing as a city is a lot more than a lot of other cities. And what you're going to see is, in the next 15 years, this item alone, assuming approval and assuming future councils stick to the path that we have laid out, will save taxpayers around $45 million. It's a really big deal, it's really hard to explain how big a deal this really is, but when you start seeing numbers like that, I think it's a better understanding. So, I appreciate Councilmember Muldoon giving me the opportunity to run through, and I will say really briefly, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the members of our Finance Committee who have spent hours and hours and hours and hours going over, going through this, and of course, our finance department for doing this, and past councils for having the backbone and foresight to get this ball rolling. So, that's what we're facing with this, and I just can't get more deep into this without people falling asleep, so I'm going to be done.
You've had your walk moment.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
So, it wasn't Dan's actual voice, I liked the sound of, it was what he was going to say. And Willie replaced him as the tender. But what I, I've had people speak to me in the public, especially when I was mayor, when I had to go to a bunch of events, which I know you love and I didn't love. You know, I'm not sure this is the right thing, that we're paying down this unfunded liability quickly. It seems kind of dramatic. Well, it is dramatic. But if we're able to debate whether we should be trimming our trees twice or three times every two or three years, we have the money to make this sort of wise investment in our community. And I think that no services have been cut, in my opinion. I haven't really heard any residents complain. But this is the wisest thing, in my opinion, that we can do, because we can't always trust in Sacramento to solve our problems, and Newport Beach is uniquely situated and should take advantage of this. So, I think it's a consensus issue. I don't know a single person that doesn't support this. And it's the thing that, this is all said and done, aside from a couple bruises from my friend Susan Skinner over there, is the thing that I like to walk away from this council on and say, I'm really proud that we paid down this unfunded pension liability so quickly. So, I just, I wanted, staff, thank you very much for this, and just this council and prior council, and the prior, prior council for all sharing this vision.
Thank you for those comments, and let me just add to those comments, there's two other points. The prior councils started, the prior council that ended in 2014 got us started on these accelerated prepayments. Also, that was the prior council, under their management of the city, or leadership of the city, when we, the city went through, as the world and the country went through the Great Recession, and there were significant employee headcount reductions during that period of time, and that continues to help us save on those pension costs of over 100 employees. But equally important to what we as a council are doing, I do want to give recognition that through our collective bargaining process with our employees, that the city has negotiated with employees who, to contribute 11 million more per year than they did previously, and offer low, and they accept lower benefit tiers to newly hired employees. So, the employees have skin in the game as well. And this is all about saving all pensions, so that we could pay the bills, so there are pensions to be paid when people retire. And so, I just want to publicly thank not only our colleagues for being aligned on this important issue for the city's financial health, future, present and future financial health, but our employees have made a significant contribution. I think we are, Grace, correct me, one of the only cities where the cities are paying, the employees are paying this higher rate. Is that true? Some cities are getting up there. Costa Mesa may be starting to get close at 11% or 12%, but we're at, our employees are at 13, and some are, some groups are at 14.6%.
Right, 12% to 14%, which is, I think, one of the, if not the highest, in Orange County, together on par with that, so, and throughout the state.
So, we're all in it together, so I appreciate staff, our employees, our council, and the community supporting us, and we, staff continues to meet our service obligations. And Mr. O'Neill, did you have one more comment?
Very brief. I forgot to mention, Councilmember Brenner is actually on our Finance Committee, she joined us in January, and so she gets the joy of this as well.
That's right. That's right. All right. Do I need any public comment on this? I think I do.
Yes.
Public comment, please. See none? Do we have a motion?
I move wholeheartedly, staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, let's vote. It's coming, 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 yes. All right, so.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. I think we finished with the consent calendar, and it's 8:30. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. Now is your time, for those who may have tried to do this earlier.
Good evening, council. Ms. Mayor. My name is Robert Rush. In the fall of last year, I was a target of a lawsuit in which Jeffrey Hurdman piled on. I'd like to thank you for your involvement in that lawsuit. It was because of your screwy affidavit submitted that I won. And I came here tonight to give you a down payment on payback. I looked at some of your work product, it was as poor as what you submitted in the lawsuit, and I have here a 48-page FPPC ethics complaint documenting 32 violations, I believe, you've done in the last eight or nine months. This copy is for city clerk. Be happy to discuss it if anybody has any questions. You're going to be seeing a lot of me this year, Mr. Hurdman, okay? Any questions? It was really a good thing that you did. You helped me win my case, and you made me $25,000. Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item, please. Next public comment.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I'm here to encourage you to pursue meaningful political reform. We are way overdue to put reforms into place, and the events of recent years simply reinforce that. There have been multiple complaints made to the FPPC, as well as to the District Attorney's Office regarding inappropriate actions, some of these actions taken by our current city council members. The courts will not act to enforce our own political laws, because the city has argued in court that only the city has the right to take action. However, our city attorney has refused to take any action whatsoever, supposedly because city laws do not allow him to do so. So, you can see the catch-22 that has emerged in our city, leaving politicians free to behave in any way that they wish. There are now 44 FPPC charges pending against the senior members of this council, since the FPPC ultimately did open their own investigation of our council. I might add that our city attorney keeps his job only as long as the city council is happy, which may explain his interpretation that he has no authority to enforce the rules against sitting politicians. When the Museum House condo tower was approved in 2016, Dave Ellis was reportedly a lobbyist working to get this project through the city council, and the word on the street is that he would have made $800,000 if it had gone through. He is also the political consultant that got most of the city council members elected. According to the FPPC, this relationship is perfectly legal, but it stinks to high heaven. We deserve to know who is working to influence our council, but we have no way of knowing that right now. This needs to change. The proposal that Mr. Hurdman brings forth today includes enforceability of contribution limits, closing down slate mail, requiring lobbyist registration, and restrictions on fundraising in non-election years. Each of these restrictions is necessary to ensure transparency and ethics in our city, and I encourage you to pass this meaningful campaign reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and councilmembers, and I'm a homeowner, father, longtime resident of Newport Heights area, and this, like Mr. Duffield over there, we're speaking about public access, my, one of my best.
Do identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Mark Cernicky, and I live at 227 22nd Street, just on the border of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, and yes, I enjoy living here. And back to Mr. Duffield, yes, the access to the water, I have the NAC to thank for, it's just down the street, we ride my bicycle down there with my daughter, my kids, and just so you know, I have a nonprofit organization, and over to Councilmember Brennan, she talked about suicide and how serious that is, when she was talking about teenagers. I don't know if you guys know, but 22 military members kill themselves every day. And part of my, our nonprofit is offering services of taking those guys paddling, paddle boarding, and access to the water, and some counseling, just like handicapped veterans. I take our nonprofit, we have paddle boards adapted for wheelchairs. And I owe all this to Billy, who's here tonight, and founding father of the NAC, and I just want to, you guys to take into consideration, when there's councilmembers voting on anything that has to do with the NAC, I owe it all to Billy, and so does our veterans and people wanting to kill themselves. Instead, they get to go paddling and have access to the water. That's about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please, no, please, please, please. No, no applause necessary. Yes, sir.
Do you have a higher microphone? That was a joke, seriously. Hello, city councilmembers. My name's Kyle Anderson. I moved here from Chicago about eight months ago. I live in Costa Mesa, and I was recently elected to Newport Aquatics Center Board of Directors. My experience with the NAC started during my rowing career at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Learned about the NAC through teammates, coaches, and the women's teams. The greatness and success of the NAC and its various programs, you just heard about one of them, is well-known across the world, not just the Newport Beach community. Growing up surrounded by indoor sports and snowy winters, isn't it kind of crazy that a Midwestern kid like me knew what an outrigger canoe was, 800 miles away from the ocean? I mean, that's pretty crazy. I only knew this because of the prestige of the NAC. September board meeting where I spoke out solidified my desire to become more involved at the NAC. I spoke not because of that issue with the NAC, but because the NAC recently hired a new coach. The crowd had spent the entire board meeting harassing the new coach, placing their grievances, many of which you've heard, squarely on her shoulders. The coach is known in the rowing world for being a dutiful teacher and excellent organizer. Even so, the crowd's spiteful allegations made her feel unwelcome, and they wanted her gone. As newcomer myself, I spoke out because I felt an organization as great as the NAC should be welcoming such a great asset to its community. Unfortunately, I was quickly shot down by some of the rowing parents because they thought they knew better than everybody else. While my time at the NAC has been short, I've quickly recognized the wonderful benefits the organization gives the Newport Beach area, one of which you just heard, and I think you're going to hear more tonight. However, you may be wondering, if the NAC has such a great mission, why don't we often hear anything good about it? At a meeting greet for the junior women's rowing team coaches, one of the people alleging problems with the NAC started shouting over the coach's speeches, attempting to distract the crowd from the purpose of the meeting. I stepped in and asked the person to either be quiet or leave. After loudly arguing that the NAC is corrupt and insisting the crowd hear him out, he relented and did not interrupt for the rest of the meeting. Unfortunately, when I returned home from the meeting, I found that an Instagram account run by one of the people who continually speaks out against the NAC labeled me a thug for standing up when the coaches were being interrupted. Of note, the Instagram account is being run under the NAC junior rowing handle, but it has no relation to the junior rowing team. While I have not received any physical threats, I have received many verbal threats in the form of name-calling from people in the workplace, coffee shops, and even from the kids that are making, of the parents that are making allegations against the NAC. Would anybody want this treatment? I don't think so. So, I stood up to let those people that teach the children of this community to speak about values, right? Values that I still cherish as a collegiate rower. You don't often hear anything good about the NAC, because it's very peaceful, and incidents like this is what people want to avoid. People don't want to get up and be called a thug, right? In closing, I invite those who don't know much about the NAC, I don't know how many of you guys know about the NAC, come down, see what it's about, experience a practice, talk to the staff, they're all welcoming. At the NAC, we seek to welcome all those who want to enrich their lives through human-powered watercraft, and I hope to see you guys there and see the tremendous benefits of the NAC.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir, next. No, please, no. Please, yes, sir, go ahead.
You weren't clapping for me. At least not yet. Good evening, Mayor Dixon, city councilmembers. My name is Chris Blank, and I'm here to talk about the Newport Aquatics Center as well. I want to start by just mentioning something that you might want to keep in your head as you listen to me and the other speakers tonight, and that is that organizations reflect the values of their leaders. And that is that organizations reflect the values of their leaders. I think that's one of the reasons why you all chose to be leaders, and I think it's very important about what's going on at the Newport Aquatics Center. So the Newport Aquatics Center is really my home away from home. I started paddling the little yellow kayaks more than 15 years ago. I became a monthly member in 2006 and an annual member in 2011 when I joined a recreational outrigger canoe team that's coached by Danny Howe. Danny Howe has been a mentor to me and remained a friend for all of those years. With Danny's team, even though we were a recreational team, we actually paddled from Catalina back to the mainland, 30 miles. That was a peak experience for me. I also have to tell you that I met my fiancee Josie at the Newport Aquatics Center paddling. We're both in our 60s now, and yet we paddle several times a week. In 2018, we joined the recreational racing outrigger canoe team that is coached by Gordon Ikemori, and Gordon's here in the audience tonight. This idea for a recreational slash racing team was generated by Gordon just having a conversation with Billy Whitford at the picnic tables more than six years ago. He said, you know, I think it would be nice to have a paddling team that's available to all. And Billy said, let's go for it. So Josie and I have had the opportunity to paddle all over Southern California in races, in Nevada, and also in Hawaii through Gordon's team. I'm going to have to speed up or I'm going to run out of time. I think the most important thing to realize is that nobody's perfect, and we all know that Billy Whitford is not nobody. Nevertheless, I'm there six times a week. I see people of all ages enjoying the water. I see the junior rowing team doing what they do. I see the Makapo paddlers doing what they do. I see the dragon boaters. I see other people who paddle outrigger canoes, kayaks, you name it. And everybody is getting along and getting a wonderful benefit out of being on the water at the NAC. Openness and inclusiveness at NAC needs to be preserved. Broad public access is imperative. The City Council should know that Billy and the present board are fulfilling this mandate, and they deserve your support.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Please, please. Sometimes we encourage people to do, instead of physically clapping, just if you want to raise your hands silently, then that keeps things peaceful. Yes, sir. Proceed.
My name is Mark Foster, and I'm a longtime Newport Beach resident and Newport Aquatics Center member. You got a lot of them in the crowd tonight, and maybe a long night. As you know, a lawsuit has been filed alleging mismanagement and corruption by the current Board of Directors, which that board denies. But the lawsuit is a distraction from the real issue. The real dispute is about control of NAC. Currently, the NAC board members are chosen by the directors in office. The vacancies are filled by directors in office. The directors may adopt, amend, and repeal bylaws. The directors may even remove other directors without cause with a two-thirds vote of the directors. A banana republic is more democratically governed than the NAC. Yet, this governance structure of NAC is steadfastly defended by the current directors, which begs the question, why? The current directors claim that the lawsuit is a power grab and that NAC is well-run. Well, let's stipulate that that's true. Nonetheless, that is no justification for a governance structure that allows a cadre of directors once in control to run the NAC with impunity. The current governance structure is directly contrary to city policy applicable to nonprofits like NAC that lease land for no or nominal consideration. That policy requires bylaws of such nonprofits to provide an open, democratic, and transparent process that allows members to vote for directors, and further requires a governance and operational structure that is consistent with best practices for nonprofit corporations such as NAC. The solution to the NAC food fight seems clear. Amend the bylaws to be consistent with the Newport Beach city policy as determined by the city, and let the NAC members vote for the directors of their choosing. That's the American way. If needed, if indeed the dispute is but a power grab, the current NAC board will make its case and be supported by a majority vote of the NAC members. There would be no basis for any dispute to continue. However, if the self-selected board refuses to amend the bylaws to allow NAC members to vote, then the City Council and all of our fellow residents will know where the problem lies: the existing board. Your assistance requiring the NAC board to so amend its bylaws to be consistent with city policy would greatly be appreciated by hundreds of your constituents and members of the NAC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How many of you want to speak on this? Could you form a line down the center aisle and be positioned at either lectern so we could keep moving this quickly, please? We would appreciate it. All right, next speaker, please.
Hi, Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Barbara Singleton, and I have been paddling out of the NAC since 2004. I am a two-time breast cancer—well, one-time breast cancer, one-time throat cancer survivor. We started down at the NAC as a survivor group with about maybe eight, 10 people, women. We are now a co-ed team. We are not all cancer survivors, but we have a certain age. Our oldest paddler is 90 years old, in her 90s, and we're about maybe average 60s. I myself am in my 70s. I had one of our paddlers say to me the other day, you know, I'd like everybody to know that I came here from Northern California in a severe depression, starting my life over, had no friends, had nowhere to go. I found the NAC, and I found the dragon boat. I found a home. I think that's what most of us have found, is a place to do things that most people our ages wouldn't be doing. We found new friends. We found a way to just be somebody that a lot of people our ages won't be. And I have to say that this past year in August, some of our cancer survivors joined up with another team, and we went to Hungary in the World Classics. We came home with four medals, three silvers and a gold. And as I was standing on that podium, I said, God, I'm in my 70s, I'm in Hungary, I'm standing on a podium, and I'm getting a gold medal. And I say, thank you, Billy, for allowing us to come down to this beautiful center and paddle and be a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Janet Sims. I'm a resident of Newport Beach and a member of the Newport Aquatics Center. I've been involved at the NAC since my son participated in the junior rowing program from '98 to 2002. Also, I've been an active member of the Women's Master Rowing Program, known as WOW, for the past 17 years. I serve on the leadership team, and I am treasurer of the program. I'm here as a representative of WOW to tell you about our program. WOW launched in 2001 when the executive director, Billy Whitford, supported a proposal for recreational women's master rowing team. With continued support and encouragement, the program has matured from the original group of eight women into a team of 30 competitive master athletes who compete locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally. We range from 27 years to 70 years of age, and our teammates have included doctors, educators, business owners, and lawyers. Under the umbrella of the Newport Aquatics Center, we have flourished as a team of hard-working, determined women. WOW members contribute to the program expenses through fees and fundraisers. The money is then banked with the NAC and used to pay for equipment purchases and repairs or activities related to our program. As WOW treasurer, I'm involved in the purchase of boats and oars, as well as repair and maintenance costs. I have confidence our invoices are paid on time and in the amount confirmed by myself. I work closely with the NAC staff and receive monthly income and expense reports. It is not lost on any of the members of WOW what a treasure the NAC is and what a privilege it is to have access to our sport from this facility. We appreciate the NAC fosters an attitude of cooperation amongst the various water sports that call it home. We're proud that the center is home to an active junior rowing program and have supported the juniors with joint equipment purchases and ongoing maintenance costs. We love that on any given day, we could be sharing the wash deck or weight room with a blind paddler from the Makapo program, a Rotary Club member getting ready to jump in a kayak and help clean the bay, an Olympic athlete, or a group of kids experiencing an introduction to water sports. The spirit of inclusiveness is remarkable and has been noted by guests we have hosted. This atmosphere is not an accident. WOW greatly appreciates the city of Newport Beach's willingness to support the conditional use permit that gives us access to this amazing facility. WOW teammates are aware of our responsibility to operate under the guidelines of the permit. We limit our membership numbers and regularly remind our teammates of noise concerns. We were asked to send a representative to a meeting called by the harbor master and Councilman Duffield. As a result of the safety recommendations that came out of that meeting, we required all WOW members to pass a boater safety course. We take the necessity of being good neighbors very seriously. Thank you for the opportunity to—
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everyone. How are you tonight? My name is Michelle Bogardine. Sorry if I get a little emotional, but I come to speak on behalf of NAC and the wonderful impact that it's had in my life, being part of Project Pride and having people like Billy Whitford and Sam Couch welcome us. And this program basically brings youth—from intercity youth from Santa Ana. And what they've done is they've given us—they've built our character through hard work, dedication. And as I've heard all of you guys speak tonight about racism and breaking those walls down, forgiveness, right? And giving back. And I can't think of a better program that encompasses all of that, which is at NAC. And I just can't speak enough about the impact it had on my life and many others. And just the integrity of Billy and the character, the welcomeness—I keep repeating myself, but I just can't emphasize that enough. And, you know, I've been part of it since 2002, so almost 17 years. And I was 16 when I joined, and what I can say is, when you're that young, your foundation means everything. You're not stronger than your environment. So I was fortunate enough to be around great people that teach you that together, you're stronger if you are out in the water to watch out for each other, right? And now I work with the C-suite team in my organization, developing plans and initiatives to bring the organization together. And I learned all of those things through paddling, through dedication and commitment. And a lot of the things that we learned about embracing our differences because, again, together we're stronger. And I just wanted to say that on behalf of, you know, all the Project Pride kids who've done so much, and our trajectory has really gone in a wonderful direction. And a lot has to do with the people and the coaches at NAC and the people in Project Pride.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. My name is John Chavez, and I'm currently on behalf of—the—I'm the founder of the Makapo Canoe Club. In 2006, I met with Billy. I paddled with a sighted team for about five years prior, and broached the idea about putting a team together of blind paddlers. Now, he thought it was a bit crazy, the idea, and in all candor it might have been, but he said, let me think about it. And he thought about it, came back and said, well, give me some paddling, and let's start. I say this because had he said no, it would have ended at that point, because I knew nobody else who had any background, experience, and knowledge about paddling to the extent that he did. So we did our first race in Kona, Hawaii in 2006, and we've been on racing and competing not only here, but we've sent teams to Hawaii since then, to New York, with—we started in conjunction with RJ, our executive director, an outreach to New York outriggers, as well as other communities. My point and community today is that our goal is—our ambition statement is helping the blind and the visually impaired see their potential. And living in both worlds, losing my sight at a young adult and competing in athletics prior to that, water polo and swimming and lifeguarding, there was no team sport for blind people that I was aware of. And had Billy said no, there would be no team sport today that I'm aware of. And thanks to Billy and his staff and supporting us, allowing us to do the things that we didn't think we could do, with their support and their encouragement and being there for us and teaching us and training with us and being supportive of us, we've got to the point now where we've now done an outreach with the K Keys, which is for children, blind children, and for special needs kids. Blindness doesn't affect just an individual, it affects the whole family. And the ohana, as we call it, is what we desire to do, to continue to reach out and show the blind community there is something for them at NAC. And we thank Billy and his staff for being there for us and supporting us and for the ones that'll come in the future to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mark Baldwin, and I am a PhD candidate at the University of California, Irvine. I'm here on behalf of myself, but I've also been supported by my university in my work with the Makapo Organization as well as the NAC. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been covered very eloquently and far more eloquently than I could have put about the support and—excuse me—and effort towards inclusion that the NAC provides. My dissertation work as a PhD candidate is around the work of assistive technology and disability and inclusion. And one of the things over the last five years is I've worked in Southern California with a variety of different communities, finding a place that's willing to be open and supportive of the type of work that we do as graduate researchers is somewhat challenging, especially as it pertains to the space of disability. And so over the last 15 months, I've been working with Makapo at the NAC to develop further technologies that move beyond the current systems in place for organizations like Makapo and continue to support them. And so I just want to say, without the support of Billy Whitford and the NAC, to be able to be there and be present there, conduct research, and have the support of my university coming in and participating in those events, I think it would be a lot more challenging to pursue that work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, distinguished councilmembers. My name is Ramizur. I'm a three-time Olympian. I'm a coach. I'm a chairman in the International Canoe Federation, and I'm here to talk about my experience with the NAC and Billy Whitford and his staff. My family is not from here. I was born here, and I came back here after growing up in Israel. Represented the United States in two Olympic Games, in which after—I have a total of three, but after my second one, I broke my neck. I had gone to surgery over here in Orange County and resided here and continued here to compete and under the NAC, within the NAC. My family is the NAC. Billy and the staff kind of accepted me and took me. And, you know, coming from Chula Vista, the Olympic Training Center where I competed and trained before, you come with a chip on your shoulder. And Billy has—and his staff coming there have a tendency to create that bond between—doesn't matter if you are a high-level professional athlete and a somebody like Chris who just started paddling. I'm also a coach. I coach my wife. She has two Olympic gold medals training here at the NAC, recently from Rio and from London before that. We have two children, one was born here in Hoag. And with all that, we're still competing, training, and trying to make the Tokyo Olympics. This is only—it cannot be done with a great support system, with a great family. This is what the NAC and what Billy and his staff basically provide from us. Not financially at all. It's not about money for us. It's about support for our kids when we are training, support of—you know, Chris, I believe my wife taught him how to stand a paddleboard. Where else can you get—you know, somebody who's a two-time Olympic champion who's still competing, give you classes for $15 an hour or something. still competing, give you classes for $15 an hour or something like that. So my point is, you'll hear everybody here, integrity, inclusiveness, openness, and responsibility. That is the core base of the NAC and the leadership, which is under Billy. And I truly hope that this will sustain because you have to understand, it doesn't go by California, it doesn't go by the United States, it goes far from it. We have countries, they come here because of Billy and the staff and the history and the whole NAC that was built basically around, started with a small core of Olympic kayakers from the 80s, Greg Barton, US Olympic champion, and many more. And people come here from all over the world to train and have this, they're accepted with open hands, and I hope this continues because it really gives our community an edge and a very big positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Rick Vanderpoel. I'm a 23-year resident of Dover Shores. I live on North Star Lane. And kind of a different point of view here, but I see every day the Aquatic Center, and I've seen, you know, lots of families there, lots of events going on, and Billy and Pooh are just very, very nice, quality people, and it's an honor for me to have them as a neighbor, and I think they're a fantastic asset to the area. I don't know much about all the events and everything, but I'm really pleased, and by hearing what everybody's comments today makes me even more pleased to have them a part of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Scott Richter. I'm a Newport Beach resident. My son used to be a member at the NAC. I've spoken to you before. I guess I have the unfortunate role of being the counterpoint a little bit tonight, but what I'd like to say is that I'm aware of the, you know, I spent four years at the NAC, aware of the term ohana and the good feelings that surround a lot of the people that have been involved in events. And I'd like to say to the folks here and to everybody, that's the reason I got involved with trying to change the leadership at the NAC. I think an earlier speaker said it better than I could, and that is, this is really a fight over governance. And I don't think there's any denying the fact that the governance at NAC has been poor for a very large number of years, over 20 years. And that's been led by a core group of three or four gentlemen that have surrounded themselves with people that will vote their way. We were talking about transparency earlier, Ms. Brenner and Susan Skinner, and that's an important component of what we've been asking for, for the better part of four years, fighting the battle, trying to get some transparency into how things are run and the governance down there being met basically with a stone wall all the time. I'd also like to say, for the benefit of the folks in the room, that no one's talking about taking away programs and no one's talking about taking over the NAC. The fight, again, is really largely about governance, not about pitting one important program that supports blind paddlers or sends people to compete in Hungary. This is about having an organization that's a public benefit corporation that benefits from the largesse of the city in donating land at zero cost to operate in accordance with the law and with state regulations. And to the extent that people are unable or unwilling to do that, it's our belief that the city has to step in under its authority and do something. Now, in my remaining time, I do understand there was a letter sent by the city attorney. I don't know if that's the gentleman. Was there a response delivered? Am I able to ask that?
So we did send a letter asking them for information regarding the allegations that have been made. They contacted me last week and asked for a week extension, and so that response should be coming in this Friday.
Thank you. So what we're asking for is really the transparency that we were talking about earlier and adjudicating this matter, hopefully not in the courts for years and years and years. The leadership there seems intent on delaying and denying, similar to the situation with this letter. And we, all we want to do is have our day to be able to form the NAC or reform the NAC to a member-driven and a community-driven organization.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Dick Ashoff. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for over 40 years. I'm a UCI graduate, and I've been part of NAC for more than 30 years. The first person I met there was Billy. So I want to ask you, and just be careful, because you've heard a lot of people talk about the far-reaching aspect of the NAC. In my opinion, it's the best jewel of Newport Beach. It's generational. My son went through it. My son became a coxswain, and I hoped he outgrew that. He became the stroke for an eight-man boat at the head of the Charles. He was fifth in the nation as a single and first in the Southwest Region. Under the command of Billy, our children learn value. It represents Newport Beach. I ask each one of you to go spend the day at NAC, spend the day with Billy. Send your children to NAC. You will not get a better education. Be careful what you do. Let the truth stand. Let Billy's record stand. And it's time that you stand up as a unit and address this lawsuit and get it out so we can get back to taking care of our children and our people. Go see what the NAC is. Go spend a day on the water. They take care of the harbor. You couldn't ask for a better partner. So I just ask you to be careful. Review the facts and stand up and support Billy and the NAC. They need your help. We need your facilities. We need your lawyers. We need to take care of this lawsuit and get back to business. Alls I want to do is end by saying, thank you, Billy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Siobhan Robinson. I'm a 36-year resident of Newport Beach. Nine years ago, I came to be a member of this extraordinary community resource known as the NAC to continue my passion for indoor rowing. I have been taking classes for three years at the Iron Warsmen when it closed its doors for business. Many of the indoor rowers came to the NAC to become members and continue working out on the concept to ERGs. Since there were so many people interested in indoor rowing, Billy set up a class for us three mornings a week when the use of the facility was at a lull. The ERG class consists of approximately 20 core members and has developed strong ties and friendships as we work out three times a week all year long. I have had so many positive experiences at the NAC where we not only ERG, but celebrate birthdays by paddling an outrigger for breakfast, enjoy after-class holiday brunches, and support fundraising efforts for many of the other NAC groups. The majority of our ERG class is comprised of diverse seniors, but anyone's welcome. And we come to this class because it's a great stress release, provides aerobic exercise, cardio and endurance training, and overall mind and body therapy that we all look forward to throughout the year. We are so very fortunate to have the NAC in our community as a vital resource for public, group, and individual use that does not discriminate by age, ability, or activity, whether it's used as a training facility for world-class athletes, a teaching ground for environmental stewardship for local students, a water recreation center for people with disabilities to enjoy, or a common destination for devoted enthusiasts such as our ERG group. Furthermore, I have witnessed how NAC Director Billy Whitford has been instrumental in orchestrating and coordinating all the various functions between the different groups that utilize this facility, and should be commended for his leadership, peacekeeping, and diplomacy skills. It's not an easy job to negotiate between so many demanding entities. I think I speak for our entire group that's here tonight that says, that say that the NAC is our happy place because that facility has such a welcoming ohana vibe that people really do appreciate. But it is actually the hard-working and friendly professional staff and instructors that keep so many people coming back to enjoy the amazing activities that this Newport Beach Gem Marine Facility has to offer not only our local community, but the general public alike. Thank you for your support tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Liz Reichenstein. Get a taller also. And my husband Willie and I have been involved in the Newport Aquatic Center for over 30 years. We've seen it grow and are happy to see the success it has had after all these years and are glad you give us the opportunity to share why we embrace the NAC just the way it is. I remember putting informational flyers on doors before the city council vote put it on the ballot all those years ago. Billy Whitford relayed his vision to many of us back then for a place where the community can enjoy and come together at a venue available to launch manpowerd craft in the harbor. We have to thank the city and the voters for agreeing, and as Huel Hauser would say, "It's one of California's gold." My husband was the Women's National Team kayak coach in 1989 and interacted with many international paddlers that came to train for the winter at the NAC. He started a fundraiser for them every year, which turned into the Hal Rosoff Classic, named after a dear friend, philanthropist, supporter, and donor of the NAC. You may remember his restaurant, the Back Bay Rowing and Running Club in South Coast Plaza. Many different levels of athletes in all kinds of watercraft enjoy this special day that raises funds benefiting the Junior Outrigger Program. Our son Will, as many of the other young athletes, found a home away from home at the center and started paddling with the Junior Outrigger Program run by Sam Couch. He reveled in the summer paddle camps, worked at them, raised the outrigger teams, and made lifelong friends. We're happy to see the continuation of these programs and the continued involvement of the Project Pride students. Billy has consistently looked for new ideas, and his vision of the NAC is what launched it in the first place. Someone who has to make the hard decisions, who encourages the success of others, and the ongoing success of the NAC is a powerful gift. We can see why he was chosen as an honoree from the Angel of Light Nonprofit Corporation in 2017 for his dedicated service in leadership and the well-being of individuals, be it youth or adult. We are in full support, as many of the people in this audience and the 618 petitioners last year, of our executive director and the current board of directors, who so unselfishly volunteer their time in a positive and thoughtful way so that the NAC will continue to be better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name, my name is Beth Anderson, and I've only been at the NAC since August. I coached, before that, before I was at the NAC, I've coached for the United States Rowing Association. I've built a rowing program up in Oakland from a group of like 30 athletes to about 200. I spent 20 years doing that. I loved what I did, and the only reason I ever came down here was because of Billy Whitford. My experience at the NAC has been amazingly positive. I speak for all the coaches by saying that it's a positive collaborative group of coaches that we have at the NAC, and we are there for the kids. It's a very athlete-centric program. We try to allow the kids to run the program as far as allowing them to do a lot of the work and being part of it. And I feel like the kids get a lot out of being part of the rowing program, the paddling program, all the other programs that are there. And the main reason for that is because of, because of Billy and the staff at Newport that supports that. The parents at Newport Aquatic Center are amazing, all but a small group, are amazingly supportive of what we do, why we're there. And I've been honored to be a part of this organization for a very short time, but it's been amazing. So I'd like to just say that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Any other comments? Come forward, please.
Counsel, my name's Billy Whitford. I'm the executive director of the NAC. I'm a little humbled. This is organic. I had no idea this was going on. Thank you. Hi. Right to the point. There's a lot of stuff, but I've been here all my life. The NAC works. The reason the NAC works, you've heard, the NAC went through huge growth. Is it perfect? No. Is it improving? Yes. Is it governed? Yes. Are there different ways to govern nonprofits? Yes. Mr. Harp will get the response from us indicating that. So briefly tonight, I got to tell the city council, it's really been my honor, you know, to be the executive director for 22 years now. It's been my dream. It's come true. All these athletes to watch over, all the young kids now, we have generational kids coming up. It's wonderful stories of friendships and successes from hundreds and hundreds of users of all different ages, so you've heard, and from the community around the world. All I'd like you to do, I'm going to extend my invitation. Some of you have been down there, some of you I know better than others, some of the staff. I've been around City Hall for an awful long time. I stood in front of Evelyn Hart 32 years ago and the city council and pitched this idea, and we got approval in concept, and we went from there. It's a great collaboration between private and public. Our mandate is to build, maintain, and operate for the public at no cost to the public. Ask your city staff, you know, how difficult it is to maintain facilities for the public. Keep them trendy, keep them popular, keep them paid for for the public. So I thought, I think we've done a really good job. My mission tonight is to invite you back to the NAC. If you have never been there, please come down. Take a look. Ask the questions. Get the answers for yourself. Look for yourself. Don't take my word. Don't take their word. Don't take anybody else's word. The sky is not falling, I promise. We are operating, we're at capacity, we're very successful, there's a great vibe down there. That's my job. I don't deal with all the other stuff. I'm there for the safety of the kids, safety of all of our users, and to make the good vibe. So hopefully tonight, you got that message. You've been getting other messages for months now, and we have decided to be cautious in response. We'll just let the product speak for itself. Please come down. Take me up on the invitation. Everybody knows where to find me. Come for a ride along with the coaches, see the harbor from a different perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on any item? Please note, please, please. Any other public comments on any non-agenda item?
My name is Ryan Raza Farsai. I'm coming to you, to speak to you, honorable council members, as a concerned son, a big brother, a father, a neighbor, a friend, and a concerned citizen. I've been coming here many times because of my ongoing conflict and a difference of opinion with my Belcourt Park HOA Board of Directors and our Belcourt Master HOA Board of Directors. And I wanted to bring to your attention that on January 21st, I walked out of my condo to get my mail, and I saw three people sitting on beach chairs with yellow vests, and they had a little contraption with a little straw going into the ground. And I asked them, "What are you guys doing here?" I said, "We're doing the Ford environmental research." I said, "That's great. You should be doing it on the other side of the wall in One Ford Road. What are you doing here?" So that time is when I actually woke up and didn't realize what was going on. So I'd gotten a flyer to attend a hearing in November, which I did not attend, but I had got another flyer to attend a hearing on the February 28th on the Ford environmental, former Ford Aeronautics property, which is today underneath the One Ford Road community. The people that were there were the Santa Ana Regional Water Board, the County of Orange, the Ford Motor Company, and they held the eating, the hearing was here right there in the Civic Center. And the reason I'm having this conversation is because I'm really concerned and I'm here to help, to ask for your help. Ask for the council members' help to get engaged. Ask for the county to help us. Ask for Governor Newsom of California to step up for us. Ask for the Ford company to step up for us without having to go through litigation. This meeting was a notice, ladies and gentlemen. I'm in the business of dealing with contaminated properties with gas stations. The meeting was a notice. There's toxic that's flowing underneath us. When it's four parts per billion, ladies and gentlemen, there's an actionable item. You have to do something about it. It's 17,700 parts per billion inside my community. I'm concerned. I'm concerned about the health of my neighbors. I personally know one of my neighbors passed away of brain cancer. I know One Ford Road, another one of my neighbors who's had miscarriage. This is what's happening here. There's a problem, and it's been expanding, and it needs to be addressed. The longer it does not get addressed, the bigger the problem becomes, and it gets in the water, then it affects everyone. We got to do something about it. We don't know how long it's going to take. They're trying to put vents. Vents is a passive way of trying to attack this thing. You guys should get involved. This is a very serious thing. It's affecting 300, 400 homes and moving the way down to the sports park. That's multimillion-dollar homes. Property values affected, contaminated, breathing, toxic air. I don't know how to explain it to you, but it's not healthy, and I'm concerned. On February 28th, I was crying. I gave up any fight I have with my association. I'm here to help. I'm asking for you guys to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? All right. Before we begin the public hearing, we've been sitting here for several hours. Why don't we take a five-minute break, all of us, audience as well as council members? Just take a breather, stretch, and we'll come back for the public hearings and the business portion. I didn't realize Mr. Muldoon's not here. Wait, one more. Here he comes. All right. We are back from our minute, five-minute recess. All right, public hearing. First item number 14, the 2888 Bay Shore Drive Newport Marina issue.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I have to recuse myself on this item. I'm a tenant of the marina.
All right. I think we're going to be continuing it, aren't we? So Mr. City Attorney or someone could clarify?
So probably the best thing is to open the public hearing, see if anyone has any comments, and then go ahead and make a motion, continue the item.
Okay. Any comments from the dais? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll come back. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to March 26?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
All right. Under current business, item number 15, approval of professional service agreement with Ref Telus Financial Consultants for a 2019 water rate study. And we have staff here to talk to us about that.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, city councils, very briefly. Mark McCoivich, utilities director, and Stefan Catron, our utilities manager. We have a presentation, if you'd like one. Otherwise, it's the information in the staff report. Would you like one?
I don't think, where it's getting late, I think we all memorized it. All right. Any questions from council? Seeing none, let's go to public. Any public comments on the proposed water rate study?
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to point out to you that the staff report is a bit unusual. If you look on page two, the long paragraph towards the end, it's telling, this is an RFP process, not unlike the one you're asking the steering committee to do for the general plan update. And our RFP was sent out. It says that there were four proposals received. It says there was a committee that evaluated them. But there's nothing here about how the other three, Ref Telus is just one of the four who responded, apparently. Usually, the staff report would have a little table telling you what the rankings were so you could see if there were close competitors or not. That's omitted from this staff report. And the, just to point out, by contrast, the general plans update steering committee, in considering what they wanted to do with their RFP, were very concerned that they would see the ratings, they would understand how the staff had come to their conclusion. You're not seeing that here. So I'm not sure why it's omitted, but I've not seen that in the staff report before. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to explain that, Mr. McCoivich?
Sure. Yes, we do have, you know, the whole summary of scores back there. We just did not put it into the staff report. We do that on occasion, and I'd be glad to make them available to Jim.
Okay. Any member of the public who would wish, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor Protam?
Two quick things. The first is our draft water master plan is up online. Please do go check it out. And second, I would actually, that's a pretty good point by Jim. I really, I prefer to see how the other bidders stack up. So maybe this is more of a comment for our city manager. It'd be great for staff reports to always have the table showing how folks stacked up, both from a, either if they're ranking on quality, if they're ranking on price. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move staff recommendation.
You have a second?
Second.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Item number 16, introduction of an ordinance amending Title 15, the municipal code, setting time limits to complete construction. And Mr. Juerges, or one of you will be speaking on this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam, and city council members. I'm Simone Juerges. I'm the Community Development Director. Last council meeting, we had a presentation to address residential street parking impacted by construction. At the time, you've asked for additional community outreach, but you did ask for that staff bring back an item with regards to limiting construction to three years, and this is an ordinance that will do that. What we have, just real quick on this one slide, and that's kind of the extent of our presentation, this is the age of all the open building permits that are currently under construction right now in the city. And you could see on the kind of table to the right that, you know, 69% of the permits are one-year-old, and these are open construction permits. We about have 20% of those permits are two-years-old. And you go down to about only 8% or three-years-old, and then it dwindles down much farther. So this kind of table kind of shows the age of building permits that are currently open and active. And you could see, you could capture 98% of all the permits. They're going to not be more than three-years-old. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Simone, thanks for this graph. It's very telling. If you were to speak to the average individual who's in the six-year, five-year mark, what do you think they would tell you as far as why this has gone on for so long? If you could speak with them?
Right. In what we've heard before in the past, it's a varying number of issues. They've had trouble with their architect, they've had trouble with their contractor. Some of them are actually paying cash out of pocket. You know, it's kind of like their home project, and so they're doing it little by little, and that's what they want to do, is build their own project. The reasons are very completely, wide spectrum of reasons.
And what would someone tell you for year three and four?
Same issue. I mean, there isn't any difference. Most of the time, if you get into the year three, it's probably a complicated project. Say you have a house, maybe that's 10,000 square feet, 12,000 square feet waterfront with a basement condition. Those are difficult projects. Contractors sometimes get fired off jobs, and it takes time for them to sort out the issues with the contract and their agreement. So there is a complexity issue sometimes when you hit that three-year mark. And those are some of the kind of things we've seen with waterfront construction.
The complexity seems to be, why, the three-year number significantly higher than the four-year number. And the four-year, five, and six perhaps have more to do with preference or cash or issues that arise that are not based on standard construction projects, but some unforeseen or some preference.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Avery?
Just for the audience, could you go over, so if someone hits that three-year line, and then what happens then? There's some extensions, some, we work with them a little bit?
So this ordinance would be set a kind of hard, hard and fast rule that you have only three years of complete construction. After that, it really becomes a public nuisance, and the city can impose administrative citations and notice of violations. The city council has the authority at any time, I want this to declare a public nuisance, to administer legal action against the property. But if we were to, if the council didn't administer legal action, staff would administer admin citations. In the past, we've actually entered into completion agreements, you know, get an agreement, get it in writing, that both parties, okay, you got, you know, 60 days to wrap up construction. If not, we're going to go ahead and file suit. And we've done that before.
Thank you.
Any other questions up here? Up to the public, please.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This item is the first reading of an ordinance which will be permanently, or at least for a short time, amending our city code. The enactment of good laws is always a difficult process. I noticed that somebody has rewritten this since it came before you on February 26th. It's much clearer now. Somebody has done a good job of rewriting this. There's still a couple of problems with it I'd like to point out to you. I'm looking at page 16-4, which is the draft of the ordinance, and I'm looking at the bottom of that page, which is the operative thing. First, there's obviously a typo in the title. It has in bold section 1,053.3. It's really supposed to be 1,05.3.3. More importantly than that, in the second paragraph at the bottom of page 16-4, the last paragraph, in two places, it's talking about whether a permit is issued before the effective date of this ordinance or after the effective date of this ordinance. I would suggest, rather than phrasing it that way, you instruct city staff to actually put in what will be the effective date. It's 30 days from, two weeks from now. Whatever day that is, I think, should be written directly into the ordinance. It's a certain day in April or June or whatever it is, in the two places, rather than saying the effective date. The reason for that is this is a modification to the building code, and the city reenacts this every three years when a new building code comes out. And if it says the effective date of the ordinance, that's, each three years is going to be very confusing what ordinance it meant. So just be straightforward and put the date there. It'll work out in the long run a whole lot better. Thank you.
That's a good comment. So take note of that, Mr. Juerges. Any other public comment? Seeing none, come back up here. Mr. Mayor Protam?
Actually, I'll withdraw. I was going to ask about that, what Jim was talking about, but I'll wait until after Mr. Muldoon.
Muldoon.
Thank you. It says in the staff report, you have the authority to extend the length of time for special circumstances. Is that length of time defined?
It's more defined about, it's not defined. It's special circumstances will involve complex projects or extremely large projects.
So is the length of time indefinitely then?
It's up to 180 days, but they have the right to do multiple ones. So they're kind of looking at 180-day blocks if there's special circumstances or something beyond their control.
180-day continuances or blocks. Is there a fee associated with that?
Up to 180 days.
Up to 180 days.
There's not a fee.
No, so it's just, it's pretty informal. And is there any oversight outside of staff? Like, does it ever go back to planning commission if it seems to continue, or this could be 180 days continuously? So there's flexibility.
There is flexibility. There's no oversight from the planning commission. It is up to the chief building official's discretion, which is Samir Gosson, who's sitting next to me now. And again, it's really for those kind of extreme cases.
Okay. Could you bring back that staff, I'm sorry, that staff report graph you showed? Well, I like to propose something more than three years. I'm just not sure what. I'm open.
Four?
Well, I'm thinking four, and I'm wondering if there could be an option for planning commission review for someone more independent from staff to do so, because that's a kind of meaning that residents can come do and say, "This is getting out of hand." Neighbors can come do. Takes the heat off of you. So that's, I'm trying to figure, I'm looking at a legal mind like Mayor Protam O'Neill. Joey wants nothing to do with it, but I'm open to thoughts.
That's a good idea. Mr. O'Neill?
I'm going to come back to that in just a second, because that's, it's well taken. I have a question on the ordinance itself. Would you mind going to 16-4? I want to make sure we're on the same page as I'm looking at this. So when I'm looking at 16-4, and specifically the midway down, it starts now, therefore, we ordain as follows. Under 16, in, under section one, it references section 15.02.095, is hereby added to 15.02 as follows. And then it says 15.02.095 added to section 1,05.3, and then 1,05.3.3 is added to read as follows. I'm just not tracking. What's 1,05.3 compared to 15.02.095? I know this is really boring, folks. I apologize. But this is really important that we get the numbers right. So I just want to make sure, as I'm following this, that the numbering is correct. So how does, how do we go from 15.02.095 to 1,05.3?
So, thank you, Mayor Protam O'Neill. The 15.02 is our municipal code section, and this is an amendment to the actual building code. So section 1,05.3.3 is actually a section out of the building code, and we're actually adding section 1,05.3 to the municipal code. And that's how we've adopted our codes, our building codes, every three years.
Okay. All right. That makes, I think that makes sense. I just want to make sure that I was tracking on that. And then to Councilmember Muldoon's point, I would be fine with four. And then in terms of the mechanism for review, it's a good point. I guess part of the, so we've got two issues there. One of them is the right mechanism for review and staff time, and the second is really notice to neighbors that they can be heard properly. Easiest way probably would be doing planning commission. Second easiest way would be doing a zoning administrator meeting. Would this fall within the purview of a zoning administrator meeting if we wanted it to? Probably not. No, I wouldn't.
We'd have to amend the code.
Yeah. So I guess we're really, we're in a point now where we're talking through and having a discussion on, yeah, who does it and the proper way to make sure the neighbors in particular have a way to voice their concerns. I mean, I think, I don't know, I'd like to hear from other council members, but I'd support a planning commission renewal.
Ms. Brenner?
Yes, Kevin, I was thinking exactly the same thing about the planning commission because it's an opportunity for people, the neighbors, to actually be heard about the impact of these things. I have a, I have several people in Shorecliffs who have a project near them that has gone on close to six years now. And the excuses just are random. They just, the man has more money than he needs. He's in no hurry to finish the project. And it just keeps going on and on. He ordered windows from Europe. They came in cracked. He ordered American windows. Then he went back to ordering European windows. It's just like over and over and over again. My concern with starting at four years is if you allow a lot of appeals, if you allow some extensions, that it's going to get up to six years again. So if we start at a lower number, but we make it so it's not burdensome, so that people who have real legitimate reasons for not being able to finish in a timely manner have the opportunity to do so, and it's not like we're trying to punish anyone. We're trying to just make sure the neighbors are not unduly impacted by this. So if we start out with a lower number, but then allow plenty of leeway for adjustments as necessary, but I like the planning commission addition also.
Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've lived this life of construction where, in my community, for years and years and years, and it is just, so for example, we have 249 homes in my community, and every one of them, every single one of them has been, is going to or has been rebuilt. Every one of them. And so... And so our streets are very narrow, you know, and you're there because you wanna enjoy the neighborhood, we live there, we don't have a yard, we go out into the community, and we go to the beat, and we talk, and we walk our dogs, and when there's construction, it is mayhem, it is, I believe that if you were to build anywhere else where there's plenty of space, and there's, you know, there's lots, and there's not people there, and you have all the time in the world to build a home, but when you're gonna burden your neighbors for four years, I think that is horrible. You haven't, you haven't lived it, so you don't know what it's like, and, you know, if you go into a project where you're looking here at 70%, of the homes get built in a year, one year, 70% of them, so you're gonna tell somebody, well, you can take four years to do it, that's just bad planning. I wouldn't even wanna wait four years, I'd like to get in my house, if I'm gonna be making mortgage payments, or I'm doing, I wanna get in there and enjoy it, especially if it's in a community like I am, where we all are outdoorsy people, we wanna go visit each other and talk and be around, and it just, the noise and the trucks, and the constant movement of materials is just, and cranes and things, it's just, I mean, four years, come on. You can build a house, a beautiful home, in a year and a half, easily, if you just plan it. You have to plan it, you have to decide where you're gonna get your windows from, you know, you can't be wishy-washy, you know? If I told people, you know, it takes four years to build a Duffy, well, how many Duffys you think I'd sell? People want a product, they want it quickly, and I wanna encourage that. I just don't, I've lived it, and I don't want anyone else to have to live it, I think that three years is, I'd actually say two years, actually, to me, two years, we in Beers say one year, and very few people can do it now, because we don't allow working on weekends, but year, a couple of months is usually when they get done, so I'm just sorry, but I don't follow that four-year thing, sorry.
Okay, tell us how you really feel, okay. Mr. Herdman.
I absolutely agree 100%, Councilman Duffield, that three years is ample time, especially given the fact that, which I learned tonight, that we've got 180-day segments that can be allotted. If this goes to, if it's referred to the planning commission, and neighbors have an opportunity to be heard, which they could be heard here as well, on a project, then what? Finish it, finish it up, as far as...
Process?
The process, yeah. It goes, it goes back to the planning commission, the planning commission listens to the owner, listens to the neighbors, then what?
Then if they don't like, they could appeal it.
It would come back to us?
I don't know, is that, I mean, we're just exploring this process now.
That's typically how it would go, I mean, some other options would be to, you know, have a hearing officer do it, and still have a notice, notice meeting, take it outside of the planning commission, but there are other ways to have notice hearings.
Well, if in fact that's what we're going, if that's the way we're leaning, then doesn't this all need to be defined?
We'd have to...
Isn't this an unfinished product at this point in time?
Well, depending on what you wanna do, if you wanna build in some type of appeal mechanism with noticing, we'd probably need to take this back and rewrite it.
Well, I think if we're gonna do a thorough job on this, we probably should incorporate and anticipate this process through to the end.
Well, right now, we'd just end with the building official, they'd be making the final determination on it. Another option would be to allow maybe the first extension to be with the building official, and then subsequent extensions to have some type of appeals process, you know, there's a lot of different ways you could approach this.
Mr. O'Neill.
So if we did, so Aaron, play that out, so if we had the building official, right now, the way it's set up, building official makes the determination, there's no appeal from that?
No, their decision's final. That's the way it's set up now. So they could go to court, that would be one option.
Are we allowed to set it up so that planning commission makes a determination and their decision is final?
Yeah, that's not typically, so typically, you have city council review, you could have this, you could have a building official make the determination, appealable to the city manager, and the city manager's decision final, or a hearing officer.
Yeah, I mean, our point's not to, I don't think our point is to make it so that we're trying to draw the process out, I think the point is to make sure that neighbors and public who are greatly affected are given ample notice and the opportunity to speak out.
Yeah, you could put that burden on, like for instance, a hearing officer to make the ultimate determination, we have a group of hearing officers that we use, and then, you know, the determination would be whether or not they feel, you know, that they've met the standards to be granted the extension, and there's only basically two for that, that they've had circumstances outside of their control, or, what was the other one? Is there another one? I'm trying to remember now.
Well, so the...
Oh, special circumstances, yeah.
I mean, we just got through the same issue, a similar issue on our, when we were amending, what was it, L6 or something, the encroachment policy requiring additional notice be made to neighbors and surrounding them, I mean, I'm wondering if we could, instead of kicking it over to planning commission, we have a hearing officer without an appeal right, but the, but there has to be a notification of everyone within 1,000 feet of the project or something, I don't know, maybe 1,000's too big, but 500 feet, so that, typical's 300, okay, so I mean, 300, so, and Duffy's got me, Duffy's got me convinced on three years, by the way, so, but, but I'm trying to come up with, because I think Councilman Muldoon's right, I mean, we ought, we should be giving neighbors the ability to speak up on issues, so if we can, if we could do, if we did a hearing officer with notice...
Notice?
With notice.
The other option is you could have the building official, if they're considering it, you know, give everybody notice and allow for them to submit written comments, they can consider everything, you know, that'd be another option, but the hearing officer probably gives a little bit more, you know, more of a chance to be heard.
But, I'm sorry, the question...
And who would they be submitting comments to, the hearing officer?
Well, depending on who you set up, it's kind of, who's judging.
Okay.
Yeah, this seems to...
Why don't we still do some work on this?
Well, I agree, I...
You could come up with some. Mr. Avery, do you want to speak?
Yes, I think Kevin's right, the four years, but I think the way to get to the four years is just stick with the three, and then do the 180-day extensions, and the two of them, but you, I think you need to, obviously, it's like intervention at the end of year three, sit down and see a plan, but, you know, you could have a wealthy person that just goes, I'll just do what I want, you guys gotta live with it, what are we really gonna do here? Or you have someone that has no money at all, and they've run out of money, and their house is half-built, what are you gonna do there? In either case, are we really gonna take the property back, are we gonna, but they do get done eventually, right? Is there, is there one that's like 10 years old or something?
Well, we've taken a few people to court over this, I mean, the other option is you could have it with three years, with two 180-day maximum extensions, and then that's it, they get no more than four.
Right.
You know, that's the other option. You know, we filed criminal cases against people for not finishing their projects in the past.
Right.
So, you know, typically, it becomes a, you know, code enforcement type of issue.
So we have kind of a solution, I mean, we've been doing it, so it's just a matter of, yeah, I'm...
Well, I think the biggest issue right now is that people keep renewing the permits, so technically, they're not out of compliance, you know, but if they don't have a permit anymore, then they're a public nuisance, and you can take legal actions.
Could there be limits on the number of renewals?
Well, that's why I was, I was mentioning, is you could, you could basically say three years with two 180-day maximum extensions, and then that's it.
Right.
And then not have any type of hearing process at all, like the maximum gets four years if they can make the findings for the 280-day extensions.
You had, Mr. Muldoon?
Yes. Duffy, not everyone builds a Duffy, sometimes people build a Queen Mary, and it may take a while.
Or a Queen Mary, but they build it anyway.
So, so I'm fine, I agree with my colleagues on three years when it gets serious, as far as our interaction with them, but I also know there's some circumstances where, quite frankly, the neighbors don't care. And I guess that's what I'm looking out for, and if the neighbors do care, I wanna hear from them. And I think that whether it's a hearing officer or a planning commission, either would suffice for me, but I think two, one, 180-day extensions, that's it, well, now you're gonna have a council problem, because there may be something that everyone in the room understands, and quite frankly, no one cares that it's taking longer. So, but I also don't like the indefinitely component either, because that seems to just be a bottomless pit of bureaucracy and no chance for the voters, for the residents to be heard. So that's all I'm looking for, for a balance, so I'm fine with three years, but I think at the three-year mark, there should be periods that continue to offer extensions, and I would be amenable to either hearing officer or planning commission to hear those hearings, and I don't believe we should put a stop on necessarily the number of 180 days, unless it's gonna be perhaps a year or two, pretty far out, otherwise, we're gonna have to hear some issue where no one minds at all that they're being built, and they have a good reason. And I understand it'll be the super minority that happens.
All right, Mr. O'Neill, Mayor Potem O'Neill, one more time.
How about this as a compromise? Three years, hearing officer require 300-foot notice to neighbors for a max of 280-day extensions. Any extension beyond that requires council approval. Second. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not making a motion, I'm asking, no, 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 hang on, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna make a motion on an ordinance change like this, I'm suggesting that if that, because I'm kinda hearing that to be a decent consensus, I'd like this to come back at the next meeting with these modifications, if, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, then, yeah, then I, I guess my motion would be to continue the item to the next meeting with those modifications. Have a second.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yeah, that's, it's a motion for a continuance of this item to the next meeting with the, with those modifications.
I'll second.
Okay. Shall we vote? Oh, no, public comment?
I think it's very extemporaneous, I'm Joni Nichols, and I live on Balboa Island, and I'm doing this for my neighbors...
Did you say your name already? I didn't hear.
Joni Nichols.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I live on Balboa Island, and I'm representing my neighbors on the 200th Street of Diamond, just out of goodwill tonight, because I moved to my home in 2010, and two doors down, on the 200 block of Diamond, there was a house that had one of those green screens around it, we used to call it the litter box house, because it just had sand, and then that was supposed to be an improvement, having the green screening. That home was completed in 2018, so that's one of your eight-year homes, and I wasn't directly impacted, because I had a home in between me, but I'm doing this for you, the Frakers, who had to look at it for eight years. Thank you, I'm so sorry, Linda and George, and I just wanted to know that that does exist, some of these eternal projects. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll come back.
Just briefly, is there any way we could bring the, I was talking to someone regarding workload, is there any way we could bring this back first meeting in April?
Yeah.
Is that an issue?
I modify my motions to accommodate that.
All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you. Number, where are we, 17, are we there? Yes. Professional Service Agreement with CityNet for Homeless Outreach Services, and staff has a report?
You look perplexed. I'm trying to get my PowerPoint up, good evening, mayor and council. We wanted to give you a brief presentation tonight on the CityNet agreement we have before you, it's for our homeless outreach services. Wanted to give you a little background about what our current status is of our homeless population in the city. The last count that we did was in July of 2018, and we identified 86 homeless individuals, and you can see there the demographics, mostly are male, men in their 50s, and most of them are white. We did participate in the point in time count, which the county of Orange does on an annual basis, where we, on, over two nights, we count everybody who's homeless in the county. We participated in that, and we're still waiting for our numbers for 2019, but we expect that that'll be right around that number. Wanted to give you an update, too, on what we've done over the last five years, and the kind of money that we have spent in trying to address this issue. We have a full-time police officer, patrol officer, that works specifically with our homeless population, he does a wonderful job, he knows all of our, all of our homeless residents. We've provided through our community services grants, about $168,000 in services to those who serve the homeless, we have some funds we use for short-term stays, and our Orange County Healthcare Agency provides behavioral health services with us two days a week, they go out with our officer and meet with the homeless to try to get them off the street. And last year, we also, for the first time, we participated in a contract with CityNet, it was a six-month pilot program, to help get our homeless people connected with resources, and to trying to move them into permanent housing. Just also to let you know about what kind of affordable housing we do have in the community. We have 394 units currently, we have 91 that are under construction, 78 that are entitled, so in the next several years, we'll have about 563 affordable units in town, and that is meeting our current affordable housing needs. Our CityNet contract, we looked at over the first six months that we had, we do have our CityNet partners here in the audience as well, in that six months, we made 158 contacts with homeless individuals. Statistics say that in order to get somebody from a homeless into, to agree to go to a shelter, it takes at least 17 minimum, 17 times of talking to them before you can get them to accept services, so it's a very difficult, complex problem. We had 51 of those agree to enter into case management and to exit the streets, and we had, we had 17 folks that actually are no longer homeless. And one of CityNet's jobs with us under this proposed contract is they help keep people in housing, so once you get them in housing, there is a need to make sure that they're paying their rent, they're doing those things they need to do, they're going to their jobs, so this case manager is going to visit these folks to make sure that they're still on track, so they don't end up homeless again, we're trying to break that cycle of homelessness. So before you, before you tonight is a three-year agreement with CityNet with two one-year options, it's $200,000 a year. One of the things we've added is 1,000 hours per year of on-call response, and this would be to address some of our community concerns of things that happen on the weekend, or late at night in some of our spots where our homeless tend to gather, a resident could call the police department, the police department would take the call from our resident, and they would decide, the watch commander, whoever answers the phone, would decide whether or not that needed a police response, or whether that needed a CityNet response, or some kind of combination, and then they would make the call as to whether or not that would be the, a CityNet response. So we think that's going to be enhanced level of service for what they are doing. CityNet is heavily involved in the homeless issue in Orange County, they are the only service provider that provides this kind of service that we know of in the county. They have networks, and they are, they're available to all of our social and social health, mental health services, they know who to go to, they know where the housing is, they know where the beds are, and they're gonna be able to provide us with some long-term housing stabilization for these folks. So that is, that is the goal of the contract, there is one, one other thing I'd like to request, that the council amend the staff recommendation to say that the contract would be for an amount of $1 million even, over the, over the five-year term, instead of And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Avery? That hasn't come off yet.
Yeah, I would just like to ask some questions of CityNet.
Yeah, I would just like to ask some questions of CityNet. That's okay.
Good evening for the record, excuse me, for the record, Matt Bates, CityNet. Our offices are 2121 West Creston in Anaheim.
And how long has CityNet been in business?
So, CityNet operates as a nonprofit, has been operating since 2003 in various forms. We've been working in homeless services here in Orange County since 2014. Prior to that, working in Long Beach.
And you have a, you're a private nonprofit?
Correct.
So, you have a board?
Correct.
How many board members are there?
There are, let's see, four, five board members.
Great. And then you're, and then how many employees about?
We are nearing 50 employees. So, we're growing fast. We've, we've got, we actually have close to a dozen open positions.
Right.
For pending work.
Right. And then what do you do for them?
I'm the vice president for the organization, so I'm tasked with all of the homeless services in Orange County, to direct all of those. Well, and across the, across, actually across the organization. So, we do some work in Riverside County, LA County, and Santa Barbara County also.
When it comes to hiring people, you've got to find some credible people that can do the sorts of things that you do.
Yeah, that's the, that's the secret sauce. You hit right on it. It's, we're in a people business, so that's our biggest expense is our labor cost and that's our biggest investment from a time allocation standpoint. So, fortunate, we're fortunate in that we have a very strong Orange County team. And we're fortunate in the fact that we've got team, team members that are accustomed with working here in Newport Beach because we had the pilot project here. So, we won't have, we won't have an issue locally. It's a, you know, we're stressed out about Santa Barbara, we're stressed out about Riverside County because we know that the, that the, behind all the numbers, it's really, it's really having great people. So, that's our, that's, you know, that's really my biggest job is to, is to find and train and equip.
Right.
The best people that we can find.
But we have 87, I guess, homeless right now. And how many staff would you have to, you think?
In this proposal, so this would be two FTEs. And then, as was mentioned, in addition to those two FTEs, availability for off-time hours, which would include weekend hours.
Right.
So, we would be, we'd be, you know, available essentially, you know, seven to seven, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Do you do background checks on your employees?
We do.
What does that entail?
I could get you, you know, from our, from our operations director, I could get you the exact, there's a, there's a long definition of that because we are engaged in county contracts. And so, it's not a live scan, but it's whatever, just short of that, just this side of a live scan.
A live scan for the record is fingerprinting DOJ background checks.
Correct.
Okay.
So, there is a, there is a background check that does, it's not a fingerprint.
Okay.
But I can give you the, if you're interested, I could submit the, the technical definition of all the different things that we do. There's a couple of different steps to it, so.
No, I was just asking to get to Councilman Avery's point. I think that the residents just want to know that this is a delicate issue, involves public safety and also concern for those who are homeless. So, wanted to ask that question. If you don't mind, I'm going to now ask questions to my police officer here.
Good.
Thank you.
Before we, again, I'd just ask another question. How many cities in Orange County are you serving?
So, we're in 17 of the 34 cities in Orange County.
And you have similar contracts as what we're proposing here?
Similar contracts to what's being proposed here, yes.
And how is CityNet funded?
So, we're a nonprofit organization, so we have some charitable donations, grants and the like. And then we have, we actually receive federal, state, county, and city funds.
I see. Okay.
Through fee-for-service contracts.
All right. So, I'm back to you.
Thank you. Officer Birch?
Yes, sir.
Please state your occupation and assignment. I'm teasing. That's prosecutor talk. Thank you for being here this evening. Can you tell those in the audience and those at home who are watching how law enforcement is sometimes restricted in dealing with individuals who are homeless or considered to be transient?
Yeah, well, it's a complex issue, the homelessness, and it's not something traditional law enforcement is typically equipped to deal with, all the complexities that go into it. A lot of that is the mental health issues, medical issues that go along with some of the homelessness, access to services and benefits that are available to a number of homelessness, VA benefits, for example. It's not something that we traditionally deal with on a day-in, day-out basis. Our homeless liaison officer, Tony Yim, has become very educated in that, but he's one person. And what we hope to gain from the partnership with CityNet is the education experience and training in the social services, the outreach and linkages to all the sheltering, housing, and the other services that are out there in terms of benefits, social services, mental health, and all the rest of it. So, they add quite a bit to what we do. And in terms of CityNet employees, they'd be working very, very closely with us at the police department, Officer Yim, as well as a homeless liaison officer.
So, someone like, I'm sorry, CityNet, if someone like CityNet is used by the city, it frees up some of your time to deal with other pressing criminal issues. But there are some circumstances where you need, will need to respond to a call and be there with him, correct?
Absolutely.
And what those circumstances tend to be?
It could be anything. Really, honestly, it could be somebody in medical distress. We're usually with our fire department partners, the first to respond with them. It may not be a medical emergency where they need to be admitted to a hospital, but we could get them to some temporary shelter where there's some wraparound services there. So, there's a myriad of possibilities that we would partner with them and go out with them. And oftentimes, we would ride along or they would, excuse me, ride along with us and our officers in doing some of that. And then other times, they'd be out on their own doing engagements in contacts with homeless, trying to provide services to them.
And just so some people who are watching understand the law, there has to be a legal justification to detain, to detain an individual, correct?
Correct, yes.
And those include like a typical Terry stopper, just a questioning contact?
Probable cause of believe crimes being committed.
That's right. Otherwise, there's no legal mechanism in which to detain someone even temporarily.
True. And there's a lot of case law to your point now about homelessness and what is legal, illegal camping laws, camping violations, and so on, so forth. Makes it difficult for us. But, you know, we've seen traditionally over the years that a strict law enforcement approach to this isn't, isn't the answer. We think the collaborative holistic approach, bringing all those energies that I mentioned to bear is the way to address this. And we've had some very good successes in the last few years working towards that. And I think this would just continue that.
And if an individual were to agree to work with a program like the one we're discussing, there are other opportunities in which, to address their status that would not exist otherwise. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, well, CityNet in particular has access and linkages and, and education experience with all these different services, housing, temporary housing, mental health, all the things that we're not particularly trained or educated in and they can help us with. We know our community pretty well. We know our homeless community pretty well. But they offer the things that aren't traditional law enforcement, the traditional law enforcement tool. Matt uses this phrase quite a bit. They're probably the carrot to our stick, if you will. And, and yes, we need probable cause to use the stick. And we've used Officer Yim as kind of the both, carrot and stick, but it's, it's just not enough. And I think our community has seen that over the last few years.
And thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jacobs, can I ask you a couple of questions? Could you go a couple, could you bring up the presentation again? I get asked about this enough that I'm trying to paint a picture for those who are interested.
Which slides are?
Could you go forward one? Okay, here we go. So, 158 individuals are contacted by CityNet or law enforcement, first that mattered, but CityNet. Is this a City of Newport Beach metric?
Correct.
This happening? Okay.
Yes.
And, and so that's not hypothetical, 158 individuals who are in Newport Beach were contacted?
That's correct.
Okay. And of those 158, 51 individuals agree to enter into a case management with you?
Right. That's right, with us.
And it says 17 actual street exits. What's the difference between the 51 and the 17? What happens there?
The 17, so HUD, US Department of Housing and Urban Development has classifications for what they call street exits, definitions, and that could be anything from emergency shelter all the way to permanent housing. And there's like 23, you know, different types of exit. About 80% of the exits that we achieve overall are the, more the emergency type, temporary type shelter. And that would, so a typical case here in the central service planning area would be like the Courtyard or Wise Place in Santa Ana or the Hospitality House in Santa Ana. So, Judge Carter, for outreach groups like ours, he's, you know, if it's within Orange County, if it's not a relocation out of state, which we would do, if someone has family or friends out of state and they're not going to be homeless and we check, we check them out with law enforcement and they're not going to violate parole by leaving the county, we would do that. But if they're going to be exited in Orange County, Judge Carter wants them to be exited within the service planning area guidelines. So, that would be, like for now, there are more coming, but you've got the Link in Santa Ana, which is for Santa Ana residents. You've got the Courtyard in Santa Ana, which is for all Central Spa. And then you've got private agencies like Wise Place, which is a women's shelter in Santa Ana, Salvation Army Hospitality House. Those are, those are some of the big ones. You know, Tustin's gonna, you know, got the Orange County Rescue Mission and they're opening a new shelter there. So, these would be the regional, these would be the regional emergency shelters. And so, a typical case would be to exit them from the streets of Newport Beach. So, this would be somebody who HUD would define as a street-level homeless person living in a place not fit for human habitation. So, in a car or in a, you know, behind a building or in a transportation center or something like that. And exiting them into an emergency shelter all the way into permanent housing. So, it would be kind of run, runs the spectrum. Obviously, we try to get them into the best possible placement and into a placement where there is a reasonable pathway towards permanent housing. So, the shelter system is improving and is getting better at, you know, at working with clients within the shelter system on exiting them from there into more and more permanent forms of housing. So, those 17 would reflect, you know, people that were on the streets of Newport, that over time, we worked with them, we developed that kind of case management relationship and then we successfully were able to find a bed for them and transport, refer and transport them to their new location.
And you probably have ongoing relations with those individuals?
Correct.
These discussions with those individuals who are the 51 who agreed, they're somewhat cooperative, and there's probably an open channel?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, we, we keep working with everybody. So, you know, sometimes we get asked, you know, about like a service resistant or service accepting. And as a service agency, we don't draw that distinction. We just feel like, we just keep trying, you know? You never know when someone's going to have that moment of clarity and they're ready to make a change. And so, we hope to have a trusting relationship and be available and be present when they're ready to make that change so that we can strike while the iron is hot and get them into a better situation. So, we keep working on everybody. Those 51 would be people that they actually filled out paperwork with us, you know, they signed a waiver saying that we could start working on their behalf to get them into, you know, to get them signed up for public benefits to which they're entitled, that might help them with their housing, identification, those kinds of things that are necessary in many cases to qualify for permanent supportive housing or other, other types of permanent housing through the coordinated entry system of the county. So, that means they've, they, those 51, they signed a document with us saying, yeah, we want to work with you, we want you to work on our behalf.
And just a final question. At any point during this process, does the status of that individual change as far as their ability to return to the streets or, or their inability to return to the streets without some sort of restricted period?
I'm not sure.
Well, I'll break it down. I've heard some examples where individuals will join a program, a housing program, for example, and they may leave, but not in the same sense that they may just leave on their own accord. It's like a checkout process and it's almost as if due process has been forfeited for the sake of, of housing as opposed to what used to be done with putting an individual in jail and releasing them. That due process essentially has been shifted from a criminal system to a more humanitarian system that we're discussing right now.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, the good news from our perspective is that even people, even, even homeless neighbors that transition into emergency shelters, they're, they do so much better. Like, there's just a night and day difference between being unsheltered and sheltered. And, and people who are sheltered tend to work very hard to stay sheltered, even if it's in an emergency shelter. So, what we find is across all 17 cities in Orange County, which, you know, encompasses thousands of street exits at this point, that there's a 90%, right around 90% retention rate after 365 days. So, there's a, there is a recidivism rate, but it's about 10%. HUD, HUD, you know, has, kind of has a standard of 80% retention for all organizations of our types across the country. We find about 90% here in Orange County. And it's really because, you know, just, you know, if you're dealing with mental health conditions, if you're dealing with addictions, if you're dealing with, you know, those, those things are so much, you're more successful to manage those in a housed condition where you're not worried about food, clothing, shelter, and your emergency services. So, even from a case management standpoint, it's so much easier to work with people when they're sheltered, even to get them ID, identification, to get them medication, those kinds of things are exponentially easier because you know where they're going to be and they're sleeping better, they're not worried about their emergency services. So, they make appointments, they, you know, they kind of come into their own and are able to make better choices while they're housed. So, it's just, it's, it's, it's something that from our perspective, we're always interested in the permanent solutions. And we're always interested in moving people into a position where they're going to be, you know, ideally to where people are going to be in permanent unsupported housing, meaning they're going to be working and they can pay their own way and they can pay their own rent. That's not always the end of the road for everybody. You know, some people have disabilities to which they're not going to be able to work. But the encouraging thing for us is that even getting them into the emergency shelter system, we, visibly, our case managers notice the difference within days. You know, they, they look better, they, they make better decisions. And then over the long term, like I said, the vast majority work very hard to stay housed or stay sheltered.
Make free time.
Let me just ask you a quick question as long as you're standing there. Thank you for this good discussion this evening. I just want to clarify with the city attorney that if we were to do this contract, we still, because the city of Newport Beach would, does not have a physical emergency or permanent shelter, we still will not be able to enforce our anti-camping laws. Is that correct?
So, basically what the courts are coming down and says is that if there's not some type of availability of some type of shelter or a bed, then you can't enforce your camping laws. So, that's kind of the general rule.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor Potem.
I actually had a clarification question on that last slide that was just up. Said 158 contacts with, there you go, 158 contacts with individuals. Was that 158 contacts with 158 individuals or were there multiple contacts with individuals?
It's a fair question. I can, I have a document here. So, that would be, that would be, that would include duplicate interactions.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because that number sounded a little high for, in terms of number of individuals, but I understand, I just needed to clarify.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Oh, just, so, you know, it's sort of a myth that, well, a lot of homeless just want to be homeless, just want to be on the street. So, what you're saying, that's not true.
Correct. That's not my belief.
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, to that end, CityNet had the contract on the flood control channel, the county contract, right outside of Angel Stadium on the 57 freeway. And those were some of the most sophisticated encampments that I've ever seen. There was a, I mean, people were digging, you're talking about construction here tonight, they were digging post holes and pouring cement and setting up fences because they were out on that flood control channel, some of them for a period of years. And so, they set up very sophisticated, very elaborate encampments. And so, from the outside, people would say, well, you know, I can see why they would never move. But, but we were there seven days a week on that flood control channel and we, over the seven-month period that we were out there, we talked to all those people. And without exception, they all, once you'd established trust, as was mentioned, it can take some time to establish trust, but every single one of them said, look, time to establish trust, but every single one of them said, "Look, you gotta get me out of here." You know, they, there was not a person that, that, that said, "I want, this is my preferred destination, this is what I want to do, I want to camp here." Because it was, it was, that was probably the most, I don't know, comfortable is not the right word, but the most sort of accommodating situation that a homeless neighbor could ask for. And it's still, people were hauling water for half a mile, you know, to, you know, and so it was just not, it was not comfortable, it was, it was not safe, it was not, people didn't sleep well, it was, it even, you know, sometimes the exterior, people would say, "I'm fine, I don't need any help," but over time, every single person, at some point, we had a conversation and they all wanted housing.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for those questions, maybe there'll be more later. I have a question before we go to public. Could we add an Item D to the prescriptions this evening? I'd like to, in addition to ABC, I'd like to add a D, an additional action that we would bring back to the council to form a homeless task force at our next meeting, and that I will, the mayor will appoint members of the council initially to get it started, and then would ultimately include members of the community to work on our next steps in addition to what we're recommending here tonight, with the direction to looking at temporary and permanent facilities in the city, or somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yes, so we would bring back an action to form that task force at the next council meeting?
Yes, at the next council meeting, thank you. All right, let's, any more comments here? Let's take it out to public comment.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. This, this contract is part of the noble and compassionate effort, as I understand it, to find homes for the homeless. The staff report, the slide we up there is emphasizing street exits as a measure of success. This may seem an odd comment, but if you recall our election last year, one of the candidates, Mr. Roy Engelbrecht, suggested that in a compassionate community, some citizens, one would hope, might offer temporary shelter to some of the homeless in their private homes. If that happened, such individuals would no longer be on the street, that that's a street exit, but they have not found a permanent home, and the city is considering this contract. I'm wondering if further helping that individual would fall within the scope of this contract or not. Thank you.
Either one of you have any comments here? I don't know.
This is a fun one. Jim, are you familiar with a, Jim, are you familiar with the Third Amendment United States Constitution? It's the one that basically, I will correct you if I'm correct, say, Americans will not be forced to quarter soldiers, and it's because it was abused greatly by the British. And I think that same sentiment could be applied to forcing individuals to stay in your home, even if you don't want them to. So I think we have a constitutional comparison there that answers that question. But I thought you would enjoy the trivia, Jim.
Okay. All right, any other comments up here? I want to thank CityNet gentlemen.
Matt.
For being here this evening, and let's see what happens. Let's, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation with the addition of Item D with the modification of $1 million.
I'll second.
And let's vote?
Member Duffield? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Very good. That's important to step forward for our city, so thank you all. All right. Last but not least, the John Wayne Airport Aviation Improvement Draft, EIR. Ms. Finnegan, would you like to explain this, please?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I do have a detailed presentation, or I can give you the abbreviated presentation, given the hour. It is, of course, up to the mayor and the council, which version of the report you would like.
You want the full thing, or a really short, quick one?
I think Duffy wants the long version. No. The short one.
Short question. Okay, excuse me just a moment, I skip ahead. This, the project we're referring to tonight is a County of Orange project, of course. The county owns and operates John Wayne Airport, and this project pertains to the airport's general aviation facilities. This is where I'm skipping ahead to. The county, it's been about three decades since the county last studied and evaluated its general aviation services and facilities. So this project would take a look at those facilities. The EIR that the county drafted, and that's what we're discussing tonight, actually used some baseline data from 2016. So as of 2016, the airport had two full-service fixed base operators. And a fixed base operator is a company that the airport allows to come on-site and provide services to the general aviation community, such as maintenance, hangars, tie-downs, fueling. And they, so they had two full-service FBOs in 2016, as they do today still. They had two limited-service FBOs, and limited service just means an FBO that doesn't provide fueling. And they had about 192,000 annual general aviation operations. Important to Newport Beach, how many of those were corporate jet operations? The EIR says about 43, low over 43 were daily jet, corporate jet departures. But when our consultant, Tom Edwards, actually looked at the information for the third quarter of 2018, we're really seeing closer to almost 50 daily corporate jet departures. And there was about 482 based aircraft. These are the aircraft that stay at the airport most of the year.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Did I read in the staff report that definition of operation is both a takeoff and landing? It's one, it's treated as one operation?
Actually, Tom and I discussed this today. An operation is a takeoff or a landing.
Or, not and?
Correct, right, Tom? Correct. So that is a...
So it counts every takeoff and every landing?
Right.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying, because I think the staff report had it as...
I thought so too, and Tom thought the staff report still read correctly, so it's something we were debating earlier today. So the EIR actually, the EIR proposes five just different alternatives. The project itself is the first column, and they have alternatives 1, 2, and 3, and the standard no-project option. The difference in the alternatives is primarily the number of FBOs, whether they are existing or new FBOs, and the location of the facilities. All of the proposed new FBOs, new fixed base operations, will include a new general aviation terminal, or they're designed to include a new general aviation terminal. Included within that general aviation terminal is something that really catches our eye, and that would be a general aviation facility for international travelers. And that would allow international homeland security and customs screening for general aviation travelers coming into John Wayne Airport. So if you look at the, if we just cut right down to the jet operations, the project itself would increase the daily jet operations to about 55. Alternative 1 would take that to almost 57, and alternative 2 keeps it just under 55.
What is it currently? 40 or something?
49.75, as of third quarter 2018. Alternative 3 is the one that caught our eye. It would keep the existing FBOs in place. It would also do what the airport needs to do, and that is bring some of its general aviation facilities up to current FAA standards. It would also keep those jet departures around 49, you know, to 50 per day. The no-project alternative, interestingly enough, would actually slightly increase the daily jet departures. So that's why staff is recommending alternative 3 over no-project. We believe the rationale is supported by Council Policy A17. The corridor cities long ago took a position on this, so we believe we're in line with what the corridor cities agree to. We have the support of some of our community organizations, the reps are here this evening. And the Aviation Committee also discussed this at their recent meeting. I will note, though, that the Aviation Committee did have a lot of discussion on the project, and they agreed to support alternative 3, but they did want us to express, they have some concerns about the project in general, and those concerns relate to safety and security, curfew, the nighttime operations that might happen underneath any of these plans, international travel, will that increase jet operations, because we have international travelers coming into John Wayne Airport, and general health and safety related to more jet traffic overhead.
Can I just add a comment to that and ask Mr. City Attorney? While those comments may have validity, when we're talking tonight about the draft environmental impact report, how does, how do those get integrated, if at all?
So primarily, what you're looking at tonight is the project itself and the environmental document that was prepared for that. And in general, SEQA is designed to disclose to the public, you know, significant environmental effects, so it's an informational document. And the second piece of it is looking at mitigation measures that's tied to what significant adverse effects they may have. You know, option 3 is basically not really doing very much. So if you were going to move forward with recommending alternative 3, a lot of what's been discussed about curfew and the other items, those really wouldn't be appropriate conditions as a mitigation measure for an environmental document. So I think, I think that tonight, the focus is really on the project and the SEQA piece of it, and looking at, making a recommendation to the board about which alternative the city council thinks is best. And alternative 3 isn't really creating those significant adverse environmental effects that would lend itself to those type of conditions.
Okay, thank you. Continue then.
That actually concludes my expedited presentation.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman is Chair of the Aviation Committee. Do you want to lead off?
I didn't need to punch that, did I, since you asked me to speak? Oh, gosh, where do I begin? We, you know, we've, the Aviation Committee, the city, got terribly active around the whole subject of aviation in 2016 because of the implementation of NextGen. And we're doing fine, we're humming along, we're working hard at trying to solve that problem, and then we're hit square in the face with this general aviation issue, and wanting to make changes at the airport. And, and I think the thing that I know I'm most concerned about, our mayor's most concerned about, our aviation in our community groups, is, is the impact that these changes have on the quality of life in our city. That's the bottom line with us. And we're trying to address that and make sure that, yeah, we've, we've dealt with the blith of the airport for 30 years in this city. Just don't do anything else to us, you know? We've had enough, and so we've taken a look at all these alternatives regarding general aviation. The recommendation is alternative 3. Some of the things that the community groups want us to include in our response to the county, some of the things that the Aviation Committee wants us to include in our response to the committee about which alternative we prefer, are not appropriate, because they have nothing to do with the, and that's the point you were just trying to make, Diane, they have nothing to do with EIR. They'll come a point in time down the road when we will have the opportunity, hopefully, to address those things. But we're just, we're just trying to, tonight, we're just trying to have the council take a position on which is the most appropriate alternative for the city of Newport Beach, and which alternative has the least amount of impact on the quality of our life. And we believe it's alternative 3.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Okay, let's go to the public, please. Let's get that going.
Mayor Dixon and council, I'm Nancy Alston. I've lived here for 32 years, even though I don't sound like it. And I've talked to the council, you're different now, but I've talked to the councils over the years, starting probably with that fiasco of El Toro. I'm representing SPAN tonight, stop polluting our Newport, and we are in favor of alternative 3. We are also in favor of doing several of those things that cannot be a part of the DEIR, but we can talk about those later. I do want to bring to the attention of the council and the people in the audience and at home, how many planes leave the airport every day? We have 185 jets every single day. According to the third quarterly report that Tara referred to, we actually have 50.3 private jets. Now, simultaneously with this, with this general aviation proposal, we will have an increase of a million annual passengers coming about in 2021 due to the last terms of the settlement agreement. So these two things are going to arrive concurrently, and it could have a big impact. I also want to say that I think this is the airport's way of try, this is personal. This is not coming from SPAN, okay? This is just me. This is the way the airport is determined to grow. They can't do it with the settlement, under the settlement agreement, so they'll do it this way. Now, according to them, all their stakeholders wanted this done. I haven't yet figured out why we're not a stakeholder, but it's the people who want this. But I maintain that they went out looking for that, because with a new director and a new emphasis, emphasis on growth, this is the only way it can be done. So some of these planes are going to want to fly in the middle of the night over Newport Beach, because that's the only way you can get to the East Coast for a 9 o'clock meeting. So that's just one of the things. But I want you to keep in mind that right now, there are 185 jets every single day. How much of Newport Beach is affected by this? Well, if you look at a map, it looks like to me it's about 1/3, because the noise spreads, and then for 10 miles, the pollution spreads, okay? So we're now being impacted even in Council Duffy's neighborhood, because my son lives in that neighborhood, and I hear those planes when I babysit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bookending the comments. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. Thank you for your time tonight and for staying up so late. My name is Maxine Malley. I've owned a home on Balboa Island since 1995. I'm alarmed about the proposed general aviation improvement project and the adverse impact it will have on Newport Beach, as well as its surrounding communities. All of you on the dais were elected to be stewards of the long-term health and prosperity of Newport Beach. While I realize that the Orange County Board of Supervisors controls John Wayne Airport, I'm here tonight to implore you to not only get a seat at the negotiating table with the supervisors, but to take legal action if necessary. Please seek out and hire the best aviation attorney possible to represent our city's interests. Do not allow the supervisors and the airlines to pave the way for John Wayne Airport to be transformed into LAX in our future. We cannot allow expansion of international services and an increase in the number of private for-hire jets, which fall under the definition of general aviation, and as such, are not subject to nighttime curfews. Either private jets have to be removed from the definition of general aviation, or curfews need to be imposed on all general aviation aircraft. If these loud private jets are allowed to fly 24/7 over Newport Beach, the quality of our lives will be adversely impacted, because we won't be able to sleep at night without disruption. Our home values will plummet as you destroy the appeal of Newport Beach to both residents and tourists. This is exactly what happened to the beach community of Surf Ridge by LAX. Your constituents are depending on you to do the right thing and take active measures to fight against the general aviation improvement project and not sell us out to the deep-pocket special interests such as the airlines. Thank you. Thank you for staying up.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, if you want to come forward. Next speaker, please, if you want to come forward.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council. My name, as you know, is Jim Mosher. And I think I have three comments on this. First one, the people who don't live under the flight path and saw the slides tonight may wonder what the big deal is. It sounds like it's going maybe from 50 jets to 55. Doesn't sound like a big deal. Why are people worried about that? I think the community worry is that the idea that it will go from 50 to 55, that's the county's claim of what these improvements will produce. And the community suspects that when the airport is improved and made more attractive, the numbers will actually be much, much larger than those that the county is predicting. That's first comment, why this is important. Second comment specifically about the EIR. We hear over and over that the airport is run and governed by the county and the FAA. The city has no say over what happens there other than hoping that they will do what we ask them to do. I don't believe that's entirely true. The few people who actually read the EIR will notice that in it, there is a table where the county has to find consistency between its plan for expansion and the general plans of all the neighboring cities. There's a table, does this project conform to the general plan of Costa Mesa, Irvine, Santa Ana, Newport Beach? I don't think the city looked carefully enough at that table when they commented on the EIR because most of the, many of the county's conclusions about whether it is consistent with our EIR are highly debatable. And in particular, we have noise standards in our noise element of our general plan that define very small increases in community noise as being a significant environmental impact. The county said there's no impact because it's just going to be a tiny increase in jets. So I think we have to address the question is, if the increase in jets is larger than they're projecting, which we certainly expect it may be, what mitigation are they going to offer to that? Are they going to cap how many jets they can have or not? And the third and final comment I have is about that issue of whether we can ask for caps on things. We're told we can't do that because of ANCA, the Airport Noise and Capacity Act. We have no control. Yet airports close. Actually, the Santa Monica Airport closed. ANCA apparently didn't apply to them. It seems the issue, as I vaguely understand it, has to do with whether the airport is dependent on federal funding because if they don't comply with that, they might lose their federal funding. I, as a citizen, would like to know how much federal funding John Wayne Airport currently gets, which causes us to be under that umbrella and forced to say we can't ask for regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward quickly. No? Okay, here you go.
Thank you, Mayor and council, Mel Beal. And I'm with AWG. And also an individual that will beat Nancy's 32 years, I'm 33 years, Newport Beach. I very much agree with Mr. Hurdman's comment about supporting the Alternative 3 in its, what I'll call its clean version, and keep some of the ancillary issues to a later point in time where we're addressing those. And we've supplied some documents to the city on that regard as for ANCA and settlement agreement conflicts it would have with some of the changes. So I appreciate your understanding of those. We've created three documents as an organization. One, a quite detailed seven-page document on comments on the IR, which, as we go into that next stage, which were the answers to the comments will be coming up here shortly. I think we need a joint strategy on how we deal with that. I'm not personally sure myself. But we can counsel and brainstorm and maybe come up with some things that would be broader than the city itself, but also the community organizations as well. Michelle Steele's visit will be one of those things that we can use in that regard. Going to Jim's comment about the number of jet. I mentioned at the aviation meeting with Jeff that I've worked in at FBOs. I was Director of Finance for a company that owned three large FBOs, larger than the three we're showing on the screen. I know how they operate. I know the P&amp;L drivers that you have on those. And I know how you can manage the facilities to optimize that over a period of time with your lease. And one of the ways is getting more itinerary aircraft in because you have good meeting facilities. We used to go to Love Field in Dallas, which was one of ours. And we would actually market to other companies to come in and have their meetings at our field and then fly back out same day. So you come in in the morning, you have this great experience, and you can fly home by 3 o'clock. And it was quite effective. We actually were doubling the number of base aircraft. We had more than double in the itinerary aircraft, which is referred to in the EIR. I'm very concerned about that. Going to Jim's and Nancy's point that the 50x number of aircraft we're looking at for jet operations could easily go to 75 to 80. And that's quite a number. And how you reconfigure that versus the way the county organized their assumptions was how they laid out the hangar operations and the FBO operations. If you do a little different configuration, you can get more aircraft in and you can handle the itinerary aircraft. So we have to do all we can to get to the Alternative 3 model, which I think is appropriate. Any support the city needs from us, let us know. And we'll be happy to work with you and if there's any questions that come up. I would propose that you approve that tonight so we can move forward on that. And then get to the next issue of how we're going to deal with the comments coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll come back up here. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, one of the commenters said that we're doing this, we're not doing this. We have nothing to do with this. We have no jurisdiction over this. Yet we're doing everything that we can. So I don't think you meant offense. But quite frankly, I want the exact opposite of what anyone would want for expansion of the airport for the same reason you do, quality of life, my family. This is number-one issue. If unfunded pension liability is the number-one fiscal issue, I'd argue it's number-one health and quality-of-life issue. So everything we've got. Someone may say, well, why are you supporting one of the alternatives at all? Why not support none of the alternatives? Which actually is kind of ideal. According to our council, if the draft EIR is done correctly, even if we were to find a snag, they could change it. If it's done correctly, we have no grounds to even slow it down because it's not within our jurisdiction. It's outside of our city limits. It's got federal control. In my opinion, all we can do is try to do as much political clout as possible. They'd say, look supervisors, what are we going to do? A, B, or C, or 1, 2, and 3? And we think this is the best because we think it's the least impactful. And I mean, I share your concerns about the increase that is in the agreement because it's too much. And we're dedicated. Jeff and Diana put countless hours in and put in a couple hours as well. We're dedicated to doing everything we can for the city. And I would argue for surrounding communities as well when the airlines do the turnarounds. They're impacted as well. So I'd like to thank the community groups. I know it was not a hard and easy decision for one of the groups to say, yeah, we support this because, quite frankly, it's not a real support. It's simply the lesser of two evils, one could argue. And we're just got to keep moving forward. And I believe that our angle of trying to deal with airlines directly, work with the FAA, and work politically with the county is our best hope. And we're always open to more ideas